Should I move it forward?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Okay.
Hey, Melissa, we're ready.
There you go. Good morning. We're back for our second day of planning. And our first presenter this morning is from the Department of Social Services.
Okay. Good morning. Happy New Year to everyone. As in past years, I'll do an outline and then we've got some of our managers here this morning to talk more in detail about their individual programs. A lot of things going on in DSS and a lot of new general statutes around DSS and some of our programs that will impact funding. So I'll start with, I'm going to get too big. It's a little small, I'm sorry. As we've been talking the past few years, we continue to struggle with finding appropriate residential treatment facilities for some of the children in foster care. And I know we've talked about it the last few years, spending several thousand dollars. But this year, it has gotten to a critical stage that we have had to spend a significant amount of county funding to pay for placements while children are waiting to be assessed or waiting for appropriate placement to come open. So just, and we're having this issue not only on the children's side, but also on the adult's side for the disabled adults that we have under guardianship. And so up to this fiscal year so far, we have had to spend thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars of county-only money for children needing placements that we could not locate placements. And on the adult's side, we've had to spend roughly fourteen thousand dollars.
Melanie, when you say placements, are you talking about foster care homes?
Foster care homes. And there's different levels. There's from our lowest level is a family foster home. And to our highest level is something called a PRTF, which stands for psychiatric residential treatment facility. And I think there is some push at the national level and at the state level to try to prevent placements in PRTFs. Some of those are out of state. Sometimes the only ones available are out of state. So I think sometimes what happens is children who need that higher level of care may end up in what they call the next level down is a Level 3. But that may not be appropriate. They do something called respite if we're trying to find a placement, but that's two hundred and fifty dollars a night. And so sometimes we, like last night, we had two children staying in our agency. And that, we generally have at least two staff. So when we do that, these are staff that they don't work shift work, they've worked all day, and then they stay all night at the agency. And of course, we're paying overtime for two people to do that. So all that adds into the cost of the county funding going into it.
So two hundred and fifty dollars a day when we have to pay it, who do we pay that to? Where do they go?
That's like, like maybe a respite placement or another leveled placement that we're waiting for our LME/MCO to approve it. And so it would be like a licensed placement, but we're just having to pay the county money. Sometimes we can go ahead and do that quickly. Occasionally, we can get that back, you know, if they, we can go ahead and get the assessment done, whatever the date is on it, maybe we can recoup some of that funding, but sometimes not.
The assessment is a psychological assessment?
Right. It's a comprehensive clinical assessment. It's what it's called, a CCA.
Right. The, what, what is the cause? What is the driver driving statistics behind why these children have to be put into foster homes? Thank you.
Substance use, our biggest, continue to be substance use, domestic violence, and high-level mental health, untreated mental health. And it's, it's been that way going on several years now, but the pandemic, and I certainly would not say this is because of the pandemic, but substance use has increased because of the pandemic. Mental health, severe mental health issues have increased because of the pandemic. And then, of course, domestic violence is also prevalent in these cases. And, and sometimes it's all three.
Has there been any work done that goes back and says that even though the person may not be addicted or using drugs at the moment, that prior drug abuse may be the, to use a political phrase, root cause?
Um, I do think when people have substance use disorder, I think sometimes that's a lifelong disorder. And sometimes it, folks can go to treatment and do well, and then can have some traumatic event or something going on in their life, and it, it repeats the cycle.
Gotcha.
Okay. Again, we do try to work with Trillium very closely. They do have a DSS liaison now. I think Lori would agree that has really improved our communication when we have these cases. The state has also developed something called the Rapid Response Team, because this is not just Beaufort County with this issue, it is statewide. And that's a team of high-level Department of Health and Human Services leaders, Assistant Secretary level and up, that we get on a phone call with them and say, here's what the situation for this individual child is. We can't find an appropriate treatment facility, and we need help. And sometimes it's, it's beneficial, and sometimes it's not. Sometimes we continue to try, even after we do the, they call it the RRT, not to have a placement, and then just continue to work the phones and call. Recently, we had one individual, we called eighty-seven places. And, you know, we start locally, because it's better if they're locally for visits and whatnot with family. But we, then we work out going west, trying to find, you know, anyone, any facility that will meet their needs.
At the moment, does this look like a growing trend, or have things leveled off? Or where do you expect it to go?
Growing trend.
A growing trend? More of it?
More.
Well, I'm concerned about the drug aspect of this, because, you know, we've got a, we've got a drug squad that does nothing but drugs, but the amount of drugs and use seems to be growing. And one of the troubling things to me, and this is not anything that you can do anything about, but we've never caught Mr. Big in Beaufort County.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm not really sure, I'm definitely not an expert on where it's coming from or who's bringing it in, but we know it's impacting children's lives negatively, because we see it every day in substance-affected infants, and, you know, from infants all the way up to, you know, eighteen years of age.
Are we to where the mother can be charged for delivering a infant that's dependent?
No. Okay. Any more questions about that? We really are trying to work within our budget so far. We do have some county line items in our foster care budget and our adult budget that is county money for medications until we can get someone on Medicaid, or to pay placements upfront until we can get someone Social Security. So we have those lines, and right now, we're okay with, we can move between the lines to cover this. And, and so far, unless it just, towards the end of the year, the year goes crazy, I think we're going to be okay. But just, just wanted you to know that as we go into next year, this continues to be an issue, and we continue to spend a large amount of county money on it.
How much was spent last year?
I don't know right off the top of my head. Do you know, Lori? The, the placements where county were having to fund? One of these, one of these individuals on the adult's side, we did spend at least, I think, seven to ten thousand dollars towards the end of last fiscal year, because the case started in April, and we could not find an appropriate placement. And this individual was at severe risk of injury or death if we had not intervened until we could. And that was another one that we had to have multiple calls with our LME/MCO and the state to finally get some services for this individual. But the, one of the issues is, years ago, there was a, there was a push to, to serve people in the community, and I totally agree with that philosophy. But with the push, there were no, there were limited resources. So the philosophy and the theory is good behind serving people in the community, you know, that's certainly the best way to do it. But if you don't have your infrastructure set up and enough people to do those, provide those services, then, then people are left in that, in that middle area where they don't have anywhere to go and don't have.
Are we talking about getting people admitted to the rest homes, or is that the sort of thing?
It is, but what we have found more of the issue is group care for those that need, that have a mental health disability. And so one of, one of those treatment places is called Inter, ICF, Intermediate Care Facility for mentally disabled individuals. And there's very few of those across the state. So if you have someone that falls in that category, you're really on a waiting list with hundreds of others waiting for that same bed. So it's just a lack of, lack of services and facilities across the state.
Do you see the adult's side of this as a growing thing?
Yes. And the reason I say that is because what is the same on the adult's side. We've got substance use, we've got untreated mental health issues, there sometimes domestic violence, and the, we just have a lack of services for both children and adults. And intensive services to help people overcome the issues that they're having. So I do see it on both sides.
A lot of this is because of the, the weaknesses in family structure. Would that be an accurate statement?
You know, it is very challenging when you have substance use, domestic violence, and mental health issues, and/or all three of those. And that can, you know, erode the family structure when you have things like that.
You mentioned that on an emergency basis that you, they can spend the night at your facility. Are you talking about the social service building? Are you set up for that?
Well, we have visitation rooms where we have, do our visits. We do try to limit that, you know, certainly that's not a good option. Sometimes it's when a child comes into custody, it's three o'clock in the morning, and we may go there just until we can find other arrangements. But occasionally, it is where we're waiting for a placement to come open. We do have on our, in our PowerPoint today, we have some options that we'd like to talk to you about, of trying to do a little bit, increase those facilities and make it better if that children do have to come to have a better place to stay and a better place to sleep, if it does have to happen.
That's what I was wondering, are you set up for that unlike atmosphere?
Right. Well, we have visitation rooms that, that have couches and things like that, where, you know, we do court-ordered visitation. But, you know, it's really not set up for that. We, we make it as good as we can make it, but we've got some ideas of how we could do better for next year. Okay. Any other questions about that piece? Next on our overview, we would like to abolish one full-time in-home aid position. We've been doing this over the last few years with our in-home aid program. When one of our aides retires, we are requesting to abolish the position and move those salary and benefits over to our contract line. So we did have one retire December 31st, and we will be requesting for the rest of this fiscal year to move that remaining salary and benefits over to our contract line, and then going into fiscal year '23 to put the entire salary and benefits in the contract line.
This is where you're using outside contractors to provide the same service? So basically, we're getting out of the county providing the service. How many more of those employees do you have?
One.
Just one after this one?
Just one.
Okay.
After this one. That's right. Yeah. And I think at one point, there were twenty-five years ago, is my understanding, before I came.
Melanie, do you find that using an outside contractor to be as efficient as using your inside people, or is it as cost-effective?
It is cost-effective. With the contractor, we play, pay a flat rate. That includes their, their work and their transportation and all their administrative overhead. And of course, when they're county employees, we pay benefits that go with that. We've had overall a good experience with our contractor in providing the services. With any contract, you have to monitor it, and, you know, sometimes things you have to have conversations about. But I think overall, Lori's very happy with it, and the staff are very happy with the contract.
They're like an employee, but easier to fire?
Well, if something goes wrong, we call the contractor and say, we're having a problem in the contract.
And they fix it?
That's right. That's right.
And, and they're charged to fix it?
That's right.
That's their job?
That's, that's in the contract. Yep. Okay. There's also, there was session, Senate Bill 105, which of course was the budget bill for the General Assembly this year. They did include an increase in the foster care and adoption assistance rates. It's been many, 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 many years since there's been an increase in those rates. And of course, that will have some impact on our next year's budget for those increases. And Lori will go more into what the increases are and how would it impact our budget. Medicaid transformation, everyone knows that began in July of 2021. They started with what they called the Standard Plan, and that was individuals who, who didn't have high-level mental health or substance use needs. They moved over into what they call the Standard Plan, which is a managed care plan-type system. We do have four PHPs or prepaid help plans that our residents may sign up for. We had about eight thousand of our Medicaid recipients eligible for the Standard Plan that moved over to a plan, a managed care plan on July 1st of 2021. So far, we've, we've not heard major problems you, you all may have. We've had early on a few hiccups with the non-emergency medical transportation piece, because the plans actually receive funds to provide that service. So the folks that moved over to Standard Plan or the Managed Care in July, we no longer arranged the non-emergency transportation for them. That being said, the folks that moved were the healthier folks that usually don't use the transportation that much, it's families with children. So the majority of the people still remained where we are continuing to provide, that's arranging for the service and paying for the service of the non-emergency medical.
Who did you use for transportation?
So we contract, we contract with Bats. We contract with local cab companies and...
Are they now contracting with Bats? Or are they using something else?
They, my understanding is they've all contracted with Bats. The providers had the option whether they wanted to contract with the four PHPs, and most of the providers that we were using did. There were, I think, one did not. Of course, they had to do a contract with each of the plans. So it's not like with us, there's one contract, we arrange all, you know, all the, coordinate that. But with the, if, if the individual they're taking is with Plan A, and the next individual's Plan B, they've got to have a contract with both of those plans. So, but we're still, I would say, we've, Amy did a calculation recently. We, we usually arrange or, or arrange for payment for about three thousand trips a month, thirty-two hundred, just kind of give or take, you know, who's traveling that month. And the trips have reduced maybe about five hundred a month. But we still get about a hundred calls a day about the non-emergency medical transportation. So I would say overall, we're still providing the vast majority of that.
You mentioned slight hiccup. What, what does a hiccup look like?
So we had some folks call that had appointments to get, you know, to a doctor, and the non-emergency medical transportation provider called. So each plan has what they call a broker, transportation broker, who arranges the visits. And the broker called like the night before and said, sorry, we can't take you. Or, you know, a couple of things like that. And then we worked with the Division of Health Benefit folks that oversee the plans and said, you know, not acceptable. And that, it wasn't just Beaufort County, this particular plan and vendor, we heard other places were having issues, and they immediately met with them and, you know, said, you know, send the contract, you must get this straight. And recently, we have not heard any, many things at all. But this was early on, probably around August, September, October, when it started. But I think they've increased their, I think that, my understanding, there was a bottleneck of calls coming in and people needing it, but they couldn't get their, couldn't get the providers arranged quickly enough. I think they were...
Well, I think everybody was having labor troubles, so I'll, I'll give them a free pass on that one.
Right. Right. That's right. But, but so far, with the Standard Plan, I think we're here, we're not hearing that much about that. Okay. And then, of course, the Taylor Plans start. They were originally going to start in July of this year, and they have, DHB or DHHS has moved that back to December of this year. And that's for individuals that have high-level mental health needs or substance use needs or traumatic brain injury needs. So the LME/MCOs across the state had to submit an application to be a Taylor Plan when they start. And our, Trillium is our LME/MCO, and they did submit a plan, and they were awarded, you know, the ability, a contract to contract for these services. But it will not start until December of this year. We have gotten some reports that it looks like about fifteen hundred Beaufort County residents potentially could fall under a Taylor Plan. Now, whether that many actually start, because there's some carve-outs right now that populations are exempt, individuals receiving the Community Alternatives Program, which we administer, which we call CAP, which is like a service for folks to stay in their home that may otherwise need nursing-level care, they're going to be carved out. Children in foster care are going to be carved out. And originally, we were told that the Taylor Plans would take on managing the non-emergency medical transportation for, for this, their folks that are going to move over. But recently, we had a call with DHB, and they indicated that DSS may continue to arrange those trips. And I don't know if it's because, I don't know if it's because of the Standard Plans and what's happened, and I, you know, I don't know that to be fact, but originally, all the trainings and the workshops I went to, it sounded like once those folks went under a Taylor Plan, they would take their whole person care, their mental health, their medical issues and transportation. And, but in December, they came at our association meeting, and I left there with the impression that we may keep those, those trips. So right now, more to come. I don't, I don't know that for sure, but it sure did sound like it. So that's about, I think, if we, if those trips don't move over, we'll keep about sixty-five percent of the individuals on, we'll be arranging those trips and...
What is the impact of all this on your workload?
So we originally had two Medicaid transportation workers arranging trips and then doing the paperwork for payment. And then several years ago, they were, they were getting overwhelmed, so we moved an individual from the front administrative office back to help them. And that person has since retired. And we've kind of been waiting to see, like, what, you know, are we going to need them or whatnot? But we really have not lost, even though it's five hundred sounds like a lot, we're still getting a hundred calls a day. So we have moved to fill that position, and it'll be a joint position between helping, you know, Medicaid transportation and then the front office. They'll have dual duties just to see, you know, we don't want to go where we don't have enough staff to, to get folks where they need to be. So right now, we've not that, you know, we, we thought we may be able to abolish that position, because when the person retired, we just kind of left it sitting there. But based at the workload we've seen the past year, we're getting more calls than we've ever gotten, it seems like, which is okay, you know, folks want to call instead of come in due to COVID, and that's fine. But we think we're going to need that position, especially if we don't, if we end up keeping this other segment of transportation folks. And then the Foster Care Specialty Plan, I mentioned that. The state office is trying to, or is developing a plan for children in foster care, because we, we've seen this before when mental health divested ten or fifteen years ago, and, you know, LMEs and MCOs at that time, you know, we really struggled if we had a foster child that ended up having to be placed in another catchment area with getting services, because the providers in that area didn't have a contract with our LME or MCO. So we have really said to the state, we've got to have a statewide plan for children in foster care. So if they, if they are resident of Beaufort County and their end up, their placement ends up being in Martin County, or, or, I don't know, Pitt County or Wilkson County, we still have to be able to get reimbursement and pay for that provider. So that is the plan right now. This also was supposed to start in July of 2023, and now it has moved forward to December of 2023. So more to come about that. Then our State-County Special Assistance Program, Senate Bill 105, again, the budget bill, the General Assembly did increase the personal care allowance from forty-six dollars a month to seventy dollars a month. They also removed the ability for counties to have a waiting list for the SA in-home program. And both of these things could have a, or will have potential impact on our budget. The forty-six dollars a month and seventy dollars a month, as you all know, our State-County Special Assistance Program is a fifty-fifty match between state and county. So of that twenty-four dollars increase per month, the county will be, have to pay twelve dollars per participant per month. Based on the number of participants we have right now, we think that averages out to about fifteen thousand dollars a year more in county funding. And as far as the removal of the ability to do the waiting list, right now, we don't think that's going to be a huge impact, just because several years ago, and this was before I came, and Lori can talk more about this, because she was here, the commissioners decided to fund more SA in-home slots to try to serve people, so folks didn't have, you know, weren't homeless or inappropriate housing. So the commissioners at that time did fund eighty, we have eighty-eight slots right now. So a lot of counties don't have that many and have a waiting list. So those counties will have to go ahead and bring those individuals on. I think we're good right now. Maybe a year, two, three, we might see an impact from that, but I think we're okay as far as no longer being able to have a waiting list. COVID funds, you all know, we got a lot of COVID funds this past year, year before, too. Kelly will talk more about that when she does her presentation. But my takeaway is, right now, we're not predicted to get that same amount of COVID funds next budget year. So you may see our budget this year look pretty big and next year look a little bit less, but it's, the majority is COVID funding.
If you would speak to that, for myself, my application and the public certification?
Okay.
What does COVID funds entail?
So we got a significant amount of ARPA funds for the Low Income Energy Assistance Program this year. So normally, our Low Income Energy Assistance Program, we get about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year to manage that program. And this year, they gave us about sixty thousand more in our regular program line. So we've got about three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand in that line this year. But then they also gave us an additional four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand of pandemic, basically, Low Income Energy Assistance. So they're serving, this year, they did an auto-payment for families for, with children zero to ten years old. And then, of course, they did the auto-payment like they did last year in, for, in December for individuals sixty years and older, or those that had a disability and were receiving services from the Division of Aging and Adult Services. We also got additional funding for young adults that have been in foster care after their fourteenth birthday. If they were eighteen to twenty-six, they did just a one-time payment, the payments that came before the commissioners, the payments were twenty-five hundred dollars or five thousand, depending on the age of the child. They also have the Low Income Household Water Assistance, Water and Wastewater Assistance Program, and that's a pandemic program to help families pay their water bill, past due or cut off water bills, and then wastewater. We did have, I think we got about a hundred-and-seven thousand dollars for that. We did have, of course, Beaufort County participated and the Town of O'Haven participated. We do have some funds left in, in that line. Let's see. Those were the main ones. Right now, the only one we predict that's going to go into next budget year is the Low Income Household Water and Wastewater Program. Those funds have to be spent, they're federal funds, of course, they must be spent by September of 2023. All the rest of those funds must be spent by September of 2022. Any other question?
No, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Of course, the Family First Preservation Services Act, I talked a little bit about this last year, that's a federal law that went into effect October 1st of 2021. And that law basically switches from, you know, kids going into foster care is the plan to prevention, to try to prevent children from coming into foster care. But with it comes a loss of revenue for children that are coded as 4E eligible, which is our highest level of reimbursement, for children that are in congregate care more than 14 days, they can no longer be coded 4E, which, right now, because of the pandemic, is a 86% reimbursement rate to the county. It's generally 84%, but it's a little 2% increase because of COVID. So if we have children that end up having to go to congregate care, since the law is now enacted, if they're there, if they go in and they're 4E, if they're there past the 14 days, it switches to state foster home reimbursement, which is 50-50. And Lori is going to talk more about that and the impact to our budget, but I do think there will be some loss of revenue that we've been seeing historically around children that are coded 4E. And the difference, the way they get coded 4E or state foster home, is the parent's income when they come into care, and that makes a difference on whether they're 4E or state. And then lastly, the expansion request, Commissioner Walker mentioned that about our building and if we had children stay. Lori is going to, Lori and Kelly are going to talk about a request. We have a storage room that we've kind of just used for files and things like that, but it has plumbing in it already, there's a sink in there. And so we'd like to talk about possibly doing like a family visitation room there that includes a bathroom with maybe a bathtub and maybe a washer and dryer, just for, you know, when we have children come in overnight or come in while they're waiting for a placement and, you know, maybe need a bath or whatnot. And she'll talk more about that. Any other questions for me right now?
With, with what's left, probably need to start calling the questions and make sure we get through everything.
Okay, okay, all right.
Good morning, I'm Amy Allagood, I'm the Income Maintenance Administrator. Over the last several years, we have definitely seen an increase in the audits that we have had, especially with our Medicaid programs. We are currently finishing the final and 10th, the 10th and final month of the Rita Audit, which stands for the Recipient Eligibility Determination Audit. We have been going through this audit since we started in March, and they started pulling cases in the month of April. Our supervisors have been, had, they have been going through 20 cases per month for this Rita Audit. We are in Cycle 3, and so if, what happens with this Rita Audit is they, they pull a total of 200 cases. And if we do not meet the percentage for the accuracy standards, we are placed on a corrective action. Currently, we have, like I said, we've just finished up, we, out of the 200 cases that were pulled, they only found one eligibility finding, and that was for one day of eligibility. We've certainly seen our challenges with NCFAST, so, you know, these workers work very hard, so we're very proud that out of 200 cases, we did only have one, one eligibility finding for one day. We have not received, if we do not meet the accuracy percentages, we would be placed on a corrective action. We have not received our final percentages, we hope to receive those within the next couple of weeks, based on what we have seen on the percentages throughout the 10 months. We do not anticipate being under corrective action. Like I said, we have not received the final, but that is our anticipation. Again, we do have that one day of eligibility error, and we, at this point in time, we do not know what that would look like, but it is just, it is one day. It could be, you know, waiting on DHB, the Division of Health Benefits, it could be months, even to a year from now, before we would hear anything from that as to what a payback could look like. With, again, with these Medicaid audits, any finding for an eligibility error that is found is a county payback. So we do, you know, are constantly looking at our county processes to ensure, you know, for any findings that we have for the Rita Audit, have had for the Rita Audit, as well as the single county audit, we're constantly looking at what we need to do differently to ensure, you know, and to prevent any future findings. For the single county audit that we, you know, had for fiscal year 2020, 2021, there were no eligibility findings, but they did find technical errors. You know, when NCFAST, and I know we've talked about NCFAST for some time now, when NCFAST was first implemented in 2012, you know, the state encouraged counties to combine workers to do multiple programs. At that time, we had workers that were just doing, you know, eligibility for determining eligibility for one program. And the state encouraged us with the implementation of the new system to enable workers to, you know, take an application or, you know, see one client and see, you know, that way they could determine eligibility for multiple programs. And that was the, you know, the encouragement from the state, so that is what we did back in 2012. And so over the last several years, with the findings that we have had for the single county audits with the technical errors, the technical errors do not, they are not eligibility errors, they don't determine, you know, do not have any factor in the eligibility portion of it, but one, one single error, there's no room for any type coding error or anything. So, you know, we do want to eliminate those technical errors as well. So in, this past October, we re, we relooked at how our, our units were set up. You know, our, our staff were continuing to determine eligibility for multiple programs, and so we took us, you know, took a step back and say, you know, what's working, what's not. So starting in October, this past October, we, we moved our units back to where we are just specialized workers, where our workers are only determining eligibility for one program and not multiple programs. That way, you know, the policies are so different for each of the programs, and so we wanted to make sure that our workers are able to focus on one program and not having to keep up with so many changes for the, for the multiple programs across the board. So we hope that that, you know, that was one of our things that we did, looking back at our, the Rita Audit, as well as our single county audits every year, to, to prevent future errors. Also, with the single county audit, you may have seen during, you know, the last audit, that, you know, the findings that are found, especially for these technical errors, you know, we, you know, when we, these errors are found, we meet with our staff and go over these, these findings, and, you know, we, we work on correcting them. However, we continue to face challenges for our, you know, every year for the single county audit, because they go back and they pull records from previous fiscal year, years, actually. This past single county audit, they were, we were actually looking at pulling applications that were processed and taken two years ago. So it really is a very, very challenging for us as we, you know, face future single county audits, when we make corrections for things that are found, but yet they continue to go back from previous fiscal years. So we will continue to face those challenges for these audits, as long as they continue to do that. Our current Medicaid caseload is, for cases, is 11,162 cases, and with the, with the cases, we have currently 14,198 beneficiaries for Medicaid in Beaufort County. During the COVID-19 pandemic, North Carolina implemented several waivers to promote social distancing. We continue to have a waiver that suspends food and nutrition services collections, that is for our program integrity claims that we have. Previously, prior to the pandemic, they would recoup any type benefits that were owed back to the state from food and nutrition service, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We were, they would go and, you know, take that from the food and nutrition services cases. So currently, they are still suspending the food and nutrition service collections. Just because they are suspending it does not mean that households will not remain liable for any outstanding claims, and collection activity will resume at the end of these waivers. This suspension will continue to impact our collections and the revenue for the county until this waiver is lifted. We currently still have numerous waivers for food and nutrition services, as well as many of our programs, so we do have several waivers that are expected to end January the 31st, while others are expected to end March 31st. But that does change some of our, you know, the ones that were anticipated to end January 31st, we, you know, may get something extending it even further. So we, it is a constant, making sure that we're looking at emails and correspondence from the state to ensure that if waivers are extended, that we are keeping up with those extensions. The current caseload for food and nutrition services is 5,395 cases, and that is 10,122 beneficiaries for food and nutrition services in Beaufort County.
Would you want to hold those questions as well? Okay.
So, good morning, I'm Lori Lega, I do, I'm the Deputy Director and do the services side over in DSS. And so we first want to talk about the foster care rate increases. So that did, as Melanie talked about it, come out of Senate Bill 105, and it's effective as of January 1st of this year. And just to give you guys an idea, we currently have 100, and that number's not right, 115 children in foster care, five children that are in our 18 to 21-year-old program, and we have 200 adoption assistance cases. The bill will cause an increase in county funds, but there is a revenue that will offset some of that. State will continue to be the 50-50 match, 4E children will continue, currently, we're receiving the 86-14 match while we're under the state of emergency. So just to give a rough estimate, this is a real rough estimate, because these children, our numbers go back and forth from state to 4E all the time. If we did it today with our current foster children, roughly, it's an increase of $3,500 a month, about $45,000 a year with the rate increases. We also, on our, the Families First Prevention Services Act, it began in October of '21, with the main purpose to keep children more in family-like settings and, you know, and away from the congregate care. Also, we want children to kind of go back from foster care in, in-home services and keep many family units together. All of it was founded on evidence-based programs like Triple P Parenting, Parents and Teachers, and Home Builders. The legislation will impact federal child welfare funding for administrative and programmatic functions. So basically, what it, what is going to happen is, kids can only stay in congregate care under the 4E reimbursement for 14 days, then it's going to revert to that 50-50 match. So it will impact some of our revenues. We work diligently to keep children in least restrictive environments, we try to stay away from any congregate care and group home settings, that is our last resort. That is not something that we try to do. I do want to say this, though, there is, it's very important to know, there are some children that we cannot maintain in traditional settings. They do require this congregate care, group home type setting. So this is, the next thing I want to talk about is our AmeriCorps Child Welfare Intern Program. This is something I'm really excited about, and I'm kind of hoping that we can be a part of this. So the Child Welfare Education Workforce Initiative, along with the Association of the County Department of Directors, the North Carolina Association of the County Directors of Social Services, is part with Pitt County Department of Social Services to pursue an AmeriCorps grant. The idea behind this grant is to support social work internships only in child welfare. The idea is, we want to recruit workers to come to child welfare that have a true passion for the field, and they'll be highly qualified social workers with either a bachelor's or a master's level education. The program, what they're asking for us to do in order to, to get the interns into our agency is for us to upfront $250 per student. We would like to do four students a year, but there's also, these students will get stipends, so they will be able to pay for their personal stuff while they're in school, which is a, you know, a huge deal for a student. They, also, they will reimburse the county for stuff up to $1,250 for computers, cell phones, hotspots, stuff that we purchase every year. The grant is written so that, once the intern leaves, we can take that equipment, we can use it anywhere that we want to in the agency. The way we're set up, we normally buy computers every year, just the number of people that we have on a rotating basis, so it really would be cost-effective for us to do that. They also will reimburse the county for the travel that the intern has, that we will pay the intern. We're either going to pay the intern, or we're going to pay our worker. We traditionally have paid interns travel when they've had to go do stuff for us, so they would actually reimburse that travel to the county for us. There's also some cell phone reimbursements in there. We historically have not provided any of our interns with cell phones and don't plan on doing that in the future. So the other thing that Melanie talked about was our expansion request. Our agency does everything we can to locate appropriate placements for foster children. There are times, though, that we cannot find placement that night, or it's in the middle of the night, or I have to wait several days before we can get the child to that identified placement, which leads to children in our agency that need stuff like showers, a washing machine, a dryer, a place where they can lay down. And although we have visitation rooms, it is not really set up like somewhere where you can spend the night or sleep over, or for me to wash their clothes. So we do work with county maintenance, and we've got a rough estimate for the plumbing to that room and for the wiring, and it's around close to $15,000. We're still working on trying to get an estimate to actually frame the room for like a bathroom and a shower, so that the children can go in and take showers, and you're not at our agency for several days and not have a bath, and we can actually wash their clothes and that kind of thing.
Hey Lori, just real quick, it's my understanding that the AmeriCorps Child Welfare Intern Program will be on the next agenda for the board to consider.
Correct, in February.
Just one thing I'd like to add to Lori's discussion about the expansion request, is that, anything that we put in that room, if you all would allow us to do so, would be a 50, about a 50% reimbursement in cost. So Derek is not able to be with us today, so I'm going to cover a few of his updates. It's fairly short for our IT updates this year. Of course, you all have, have heard us talk about NCFAST nonstop, and child welfare was supposed to go into the NCFAST system, but they've actually pulled back on that. And NCDS is working, NCACDSS is working with the Child Welfare System Governance Committee, and they're actually going to make a separate interface for child welfare and not hook it into NCFAST. That system will still be linked with our economics benefits side of the building, but it won't be in NCFAST how they were originally planning for that to be done. This cutover is scheduled for tomorrow with a go-live date of Monday, and that's for the counties who are already piloting that program. So that's not necessarily our dates, but those, for those counties who are piloting, they'll start that cutover next week. And you all have heard us talk a lot about the bridge from NCFAST to Northwoods to our document management system and Laserfish. With these changes, the status of that is still unknown at this time. And we've talked about security cameras in the past. This year, we would like to go ahead and install some security cameras that'll monitor our parking lots and our lobby, not only for the safety of our clients, but also for the safety of our employees who are entering next and then the buildings. This year, Derek was able to find some better pricing on some computers, and he is going to wait and replace a couple of scanners next year instead of this year, so that hopefully we can go ahead and get those cameras installed this fiscal year. And we also had some CPS Cares money that we were able to buy equipment with, so we feel like we can install those cameras this year, so that we can be a little safer. And these are my updates, of course, I'm Kelly Smith, Operations Program Administrator. Melanie covered a lot of the COVID funding, so for sake of... Melanie covered a lot of the COVID funding, so for sake of time, I can review this again, or if you all would like me to, I think she touched on everything that's on this slide. Okay. Our maintenance of effort, so even with our additional COVID funding that we have received this year, we will meet maintenance of effort again. Our maintenance of effort revenue last year was 160,425, and we do protect, project that we'll be able to receive close to the same amount of funding this fiscal year as well. Something a little new this year is, which the program itself is not new, but we have been able to use our Medicaid administrative claiming this year for our worker time, for our adult protective services workers. Traditionally, a lot of times their worker time turns into county funds because we only have the social services block grant, which we typically spend fairly quickly. So this year, we have been able to start coding MAC for their time, for as long as the client was Medicaid eligible, we can code MAC for any time that's spent with them in adult protective services. So up until this point in this year, we've estimated that we have about an additional $37,000 in revenue that we've been able to pull down this year due to us being able to claim that, claim those services. Just a little bit about our expenditure and revenue projections. We do have underspending in our training school costs and our professional development lines, and that's strictly due to many of our in-person trainings being virtual and very limited travel this year, of course, due to COVID. And as Lori and Melanie both have mentioned, our overspending, we are overspending in our overtime line, and that is directly related to child welfare as we have been understaffed and we've, you know, forcing our current workers to have to take on more additional duties to cover those needs. We will be able to adjust this overspending within our current budget, though. And we are projected to exceed our general assistance line in foster care. Of course, those were the county costs that Lori and Melanie have both discussed, and we also feel that we'll be able to adjust that overspending in our budget as well. As far as revenues, we are continuing to maximize our revenue sources and ensure that all of our capped allocations are being received at a rate of 100%, and we're maximizing our uncapped revenues as well. And I think that is all I have. You all have any questions for any of us?
Yeah, I have one. The room expansion, how many times a year would you say you use this?
Recently, I would say at least four to five times a month, average.
And also, I would like to mention too, also with that room, we do have two visitation rooms at our agency, but with that additional room, we would be able to have more visitations in our agency instead of having to meet at other places such as parks or, you know, relative homes. You know, we would be able to have more visitations in the agency, not only just for using that room for overnight stays.
Do you have multiple situations in a night that you would need more room?
Last night.
Last night.
And if, as Kelly mentioned, like in the, in the spring and fall, we do try to do visits in the park or some, you know, somewhere that's very family, child-friendly, but at this time of year, can't do that. So sometimes we do have an overflow and we end up having to do it in our conference rooms.
Couple of questions. On the single county audit, would any of those technical errors result in overpayment?
Technical errors do not result in overpayments, only eligibility errors.
If I, if I heard it right, and I do the math, it sounds like 32% of the population of Beaufort County is on Medicaid.
So since COVID, we have, there, the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services have waived terminating Medicaid cases while we're under the public health emergency. So right now, we're, unless someone requests to be terminate or they move out of state, it's very few situations where we're terminating Medicaid right now, so we have seen an increase. Before the pandemic, we had about 12,000 individuals receiving, and you could see from Amy's presentation, it's 14,000 now, so you're, and there's what, 44,000, 45,000?
Wow.
Okay, thank you for asking that. I had made a note.
And it's also 23% of the population in food services.
Right, and we have seen an increase in individuals receiving food and nutrition since the pandemic. It has leveled off. I looked at a graph the other day, it's starting to come down, and as people go back to work, I would anticipate that would continue to come down, but we did see an increase when COVID started.
Well, there's not very many people not working in Beaufort County. And how about the virtual training? How did that go? How, I mean, was that successful that way?
So our social workers and our staff as well, Melanie as well, we, I mean, we are still attending those trainings, the mandatory trainings. Of course, it's my opinion, and I think the opinion of very many people, that those trainings, you get more out of them when you're actually in person.
Okay.
Because you're able to interact with your coworkers and you're not looking at a screen. You know, you've got someone from another county who maybe does the same program as you do, and you can sit there and talk with each other. So really, you get more out of networking with, you know, people from other counties than, than you do when you're sitting here looking at a computer.
So do you see that returning to in-person training in the?
They, they did, they attempted towards, I'd say August, September, towards the end of the year, they were attempting to restart in-person trainings, and then we had the COVID surge, so they pulled back on those. So I'm hoping when the, you know, if the, if the cases, you know, decrease and things, I know we'll never go back to normal. I hear people say that, but if things return to some normalcy, I would anticipate we would go back in in-person. Just lose that face-to-face, and I tell people all the time, whether I've been a worker or the director, I've always gotten more when I went to trainings or workshops or meetings, not so much from the person giving the training, but talking to my neighbor and finding out how they're doing things. So you lose that when you do virtual.
Okay.
One of, one of the things that we heard yesterday from Jim Mattson was that they did a survey of the inmates, and we were at like 75% that either had substance abuse or mental problems. And you're bringing, you know, the same kind of news to us. What, what can we do as county commissioners? I mean, it appears to me that there's no place for these people to go.
So the biggest thing I can say is advocate to the General Assembly to appropriate more funding for services. When mental health, this is, I can talk about this all day long, so it would stop me, you know, if I get going off too much, but say when mental health divested 10 to 15 years ago, the, you know, at that time, it was, the philosophy was in community services, it'll be more cost-effective, people will get better services, and again, the philosophy and theory around that is, is right. The problem is, since that has happened 15 years ago, whenever it was, we just continue to this day to struggle to have adequate resources for people who need these services. And I strongly feel like communities, the state, counties are paying for this one way or the other. So we can put, advocate and put funding in for people to receive treatment and get the services that they need, or we can, you know, overwhelm the hospitals with people there who are having issues and, you know, maybe need an involuntary commitment, can't get services, you know, DSS, we're spending more county money than we've ever spent trying to provide services. Law enforcement, you know, they have to, when someone's having an issue, they're called out if they have to go to the hospital, they're having to sit with the individual or transport the individual, you know, you know, wherever a bed is located. So I strongly feel like we're paying for this as a community, and I think you would see a lot of the money that's going towards paying for, you know, transporting people that are having some kind of breakdown and having to go to the hospital and the ER and sit there for days. If we could change over where we're spending that money upfront and people able to get substance use treatment and people able to get mental health treatment and other services. I think on the back end, we would see that reward that your law enforcement budgets may not be as big as they are. Hospitals wouldn't be overwhelmed. I mean, there's just, to me, this trickles down in a lot of ways, but for me, if we could just advocate as a county to the General Assembly, you know, more funding to help people get treatment if they need it. Years ago, there was, you know, mental health was, was state-run and county-run, and if someone had an issue, I tell this story all the time, you know, they had a case manager, and they followed them, and if, if someone's medication ran out, and they realized they hadn't picked up their prescription, they would go knock on the door, hey, we realized you didn't get your prescription, you know, let's go see the doctor right now, let's go ahead and get you back set and going. And, you know, yes, there's, that involves funds because, you know, counties and states paying, you know, individuals to do that, but on the back end of that, that person is not ending up in the ER or calling us or law enforcement having to go out because, you know, they found themselves in a bad place. So I think on the, you know, up-fronting those services and not letting it trickle down to these other things that really don't help people, it's just this cycle of, you know, we'll go put a Band-Aid on it, and then, you know, a month from now, we're back there again.
So in the school system, because we heard that yesterday, we're seeing an increase on the mental cases. So, you know, either they need more staff, they say, I'm assuming they're doing referrals to you guys to try to help individuals.
Well, really, the referrals would go to mental health providers, therapists, licensed clinicians to provide those services.
But I mean, are they going directly from the school system to the, to the provider?
Most of the time. Now, there are instances where we get involved and the child may end up coming into care, but they don't have to come through us to get those services arranged. They would go through Trillium and Trillium's provider network.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, please don't think what I'm about to say is non-supporting because I do support more funds, more availability, and with the selling, the settling of opioid lawsuits and figuring out how we have to spend that money, you know, case management may be something that we need to look at. I understand there's a committee that's working on this, and to that extent, they probably need to get in front of the commissioners and start telling us how they want to spend the money because the money will come to us. But also, I think what I hear is a lot of, let's, let's provide the services to the people that are addictive and to these problems. We're somewhat working on the wrong end of the horse. We need to be trying to stop the drugs. We need, we need stronger sentences and we need more jail time and prison time for the people that are selling drugs. And we also need, I believe, a more efficient effort in this county to stop drugs because there are parts of this county that are eat up with drugs. And we, that's, stopping it to begin with solves the whole problem because then we don't have to deal with these people. But for some reason, we are very permissive when it comes to drugs. The next thing that I move to is, is when you present your budget information, can you break down by the individual job and the amount of their money that is paid by the county, not as an individual? You know, all your 100-and-so people, and then 25% is paid, 50% is paid, and then their salary? So it, so we know, so it gives me a better idea of what the county is, is actually providing because we hear the percentages all the time, but it's hard to quantify. To that extent, I want to say this to this board, I have asked for this from several presenters in the last few days, and I haven't heard anybody on this board object to it. And I don't want to get my budget book and have you guys sit here and say, we never voted on that, so we don't have to have that. So if you guys got some objections, let's hear them now to my request for these department heads and the way they present their staffing.
I think, would it, would it be not better for HR to provide the list of all the county employees? Brian?
It's either way. I mean, we can certainly have HR work through that. There's some that are very easy for HR to pull out. There's got to be some conversation with DSS on theirs because they know how those are broken out, but we can put that together as a single document if you want us to and just show it broken out by department, the way it was asked, and that's not a problem for us to do.
Okay.
If you want to do it as a single document, broken out by department, but some of this stuff, only the department's going to know. I mean, HR is not necessarily going to know.
We would be, so, or if we had, like, say, we have 20 income maintenance caseworker or two, is it okay if we list 20, and then for each one of those, they're the same? So if they're doing food and nutrition, it's a 50-50 reimbursement, if they're doing Medicaid, it's a 75% reimbursement?
Well, maybe an average salary. I would sort of like to see something that has to do with the average salary. I don't care if it's an average for those 20, but need something to quantify that.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem with a single document, providing the department heads, Mr. Manager, have reviewed it and approve it.
We will make sure that they look at it, make sure it's right.
Yes. John? Melanie, what is, what is the biggest problem you all face? Is it NCFAST or is it?
On the economic services side, it's NCFAST, and on the services side, it's lack of residential treatment placements for children and adults, which goes back to the mental health, substance use, and domestic violence issue.
Is the reason we're short, is it because the reimbursement to the provider is not enough to cover their cost?
I feel like with the changing dynamics of children and adults these days, the reimbursement rates are not where they need to be for people to say, I want to do it anymore.
Excuse me, John?
The private costs are astronomical. The private cost, if you have to go to a private facility to get these services, they are astronomical.
Oh, yeah.
But if they're being reimbursed, the reimbursement rate that comes from the state level is not enough to encourage them to take on additional people.
Especially right now, I feel like Level III residential treatment. I've heard staff from Trillium say that they, they are trying to recruit more Level III providers, and people just are not signing up, and I think it's because of the reimbursement rates.
So what we can do to help would, would be to lobby the General Assembly on that. What about NCFAST?
You know, we've been talking about NCFAST.
I know. That was the first thing you ever told me.
Yeah, 20 years. You know, I feel like with them pulling out the child welfare piece of it, NCFAST is what it was when it started in 2012. We started with FNS in July of that year. They added on Medicaid quicker than they wanted to because of the Affordable Care Act, and the system since then has, has been very challenging. I will say it was what Amy would probably agree, getting somewhat better in 2016 and early part of 2017, and then they put the child welfare part in there in the latter part of 2017, and it has been, it's been, every day we get something, something's not worked right, something didn't run, we've got to work a report, we've got to go back and issue benefits, we've got to go back and do a referral because someone received benefits they shouldn't have received. That is constant, that has not changed. And I would, I would, you know, we've had that conversation about another system, but we're so far into this one, and I think the funding that has been spent on NCFAST, my understanding, I'm not sure there would be any, I don't know, but I don't, I'm not sure this would be receptive.
Did Keith Kidwell ever meet with you on this?
I have not talked to him.
Okay. Because I asked him to, so that's fine.
When you look at eligibility and the audits that you're going through, like on the 200 cases, and I heard you say that you're trying to move back to where an individual's a specialist on a particular program so that you don't have mistakes. Does, does, that's going through NCFAST?
Correct.
On, on NCFAST, do they not have ways for flags to pop up and question the eligibility? I mean, does, I mean, I write insurance, and, you know, when I'm loading stuff into the system, it pretty quickly will tell me that's not okay, and I'm being nice.
With our, the old system that we had where we entered someone's data in to determine the eligibility, we could process a case and key it into the system less than five minutes. With the NCFAST system, it's
With the NCFAST system, it's very challenging where there's so many different places that a worker has to go to, so many different things that that worker has to enter into the system that I wouldn't be afraid to say it could take them now 20 to 30 minutes to key a case in and to go back and double-check everything because the technical errors that I mentioned earlier, if, you know, they enter that there's three people in the home and there, or there's four people in the home and an individual moves out, if it doesn't change it back to three, those are the type errors that are being cited as a technical error. And so there's just so many multiple things that those workers have to go back and recheck and recheck and double-check again. You know, a notice, if the incorrect notice to an individual or something, that there's that glitch in NCFAST that when that notice is sent out to that individual that lets them know that they've been found eligible, if there's one date wrong on a notice, that is a technical error. So, you know, there is, the system does determine the eligibility, but when the, you know, when they first started talking about NCFAST coming several years ago, we were told, "All you had to do is enter the data in, NCFAST would make the determinations and the workers wouldn't even need to know the policy." I wish that had truly happened because these workers have got to know the policy. Sometimes NCFAST may make a decision and determine that someone is eligible, but there's that piece of the policy that maybe is missing into NCFAST so that workers got to know the policy to ensure that that eligibility determination that has come out of NCFAST.
Well, I think the chairman alluded to it, and now that I think about it, and he just told me Microsoft did it, I've used a couple of these programs. The state and some of these counties have these programs. And if you don't know the right answer and get it right the first time, the whole system virtually shuts down. That's a sorry system.
Do you still have somebody full-time working on errors?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You gave us, you gave us a lot of information.
Thank you.
And we appreciate what you do every day. We know that you get in some pretty awkward situations at, like you say, at 3:00 in the morning, and the general public does not realize that that happens.
Well, we appreciate you all's support also.
So thank each one of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, and to reiterate on that statement, I know that's not something that people really know about DSS. People have their ideas about what DSS does in the public. And yes, they are charged with providing benefits to people who are eligible for those benefits. And those, that eligibility and that entitlement is determined by the federal government and the state of North Carolina on who gets those benefits. That sometimes becomes a political thing. That has nothing to do with them. They have tremendous caseloads that they're working on. But the other part of that is they are looking after those folks who are unable to look after themselves. They are charged with ensuring that children are protected and adults who can't look after themselves are protected. And I will tell you that that is one of the most difficult jobs that they do and the things that they see on a daily basis. We were actually talking about it this morning before the board came in. You would have a hard, and people in the public would have a hard time even imagining the things that our caseworkers see on a daily basis, the pure evil that is in this world against children and against adults who are unable to protect themselves. And they do that on a daily basis and do a tremendous job. And I appreciate you saying to them what you do because that is tremendous.
Well, and I also appreciate the fact that I'm answering, I'm saying this for myself. I'm sure some of the other commissioners get the same kind of telephone calls, but I've had telephone calls from grandparents and different people. And I very quickly tell them that I'll raise the issue and I'll have the case reviewed. And every time that I've done that, it was one phone call. So again, thank you for taking another look to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Anytime, you know. We're humans too, and if we need to take a second look, we're absolutely willing to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, the missing person that Superintendent was talking about yesterday was found.
Was found.
Right. Don't know any details, but found and safe, I suppose.
That's great. That's great. Okay, we're down to the rest of the deeds update. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. How about you?
Fine.
Good, good. I, excuse me, I suppose you've all had a chance to look at my monthly summary report that I asked Katie to put into your booklets. We've had a pretty good year up until this point. January is historically slower usually than other months. When I left the office, we had collected $40,000, which doesn't even begin to meet the projection that I put for this month. And I don't think we're going to meet those high projections. I just think that sooner or later, things are going to slow down. And maybe this is the sign that they have here in January. But our office continues to operate the way it has for a long, long time. Of course, we have computers now and we're doing electronic recordings. And for this past fiscal year to date, about 38% of our recordings have been electronic. The rest have been walk-ins or mail-ins. And what I'm going to be asking you folks to help me with this year is it's time to replace some PCs in our vault. We've had them since 2014. And it's time to replace those. And I talked with Charles from EIS and I think we're going to do it with some refurbished computers. I did that for a computer I put in the vault for the, so that attorneys can check the clerk's office, and it seems to be working fine. And I think it'll be fine for what we do in the vault, what we use those computers for. I'm also going to ask for funding for a new large-format scanner. I want to be able to put that scanner and printer on the network so that individuals can print from any workstation to that. And I also, in the future, want to look at another way to provide maps for the public on the Internet. Right now, we're using a program that was designed by a lady who is a one-horse operation. And sometimes service is not what I'd like it to be. So I'm hoping to be able to integrate it with our current software for the other types of documents that we record. And the scanner printer that we have now is not compatible with the Windows that I'd like to upgrade to. So that's going to be my biggest expense, I think, this year as far as adding equipment. And that'll be able to be funded out of my auto restoration money.
When you say large format, you're talking 18 about 24.
Right. And of course, I continue to need space. I mean, you gentlemen know that. We're pretty much trying to go up now. We've covered the floor and we're trying to go up. When I buy a new workstation, it's a tall workstation so we can utilize the upper part of the wall. Y'all have any questions?
Jennifer?
Yes.
I've not had a chance until right now to look at some of these numbers. On your spreadsheet, the numbers across the bottom appears to be the three years from 2021 and the current year, 22. I guess the thing that kind of stands out is when you start looking at the number of deaths and the number of births. Of course, 2122 is part of the year. That's not.
That's right. And it's, I don't do it for the fiscal year. If you, if you go over to the office and you pull the 2021 death book, you will see a bigger number because it's for a different period of time.
So this is, this is almost seven months. When we look at 21, I see your dates, January 21st.
Yes.
Okay.
19 and 20, we lost population based on deaths and births.
Yes, we had a lot more deaths this past year.
This is a technical question. If somebody dies in Greenville, the death certificate, if they're a resident of Beaufort County, is that your number or their number?
It's their number. The death certificate is housed in the county in which the event occurred.
Okay.
So if they died in Pitt County, then the death certificate.
Same thing on births?
But births include Washington and because of the closing of those hospitals up there, they're all coming down here.
Any, any questions, Jennifer?
Just, we're still working on the space thing, okay? That's not dead. That's just part of the process right now.
Well, I have a rough estimate of the space that we have right now, and it's a little over 3,000 square feet. And that's me measuring and plugging into a calculator on.
But that includes the basement, right?
Yes, it does.
And that number again was three?
Maybe I do have that here. I think it's 3200. It's 3200.
3200.
And that's just me, you know, that, that was me and another lady in my office measuring it off and then I plugged it into a calculator on the computer. So it may not be exact.
I think that's pretty close to what Earl said. I think it's a little over 1500 square feet on each floor.
On each floor. No other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and you have a nice weekend.
You too.
Stay safe.
Don't talk about this.
Don't fall down in the snow.
I plan to stay up, but thank you.
Okay, we're down to soil and water update. Are you going to give us a weather forecast?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll just say, I hope it does not snow. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I think I can be very brief and just give you a little rundown on what we do typically during a fiscal year, and that's working through our stream debris grant monies, our cost share programs with the Division of Soil and Water. All of those are on point. We have completed the 2016 Disaster Recovery Program grant that ended on December 31st, and we're currently working in the watershed restoration program. We do have some new programs coming up for next year, 2023. I'll have a contract on your agenda Monday, and that is for some additional monies called the STRAP program. It's very new. 38 million has been appropriated across the state of North Carolina for more stream debris work, but also sediment work and stream bank stabilization, which is a lot more in-depth than what we've done so far. My board will discuss that on Monday evening, so there's no decision on whether or not we'll participate in that. Our budget for this year, we're on point with that. I don't anticipate any problems between now and June 30th. We've completed, I think we spent 53%, according to the reports that I printed yesterday. And for planning in fiscal year 2023, it will be patterned very similarly to what we're doing now. And on today's date, I don't anticipate a lot of changes and no expansion items that I'm aware of.
Ann, on the STRAP, and I know this is a new program that was passed, it was a state statute. Do you know how that money would be allocated between 100 counties? Is it based on population or?
By application. And there are all kinds of sources that can apply, municipalities, soil and water districts, drainage districts, sewer management facilities. Everybody can apply on their own, and the funds will be administered through the Division of Soil and Water Conservation. It'll be handled differently than our grants that we've been working with on stream debris. We won't, it'll just be by application only through them. We won't handle any of the funds at all or be asking that it comes through Beaufort County if they decide to participate in the program.
What problem is STRAP supposed to solve? One of the things that, while you're looking, in what I read and understood was that they were trying to address some issues like on the Cuschea River, and I'm just using that as an example, that nothing had been done on it for years and years and years. And I guess even soil and water didn't have the money or it was never addressed through them. If I was understanding, major waterways and like on the Neuse River. Is it debris removal? Is it opening channels or what?
The program, excuse me, go ahead.
I think it was supposed to be to help clean and in places do some actual dredging. But, you know, it's a new program, so I don't, I don't know how it's going to work.
It's entitled the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program, or STRAP. And the project includes clearing debris or sediment that has blocked streams and drainage ways, stabilizing and restoring streams and stream banks, and rehabilitating or improving certain small watershed structural projects that were previously constructed pursuant to the Watershed Protection and Prevention Act of 1954. A lot of working parts to it. And I think it's also going to be, I've heard something about work mostly in the 100-year
Other comments, Randy?
I've never seen a map of the streams that have been cleared or to be, do you have a map?
We do have maps of all the waterways that we've been cleaning out.
I know, I rode by one the other day and it looked so clean. I said, gee, I wonder if that's been done or just the way it is, but.
Be happy to provide you with copies of all of them, or you can stop by the office and look.
I might do that.
That's all I have unless you have questions.
Stan? Hood?
Yeah.
John? We're good, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all stay safe and out of the snow.
And you, and you too. Any, any comments from the staff before we take our break? All right, we'll take a break and be back in 15 minutes. Let me see if I can. Okay, we're back from our break and we're down to planning and inspections. And Carlton, I guess you're going to talk about planning.
Hey, everybody. Carlton Gideon, planner with the Mid East Commission, and I will be giving the planning department activities update. I'm going to start with the long-range planning work we've been doing for, well, mostly it's been Jamie Heath, I think you're all familiar with. And then I'll move on into the administration and enforcement part, which is more my side. So Jamie's been working on the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. And that is basically a program financed by the, or coordinated, implemented by the Division of Coastal Management to provide technical, financial assistance to local governments for coastal resilience. As I said, Jamie with Mid East and RK and Kay and Engineering Firm are coordinating this process with Beaufort County. So we hope to, well, the first thing, the first deliverable, I guess, is the creation of a risk and vulnerability, vulnerability assessment report. And the second thing to create is a project portfolio. The projects are basically ways to mitigate flooding and other natural hazards. And there's a heavy, there's a preference given to nature-based and hybrid solutions as opposed to man-made solutions. We're in phases one and two. Well, phase one has been completed and we're finishing phase two right now. And we're about to go into phases three and four this year. And so if you have any other questions about that, I can try to answer them or I can refer you to Jamie. So. So, let's see. So, on my side, we did the 160D ordinance updates this year for the subdivision regulations, the travel trailer park and mobile home park ordinance, and the solar facilities ordinance. The 160D updates were necessary because county enabling statutes 153A and city enabling statutes, statutes 160A for land development regulations were consolidated into the new 160D, basically based terminology and, and, you know, clarifying development approvals and types of development decisions, and there weren't really many substantive changes to the, to the, the new 160D statute, but there were a few small ones that really don't apply to the county because the county doesn't have zoning. As far as planning-related activities, there were a total of 172 planning-related activities over 2021. Let's see, I'll break those down. We had two major subdivisions in the past year. Preliminary Platts were approved, basically that's approval to begin construction on a subdivision. The final plat is for when it's completed, to make sure it met all the requirements. And one of those preliminary Platts will never be finished because the, the second preliminary plat was on the same property off a river road. So there were 158 special minor exempt subdivisions, that's a large bulk of, of the approvals I do, and I will go into detail on that a little more in a second. And as you can see, no minor or major mobile home parks, one travel trailer park, minor travel trailer park, it was two trailers, we had two road names, of course, bottom, five no zoning letters, two voluntary agricultural district applications, and one address letter. So, since this is the bulk, the special minor exempt subdivisions are the bulk of, of the approvals I do, I wanted to break this down a little more. Of the 158 of those, we had 53 special subdivisions, two minor subdivisions, and a list of exemptions. Many of them are re combinations. Then I broke it down by township, and as you can see, Chalk Wintery Township and Long Acre have the most. Oh yes, and I thought I'd mentioned 2020 census data, shows Beaufort County had a, about a 6% decline, percent change population from 2010 to 2020, as compared to North Carolina's a 4.48 increase. So, planning department activities for 2022, for this year. I want to continue to review ordinances for improvements and in compliance with statutes. I want to continue to look for ways to improve and streamline the map review and permitting process, basically just try to make everything easier and simpler. I also want to look at the fee schedules of surrounding counties and, and compare them to what we have now. And I also want to make sure we have updated, easily searchable, electronic copies of all of our ordinances available, and I'd like to try to get them on our website, too, if we can. For 160D compliance, we need to have every iteration of our ordinance, moving forward at least, and every, every amendment easily available online. Jamie will, as I said earlier, she'll be working on Resilient Coastal Communities Program, Phase Three and Four. Jamie's also been talking with the, the economic development director, Martin Johnson, about doing an economic development strategy, strategic plan. So, yeah, basically that's all I've had, all I have today. I might also like to say that my planning board has been very helpful, they've been very supportive, and I really appreciate all their assistance, and I also, I also appreciate my technical review committee, they've been very helpful. So, are there any questions?
When you, when you look at the solar.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance, one of the things that I have a concern with looking at what's happening in some adjoining counties, is that we're seeing some very, very large potential solar farms in the neighborhood of 3,000 to 4,000 acres. I would like, and I, I will try to remember to put it on the agenda for the board, I'd like for us to review the possibility of adding some size limit.
Okay.
I don't have a number in mind, but, you know, when you start putting that amount out there, it does not, I mean, it affects a lot of different areas, and the only good person, I mean, the only people that benefit primarily is the landowner. And I'm not for restricting and taking away that, that right, but I do think that we need to consider some size limit, without some kind of buffer, you know, around it.
We could definitely look into that, yes, yes, yeah, please, yeah, I'll be happy to look into that.
Other, other questions, comments?
Would, would you be the person we would go to for, say, a ordinance regarding wind?
Uh.
Wind, energy?
Yeah, yes, yes, definitely.
Because we, I mean, we've got solar, but we don't have, I mean, we don't have wind here now.
We could probably incorporate that into our, or possibly incorporate it into our solar ordinance, or just making new ordinance. Yeah, we could definitely look at that.
Good. And you said there were two new subdivisions?
Yes, sir.
Or actually one, I guess, right?
Yes, and that one hasn't begun construction either. I, I haven't heard anything about that. They were both, they were, the preliminary Platts were approved for basically the same parcel of land off a river road, and it was, it was honestly, it was kind of strange because one got approved, and then it seemed like a few months later, they came back, someone else came back, and there was a different owner, and they tried to get approval for, or they did get approval for another subdivision. It wasn't even the same layout, so they could have just used the, the approved layout, but they spent all that time and, and money and effort on creating a new subdivision. And, yeah, I haven't heard anything from them.
Did you survey that?
I don't think I did. I didn't do that one, did I?
No, you didn't.
Because I would have caught that.
You didn't.
Okay, one last question on the.
Yes, sir.
Census data, can we forecast the impact on EMS and fire revenue?
Uh, we could definitely look into that. Is EMS and fire with regards to the population decline?
Well, population decline, does that, I'm not sure how that'll impact assessed evaluations. It may not. I had the question come to me the other night at the Association.
No, but, I mean, we can, we can definitely look into that.
Okay.
Well, I'm pretty sure I got lost in that. What's, what's the question that we're looking at?
The question was, does, will the population decline impact EMS and fire tax revenue? And I know it's based on property assessed valuation, but I don't, I told them I didn't think it would, but I just was.
We get too many mics open.
Well, property values have been going up, so, you know, the answer is that it won't. If property values start declining, then the answer is yes, it will. It's driven more by the market for, or real estate than it is anything else. But let me just comment on, on wind, on turbines, but most, about 95% of Beaufort County is in a restricted military fly zone. So that's why we don't have, we don't need necessarily a windmill ordinance, because you're talking about, some of these things go down to 100 feet, most of them are like 500 feet, most of the windmills now are like 400 feet. So, you know, there's probably not a need for a windmill ordinance in Beaufort County, because the military's gonna come after you if you start trying to build one of these because of the review process, when you submit the review process, it goes to the, oh gee, who regulates the, the towers, the, the height of the towers?
FCC.
Yeah, it, it's gonna go to them for review, and then it's gonna be bumped off to the military, so you're, you're never gonna get one approved. I, I, I think the money that we would spend on that would be a waste of time, and I was into this big time about 10 years ago.
I, I would agree, we had people in here, and we had, in some cases, some documents already signed, and it was, it was killed, and it was, gets back to Commissioner Richardson as it relates to the military flyovers.
I'm curious, how does that affect?
The height.
How does that affect cellular, cellular towers?
Well, yeah, yeah, the military reviews on those towers, of which the feds, Commerce Commission, whoever it is that, that gives the licenses for the towers, they send it to the military for comment. So that's how that review happens, and that's why you're, that's why on towers, you know, we've got a, I think you probably build as tall a tower as they build anywhere, but you still got, probably got a limited height on, on cell towers in Beaufort County. So the thing is self-regulated, if you will. Of course, the big deal is the approach to the Dare County bombing range, because people come from Tennessee, West Virginia, Georgia, in the Northeast to approach those Dare County bombing range, and that's why it gets knocked out. It's just something that we don't need to do, I don't think.
Okay.
When you, you, you talked about what Jamie is working on as it relates to coastal management.
Yes.
Is, is her work primarily on the entire county of Beaufort, or is it more geared towards the municipality?
It, it's odd, because she actually is working with RK and K on Beaufort County and the City of Washington, and Aurora and Bellhaven, they all have their own separate RCCP programs. But for the, for Beaufort County, we have been, the focus has mostly been on unincorporated areas, but it, I mean, it, it's hard to, it, it doesn't really make sense to exclude municipalities because they're part of the county, but, yeah, that's a, but, but we've been, it's mostly been a countywide, the Beaufort County specific one is looking at, just countywide, with, with emphasis on unincorporated areas, I believe.
They, they did this instead of requiring the five-year review for the KAMA updates, I think is what they did, because we haven't had to do a KAMA update, we haven't done one since you've been here, have we, Brian? See, at one, one time we were doing a five-year required KAMA review land use plan update, and I think they started this program to replace the mandated five-year review.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I think this is actually, this is actually a different program, and it, there, you put a program, you put some planning in place, and then there's a next step, and then a next step to where you get funds to do that project. So it's a separate deal to, to essentially try to, to help counties and municipalities formulate a project for, for resiliency, plan it, and then you get through all that process, they'll give you some funding to help build it, so I, I think it's, I think it's separate from that.
Oh, okay, but, but we haven't had to do a five-year plan. I mean, we, we used to hire a consultant every five years, and we haven't done those, I don't know why they stopped those. I sort of thought the resiliency deal took part of that.
I can check.
Place a lot of that.
I can check on that, see if our KAMA plans be updated.
Yeah, the resiliency plan, Brian and I are sitting on that, it really has two components to it. One is, what, what can you, what can you do to stop and minimize damage, and then number two is, how do you recover from it? So that's what they're strategizing on.
Yeah, and the project somewhat is puzzling because FEMA already regulates that, so, you know, what, what can you, you know, there are some places, if you were in mountainous areas, or where you had more hilly terrain, you may have flood issues that could be managed, but we're in a rising water zone, ours are virtually unmanageable.
Well, that's what they're talking about, is what, how do, is there's things you can do with a rising water zone?
Yeah, but the FEMA regulations are already quite.
FEMA's all involved in this, this is all, they're involved in part of this.
Yeah, but the FEMA regulations are already quite comprehensive, so I'm, I'm not interested just to put the flag out, I'm not interested in more flood regulations in Beaufort County to, to try to get us up the scale with people saying we're gonna get reduced flood insurance rates and all that stuff. I'm just not interested in it, because FEMA already has the infrastructure in place that does that.
No, I, I, I understand that, and the RCCP is not, will not necessarily need to increase regulations for, it's a very, it's a, it's been a difficult project because it's very broad in scope, and there's so many different, not, the scope of not just the problems that it's trying to, to, you know, take care of, but also the solutions, it's, it's, it's very broad.
That's the answer, that's why it's broad and difficult.
We, we have Brandon here, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't wanna.
If you'll stick around in case we have time at the end for any additional questions.
Sure, definitely.
Good morning.
Hey, how you doing?
Fine.
Sorry I was late, I, for some reason, I thought it was at 11 o'clock, I was on the phone, ran over here, found out I need to go on a diet, to tell you that much, but anyways.
Is that part of your report?
It is, I just now caught my breath.
He's doing a last. Fifteen minute mine.
My department is the, of course, the inspections department, we've got two building inspectors and an accounting permit technician. We contract also with the Mid East Commission as part of our budget. We maintain, last year was, we're 2021, $305,000 roughly, and that included contracting out with Mid East, kind of our overview of our department. We do inspections for commercial residential construction, also we enforce all the state building codes and the Beaufort County flood ordinance. We're required to get continuing education to maintain our license for our certificates. Our next page here, you can see the building permit summary for 2020, and then the next page is 2021, I highlighted our residential permits. You see in 2020, we wrote 208 residential permits, and 2021, we wrote 220, no, 208 in 2020, and 221, we wrote, 2021, we wrote 220. It has been, I say the last four or five years, we've gradually increased the number of permits, especially residential permits. We don't, we don't do many commercial permits here in the county. Never, I've been here 21 years, and it's just mainly schools, nutrient, things like that, Dollar Generals, we've had the Dollar Tree, Family Dollar just came, things like that, nothing big as far as commercial. But residential, we have been, probably since I've been here, so this is probably last three or four years, has been the busiest we've ever been. Next page, we also, unfortunately, our department handles the road signs, the green road signs. We installed 183 road signs this year, I think that's 30, 35 more than last year. 25 road signs were repaired in 2020. 25 road signs were repaired in 2021. This year has been the most, I've been cussed out since I've been here as far as the road signs. People, when they want a road sign, they expect we're going to go in the shop and make it. And it's usually it's two to three week turnaround. This year, they say because of COVID, it's just, it's been months making the signs, getting the material and stuff. And it's been, it's been a struggle with the road signs. But we, we ended up doing about 40 more, 35 more this year. And if you ride around, I mean, there's still road signs missing, but it looks a whole lot better. And the concrete is in, things look a whole lot better. And for me, it's, it's a whole lot better, you know, because I use road signs every single day. And this, i- i- if you don't know the roads very well, it's good to have a road sign, that's for sure. But yeah, we've, we've done good with that.
Yeah, just real quick, and I think we make this point, or we try to make this point every year when we talk about this, is that we've got folks who think it's fun to go tear down road signs or to steal road signs because they like them. They want to put them in their room or they want to do something with them. And to Brandon's point about knowing where you are, these are life safety issues. I mean, it might be cute and fun to go say, I like that rail, that sign and I'm going to take it down and put it in my room. But if that causes an ambulance or a sheriff's office, a person to miss a turn when they're trying to get to somebody in a lifesaving situation, you could end up causing somebody to die. And folks don't think about that, but, but that, it is critical for us. You, you can't just say, I'm going to Google everything or I'm going to get my phone to tell me where to go. Those are important infrastructure in our county and people need to realize that. And, and if we can find them, we'll put them in jail for it.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. The road sign, road signs and address, we, we enforce, you know, as a building code, that's, that's, you've got to have your address before we can issue a CO. You've got to have your physical address. If you're up on your mailbox or post or on your house. And those two things are very important for, for EMS, finding your, finding your house.
Let me just talk about something for a minute. I support everything you guys have said. I get over the county pretty much. And I realize you've done a lot of work. I also realize you've got a lot of work yet to do. You know, you're right. There are a lot of places that there are signs down. One of the things that I want to bring up, you know, we did, we reworked the ordinance on road signs and addressing. And I just want to be sure that Sam and Lefty got a road sign for a single house down their driveway. Are you replacing any of those things where the commissioners didn't approve the naming of that road? But somebody in the county issued them a road sign just for their personal driveway?
Oh, no, no, no.
You're not replacing those. I don't think we should because that just makes things more and more confusing. Because I see them all the time and it, it seems like in the places that you see them, that one guy went and got it and then his neighbor had to have the same thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's got to be, it's got to be a county road that we do.
And the other thing, if, if you need, as far as I'm concerned, if you need more money to be able to do a better job with this and do more of these things this coming year, I think you should have it because there are some critical places that the road signs are down. And I realize sometimes positioning the sign in the right place to make sure the trucks don't tip it over and all kinds of things that go on. So if, if, one of the things that I would support an increase on is more money in this particular project so that we can do more of these.
Brandon, is there any other areas in Beaufort County that are classified as a wave light we have in the Punggol community? Where we've had issues?
You're talking about a flood, flood wave?
Flood wave.
Flood wave. Is that the only area in the county?
Yeah, I think that is the only, yeah, that is.
And, and.
We know about.
There may be some others that come up when people apply for building permits, but it's definitely the most significant.
Right, but yeah, because people are already living there and they just took in that whole area. They're, they're already living there.
But we still having to do it case by case. They, they have never come in and said, we'll take a look at the entire area.
Yes, they, they are supposed to be doing a detailed study on that area.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Yeah, when that is, I don't know. They, they said they're, that's, that's FEMA. That's got to do the detailed study.
I, in, in years past, I was always led to believe that, that when you started getting flood insurance, everything centered around the elevation. And I took a course online that was provided by the National Flood, whatever the name of it is. And I was led to believe that there's a lot more information A in the background. So the rate is determined by a lot of things and that the elevation is not the, the number one factor anymore.
Right, right. And, and what I'm hearing now is it's even going to change. You might not be in the flood zone now, but you, I hear now that they're going to change where if you're within 100 feet of a flood zone, you're still going to be required to have flood insurance.
Well, I've been, I've been to the site and I've put in addresses. And either my, my eyesight is not that good or I'm not, I'm missing something.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's very muddy.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Richard, yeah, that, I don't know how they mess that up.
Yeah, that's, that's the simplest rendition is to get on the site, plug in the address and see what it is. And I use that in my office. But you better check four or five properties up and down the way and double check that one or you'll wind up in a mess with that. Now, I don't know whether you noticed that or not, but you can hit, there's another thing on there called FRIZ, flood insurance, something. You can hit the FRIZ and you can get into some really detailed stuff on that same program if you push that button and, and, but yeah. See, what FEMA did, this is a troublesome thing. Because prior to this last go-around, FEMA would publish maps of the entire county. And those of us that did flood work, we went out and bought the maps. And there was an engineering study document that went with that that had a lot of cross-sections and a lot of the other stuff in there. So you, you get that and you've got hard copies. The risk right now to guys like me that do this is this is online. I don't trust an electron for the future when the lawsuit happens. Because somebody can change it real easy, real quick. So what we do is we get on there and when we're, we're doing assessments and certificates, we print it out and put a hard copy in our file. So at least we know what was online that day. So I will tell you, be careful with this stuff because you have to trust the federal government. And we all know how that is.
I have a question, Brandon. Two things. You said 100 feet within, I mean, the measurement with horizontal measurement, 100 feet within.
Well, they're saying, they're saying they're going to go by feet. There's, there might be 200 feet, 300 feet.
Does the vertical measurement say, you know, in Beaufort County, we have a lot of low and high ground. We could have a flood plain and then 60 feet away from that, you'd be completely out of it.
Yeah, but they're, but they're, but what they're saying is it doesn't make a difference if I'm out of it. If I'm within X amount of feet, I'm still going to have to play flood insurance.
Even if you're 25 feet above?
That's, that's what they're saying.
That's the federal government.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
That's pretty messed up.
Well, you're still at the mercy of your banker on this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're, you're still going to be at the mercy of it.
Your banker can exempt you if he wants to, if he's willing to take the risk. It's, it's always been that way, but the banks are really the.
Yeah, where the bank, you know, you don't, you don't have to be in the flood zone and the bank still requires you to get a flood insurance name.
Right. And last thing, are, are you offended by the phrase, let's go, Brandon?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
So Mr. Chairman, just, just real quick to hit that just a little bit more. As you'll recall, when FEMA came in and had the meetings about the changes in the flood plains, there was, there was discussion about the fabric method they were going to start using. You're right in that initially it was, what's your elevation? What's the BFE and where are you on elevation? And are you within that map that we've laid out and here's your, here's your flood insurance? What they said was, does it make sense that if I live right up against the river and you live 200 feet away from the river, does it make sense if we're at the same elevation that I pay just what you pay? And, and in looking at that, they're using computer models to say, okay, if the water, what is the impact? How far are you from the hazard? And should your premium to cover that be just the same as somebody who's right up against the hazard or further away from the hazard? So it, I think they called it the fabric method where they're looking at more variables to try to make it more appropriate for the premium based on your exposure. Instead of just that initial, yeah, you're in it, don't care where you are in it.
Well, I mean, the, the question started rolling in and of course, you had to do it in the chat box. I mean, you didn't do it live. But it was pretty, it was pretty quick to come back. Is you don't have to worry about all that stuff because it's in the background on the computer. The computer is going to generate the, the rate, the actual cost of the policy.
Well, the whole problem in this is it's run by the government. And as long as the government runs it, there's going to be guys sitting around there that as soon as they finish this project, they got to have something to do to justify their existence. So they're going to come up with another deal and another deal and another deal to keep themselves working. And there has been a movement that hasn't gained much foothold, but there has been a movement to take the insurance part of it away from the federal government and turn it over to the insurance companies. The insurance companies will lower the overhead and get very sophisticated with this in a hurry. And that's what needs to be done. The public would be served better with private insurance, turning it over to private insurance companies and taking it away from FEMA.
So business is good? Is that what I understood?
Rolling.
Rolling.
Rolling, right now anyway. Prices are high, everything's high, expensive. But people still build them. Talked to a contractor the other day, he said most of his houses that he's building, six, $700,000, they're doing it out of pocket.
Doing it out of pocket.
Not even going through the bank. Got a lot of people out of state coming down.
So they didn't even check flood insurance?
Just had somebody call off as well ago. They've, they just bought a, bought a house, never been down here. Just calling, asking some information. He said he was going to go down there today, check it out. And already bought it. From Virginia.
A lot of people getting out of Virginia.
California. Had somebody from Texas. A lot of people out of state.
We'll take them all.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions? If not, we'll, we'll let you go.
All right.
I'm going to walk back, though.
Slowly, Ryan.
That's right.
Somebody's going to text you Jim, Jim's cellphone number. He'll get you on a program. Okay, we're down to Public Works.
Good morning.
Is the sun shining outside?
It's not snowing.
I'm like a little kid.
It's not going to snow. It's going to be just like the last. Wake up in the morning and find out.
Christine, I was just trying to break the ice before you got started.
There you go. You're out there trying to pour salt on it.
Well, I will say last weekend and then this weekend for the facilities division, Friday snow is the best. Because it takes the pressure off of us a little bit as far as cleaning up and salting the sidewalks and things like that. Although I'll brag on the facility staff, even though it, snow and ice occurred on Friday, they were here working on Saturday as well as Sunday to make sure that everything was back and ready to go on Monday. Yay, there it is. Okay, I have it here and it's up there now. Okay. Again, good morning. And for those of you that have been here for a few years, you'll recognize this PowerPoint. It's one that I continue to use each year just to continue to update. So again, for the, I'll give an overview of the entire Public Works Department, which is, consists of three different divisions. As soon as I advance it. Of course, in the water division is Mr. Eric Jennings, facilities division Todd Taylor. And the solid waste division, Wes Overman is overseeing the majority of the day-to-day issues in that division. And I will also say that Eric Jennings, please keep him in your prayers. He, his father passed away this week, so that's why he's not here. And Todd is working on day-to-day activities, so Wes and I are here today. This next slide is just a carryover from last year, talking about COVID and issues. Just to say that it's still there and it affects Public Works. It affects Public Works every day. Some things we've, you know, gotten a really good handle on and we've learned how to adjust and adapt, but it still continues. The personnel challenges, again, with the second wave coming through with us separating our crews into two totally separate crews. Subcontractor challenges, it doesn't matter what project we seem to be working on, the subcontractors are going through the same challenges that we are going in and that they're scheduled to show up one day to work. And then they don't show up because one of their crew members is quarantined. Well, that means that the other people on the crew are quarantined too. And it's just a, it just continues to escalate and snowballs. So, and then material delivery. If you recall, last year at budget season, we talked a lot about material delivery and material escalation prices. I will say that the current budget year, the additional funds that we included in the budget at this point, 50% through, appears that we will, that, that will take us through the end of June 30th. So we hope that that trend continues. However, material delivery delays, we are still, we've been dealing with that every month, almost every delivery. We may order nine canisters previously. When you order nine, you receive nine. Now you receive a phone call that says, I've only got 40 that's available to the entire eastern part of the state. Will three get you through this week and then I'll bring you two next week and then I can get you four the following week. So it's taking a lot of additional time and energy on the staff in order to make sure that, that we're able to get in what we need. And I will again praise my staff that they are doing an excellent job with that, keeping up with it. Also, our suppliers, again, are, are doing everything that they can in order to keep the materials and the chemicals and everything to all of the municipalities and counties that need it. So we've got really good working relationships with them. We are still receiving the emails though that are talking about price increases that are coming. Please be expecting this or that. So as we get down to the specifics in January and February, pulling those together, we'll have a, an exact percentage on it. But again, we, we are still following that. Some of the things on the water side, meters. Again, we just went through a metering project, so that's good for us because we, we were able to get that large supply of 14,000 meters before all of these issues hit. So we're only having, you know, new, new meter signups and that type of thing. And we've placed a large order in July, another large order a couple of months later. Again, when we heard about the delay, so we're, we're trying to stay on top of that. Anything that contains brass, that's another hot commodity that is a little, little difficult to get. So we're trying to, to stay ahead of that to make sure that we're not going to have an issue. So hopefully, we're doing all that we can to, to take care of that. Water division, capital projects updates. I can't tell you how much I wish that I could change some of these slides because I feel like I've been talking about the Gaylord Booster Pump Station for a very long time and it's because I have. But that project is 99% complete. However, during the final checkout of that station, what was discovered is that the chemical feed pumps were not performing as they were originally specified. And the reason for that is because the manufacturer changed the specifications of the pump without letting anybody know. So during the final checkout, they didn't pass the inspection. So the engineers, contractors, the pump supplier, they've all been working for the past few months trying to work this out. months trying to work this out. As of right now, the latest information I have, which is from this morning, is that they are expecting to receive the new pump that they will test and hopefully it will meet and perform per the specifications and requirements next week. So if that is the case, then they would order additional pumps of that same make and model for the liquid chlorine conversion project. So it is a chemical feed pump that we use at various locations. And again, you're talking about things that are flow dependent and things like that. So it just, the manufacturer changed the specs and it didn't perform like it was supposed to, so we're obviously not accepting something unless it performs as it needs to. So that is why we have the delay. So that actually is the same status for, for of these projects, for the Gaylord Booster Pump Station and conversion to the liquid chlorine for districts one, four, and five. It's all dependent upon one chemical feed pump. The South Side Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project, if anyone's been down 33 recently, you'll see a big rig out there that is for the test well. They have completed the test wells on the PD and the Castle Hanes. The quantity of water in the PD was actually more than what we were expecting, which is always good news because PD traditionally has high quality. And of course, the Castle Hanes, we knew there'd be no issue with quantity, it's just a matter of the quality. So they are actually pulling samples this week to get the, to send off, to get the quality of those two aquifers and so that then they could look to see what type of blend we would need to do. So again, the well is moving forward. The actual plant expansion, the majority of the submittals have been complete, the filters have been ordered, but I don't have an exact date of when they will start with that. Again, it depends on when the material deliveries comes in, but it's very close. And that's TA Lovin', that is the contractor on that project.
Is included in that project painting that storage tank that's close to the road?
No.
Well, we need to do that, it's ugly.
It is ugly. And there's different, different philosophies on that. It used to be a lot uglier because we cleaned it probably three years ago. So again, you're, you either have raw concrete that needs to be power washed and cleaned every few years, or you have paint that's peeling off, so. But we'll look into that. The, the liquid chlorine conversions for District Six and District Seven, those submittals are in review and pre-construction meetings should be starting with the funding agency in February. The ARPA projects, again, if you all recall, funds were awarded for these back in September. SCADA, water line improvements, mixers, repairs, that type of thing. These are all funded through ARPA, so we are still in the beginning stages of that because of the procurement issues and things like that that have to go through. So different, two different, well, actually, three different engineering firms will be providing design services for these multiple projects. So we're in the, there's a lot of upfront work that has to take place. So again, we're working on that.
Are, are they committed to a deadline in their contract or?
No, not yet. They will be, but because the ARPA funds have the deadlines.
Yeah, but we haven't signed a contract with them, have we? So we can put a deadline in it. Okay, we need to do that because everybody's got more to do than can get done.
That's, that's very true, very true. Which, I skipped one of my introduction slides when I couldn't get it on the right thing, which I'm gonna go back to it even though y'all are going, going the wrong way. Which is kind of the premise of my presentation. So again, for those of you that have been here, you know I normally end with a quote. Well, this time I was planning to start with a quote. It says, if you're brave enough to start, you're brave enough to finish. And so what you'll find is I'm going through these things, the majority of the things that I'm talking about, we're in the middle of them, we're not finished it. So it's things that we've all started and we've all got to work really hard to finish it. It was supposed to be my introduction, but I missed that. So again, the, because of the ARPA and the federal procurement requirements and the different requirements that they have for that, that's where we are with all of those. But again, in conversations with the designers to final out, to finalize those details, so I will be bringing back to the full board, the agreements and the contracts to, for your approval. Looking forward to 2023 for the water division, no new projects are planned. Because again, when you're looking at all of the projects I've just discussed, that is a lot of work that's still, that needs to be done by staff and contractors and that type of thing. So as far as the overall annual budget that will be presented, I'm not planning on any major capital expansion projects to be included in this year's budget. So looking to just continue providing the, the same services that we're currently providing and get to, to wrapping up some of these other existing capital projects. On the facility side, we've been working from July through the end of the year on more of the, the smaller, I'm not gonna say capital projects, but the smaller maintenance projects, that has been what staff has been focused on. And we've been in the preliminary plannings for the capital projects and just as a reminder again, courthouse interior, tidling roof, sheriff's office, then the maintenance shops, annex windows, card access, and then Mr. Francisco's building, he's up there too. All of these are, are in the, the planning, design phases. When I say all of them, the majority of them are. Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, an electrical engineer is working on the lighting, so waiting for those. Interior renovations, that scope is basically written, it's a matter of getting down to color selection. So again, these are all things that staff is working on and working to, to get moving in, in order so that we can complete all of those items. Planning for 2023 for the facilities, again, the general facilities budget, looking for that to remain the same that it's always been. Roof replacements, which again, you know that we have the schedule, roof replacement schedule. We've reached the point where in speaking with the engineers, the roofing engineers, that a few years ago, we did some coatings on some roofs and those coatings have held up extremely well. So they're coming back and when they do their inspection this time, they're going to look at it to, to double check, to make sure the priorities are still the same because some of the roofs that may have previously been slated to be replaced, the coating that they applied a few years ago has held up better than what they anticipated, so we may be doing some shuffling. So that's why I don't have specific buildings up here. Because the ones that are listed and may get shuffled by a couple of years because of the, the high, the, the quality of the coatings that are being applied to roofs now. Also, what we'll, we'll talk more about during the budget time is HVAC pump and valve replacements. One of the things that we've run into is because the admin building and the seaboard building were both renovated and updated at the same time, means everything's wearing out at, at about the same time. So the seaboard building has a chiller and a boiler set up, so again, it's one big unit that powers the entire, or conditions the entire building. So when one thing goes out, the entire building is out. So what we've been dealing with with that, there are multiple valves on the cold and hot water lines that are starting to fail. So we're going to go in and start replacing those valves so that we do not get to the point, we'd like to have a planned replacement of valves and lu, valves and pumps in lieu of an emergency, which is what we've had with one or two of the pumps that we've had to pull and find somebody to repack to get us through temporarily. And repacking pumps, I will tell you, has become an art and it's very difficult to find people that can do that type of work now. So again, that's for the facilities division. Solid waste. Again, capital updates and again, the, we've talked about that the surveys are complete. Interbanks Engineering is working on the design of the individual sites. As we've all known, the Yatesville site is the first one that we're looking at. The engineer went in and did a layout and then Wes and I looked at it and what's up on the screen, which you may or may not be able to, to see. It's my, yeah. So this is the existing platform and retaining wall. And when we're looking at the site, we are trying to determine the best way to keep the general public off of that ramp and that hill. Because having people turn and back up a hill, park on something that's inclined and get out, that's just not very safe. So what we're looking at now is potentially lowering the compactor dam to the flat. So if someone is just coming up with regular household waste, bagged waste, they would have no need to go up onto the elevated hill. And so they, there would be no need for a person with just one bag of trash to have to take their car, turn around, back it up a hill or drive straight up and then back down. So we're looking at having that. And then the, the blue represents the circular traffic pattern where they would just be able to come, you know, circle around and be able to make that turn. This on the left side is a concrete pad, an existing pad, where we would look at, continue having cardboard recycling, oil, motor oil recycling, and also a metal bin. So again, just trying to clean up and make that better. What we would do, removing the metal platform, would be reinforce the retaining wall and then you would still, we'd have vegetation as well as bulk waste off of that. Any other discussions for me? We do have Mr. Vance Moore here, again, if you recall, was here at the last commissioner's meeting, giving information regarding our overall master plan for the solid waste system, which of course, is very detailed and very involved. And a commissioner's meeting can be very long for you guys anyway, so I certainly understand that. But Mr. Moore did come back today to, so that we could continue talking through things. Again, he went back and looked at our, the way our system is currently set up. He got up-to-date tonnages from the convenience sites, so another year looking at things. And, and based upon his experience, he has some recommendations and things. And again, further discussion about the mega sites that we had discussed. I of course relayed to him what previous discussions had been, some of the comments that commissioners had made. He incorporated those and ran some numbers and some different things, you know, kind of shook out a little bit. But I, I hope that in this environment today, Mr. Moore can come up and we can all have some open and frank discussion as far as what, what you think would be acceptable and what you think the board as a whole, changes that would be agreeable to the board. Because there, we could make a list of 30 different changes that could be made that would potentially improve, whether it, you could make changes that would improve the service, you could make changes that would decrease the cost, but those may not necessarily be to the appetite of the board. So I'm hoping that we can have some, some frank discussion. So Vance?
Good morning. Good morning.
So I think on the last time we were going through the presentation, I was a little bit long-winded and we didn't get through the end of it. But I think in summary, what, what we proposed is two mega sites, one on the north side of the river, one on the south side, and taking your current 10 convenience site, conglation sites down to six, with the two mega sites replacing a number of them, particularly on the north side of, of the river. The mega sites would allow for better compaction of waste for transport. And in addition to that, we, we proposed not hauling yard waste debris. That the mega sites would collect the debris directly and it would be processed at the, at the site. There'd be no more hauling, so there'd be a savings on the hauling side. My analysis was based upon the anticipated capital that would be required for building the two sites. It was also based on the best information I had as far as what the hauling cost would be. And I think in summary, what I said is that if you were to incorporate the mega sites with these changes, that you would have an overall cost savings of the operation of the plan, of, of the convenience site program.
The, the yard waste, I, I'd like to hear some more. Some more about how we would dispose of the yard waste at the sites without having to haul it?
Well, so I want to be clear when I say dispose. What typically happens is that yard waste is collected, managed in a, in a stockpile until there's appropriate amount, till you can do something with it. I think traditionally it's been ground, turned into mulch. The question is, what do you do with the ground materials? I think that that is the, the, the big question. I think that what we would propose on, on this example is that there has been some talk about, separate from the convenience sites, doing a, a major storm debris management site, which would be an area where you could spread the mulch in such a way that it's, it's not considered a compost or whatever, it's a soil amendment. And that it would basically be disposed on site by spreading it in thin layers on, on your site. Other than that, you'd have to find some way to, to, to some other means of getting rid of the mulch.
Last question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is it possible to, in your past experiences, that the public would be able to benefit from the mulch, being able to, I mean, would we have the, we could possibly have the equipment to load it and they haul it off?
So my experience with that is because of what's being brought in it, into the material, it's going to have items in it that may not be desirable. You know, weeds, briars, things like that, that make it difficult to use as a, as a landscaping mulch. I'm not saying it couldn't, but it's only as good as what goes in it. And being that, you know, you're having, you know, public bringing it in and what, you know, what they're bringing in there, I would, I would caution you that it could be a challenge to use that as a, as a mulch that is desired by the public.
I've seen, I've seen some people brag about how good it is, even, and they will pull whatever's in there out of it. It makes really good soil for growing gardens.
You talking about mulch or you talking about a compost? It's two different things.
Yeah, well, one becomes the other eventually, but yeah, compost is of course better.
Yeah, it would. I, I would, I would take and enter into the composting business cautiously.
Okay.
That, that's really how you're disposing of it, isn't it? Spreading it out, let it just decay?
Well, that, that's, ultimately, you need a way to, to get rid of the mulch material. I, I'm going to tell you, it's been a challenge everywhere that I've worked, what they do with that material. I do work for some very large facilities that do have compost facilities. Makes it a lot easier if you're in the business, but just knowing what's involved in the compost side of things, it's not an easy endeavor to get into.
Making it a soil amendment, if I understand it correctly, you're farming it, literally, you're putting it in small enough quantities, distributed over the land so that it doesn't become toxic to the land as it decays. So it becomes an amendment and what you have to watch when you do that is your carbon nitrogen ratio. So you know, you may have to buy a little nitrogen to put on it to make things work really well, depending on your soil types, et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, I think it, I think it's a great idea. If we can, if, if people finish with this, I'd like to ask, how do you propose handling construction debris? What would be the, how would that work?
Because my analysis did not analyze anything with regard to construction demolition debris. We currently don't accept it and... And so the mega sites, if you were to build them, certainly would be set up so if you decided in the future to accept construction demolition, you certainly could. So the, the question would be, number one, would it be materials that are covered under the fee and therefore not charged, you know, it's free to customers to dispose of it? Number two is, where would it be disposed? Is it something that would go to the Republic landfill in Burtie County or something that would go to Pitt County, for instance? And so those costs would have to be analyzed if you were to get into that business. What I, what I analyzed did not consider adding materials that are not currently acceptable.
Okay. But we have places to dispose of that now, if I understand it correctly. I think on the east of, west of Beaufort County, they're apparently segregating, they're taking wood, they're chipping that, getting rid of that that way. There is a place in Beaufort County that now that takes concrete.
Yes.
Crushes that for recycle. So we essentially, at the moment, have a system that's not unreasonable for the disposal of construction debris. The main, our main problem is probably hauling cost.
So as far as concrete, you would, you would want to keep it separate from being commingled with other CND materials. So it'd have to be clean concrete for it to be processed. Wood, same thing. The types of wood that you're talking about there are more like a pallet type material instead of a, you know, vegetative debris. But these sites would certainly be flexible enough that you would be able to add materials as you saw fit as things change, to be able to collect those materials at the site. And, and obviously, you have to go cradle to grave. Where would it, where would you dispose of it and what would it cost?
Vance, I'm not, I'm not sure you're ready to answer this question, but as it relates to the number of acres that we would need at, at these mega sites, do you, you got a number you want to throw out there? Is it 25 acres? Is it 50 acres?
I think it's closer to 10.
Even with the spreading?
I'm sorry?
Even with the spreading?
No, no, I wouldn't say with the spreading. So what, one of the ideas that we would consider is perhaps associated with a mega site, especially on the south side of the river, is maybe additional land that will be strictly for storm debris. It'll only be operated when a storm event has occurred, is staged and, and ready to accept the material, you know, pretty much immediately after the event. But that would be one possible solution if you were to, to buy the site such that you have a storm debris site where the convenient, or the mega site would be more the, the front of the site towards the road. Some, just something to consider.
Soil, soil types get to be an issue in this, so the, the actual sighting, I would think would depend more on soil types rather than where some commissioner wants to locate it.
So soil types will, you know, will come into play, you know, you have wetland issues and, and so forth that you'll have to consider. But I think that the construction techniques and all that are available, you can build these, I mean, money will take care of a lot of things, but you could build it if you, you know, did foundation improvements and such, pretty much anywhere.
So what are the next steps? What do we, what do we, what are we doing next? As you see this vision rolling out?
Well, one of the things is, and I'm not sure if you guys have been taking straw poles like you've done at some retreats past, but the vegetative debris, that's, that's a really big question. You know, we've looked at the, the numbers and the scenarios that Vance has used, have assumed that we will no longer be taking vegetative debris at all of the collection sites. We would only accept it at one site centrally located on the north side of the river and one site centrally located on the south side of the river. You know, one of the things that I would like to have is, if we can potentially get this, is consensus from the board that yes, that is a direction that we would like to move in. Or is it that no, we, we can't handle that, we don't want to do that, we want to keep vegetative, we want to keep, continue accepting vegetative of all of the sites? That's kind of a go-no-go that we need.
I'd like to make a suggestion, as a straw capacity or otherwise, that we move towards accepting debris, vegetative debris, and CND really should be at the same place, one site on the north side, one site on the south side. Later to be determined.
You're adding CND?
Yeah, don't, I don't think we should add CND, because we've solved the CND problem.
Well, okay, just vegetative then. Still thinking, I think you can get stuff out of it, some material out of there.
Well, I mean, if people want to start throwing and do that, they, they're already doing that now, but we don't, we don't want to be in that business, I don't think, since we're out of it, we don't want to get into it. But I like the idea of, of handling the vegetative debris long-term. We're going to save more money and be much better in control of our situation if we can handle vegetative debris on-site, dispose of it on-site. I think that's a good thing. I don't have a problem with a central location on the north and a central location on the south. For one thing, most of the people that have vegetative debris, they don't have it every day. It's going to be a special big deal when they go cut these trees and this shrubbery and take care of all of this stuff. They may do it once every two years. So you're not imposing a, a, a continuing burden on people, if you will. So that, that works good, and I think economically, that's, that's the way to do it.
Would we continue to have contractors go to a separate site and charge them? Landscapers?
One, the, the current scenario would be no. That, that would be, commercial landscaping is potentially a business that the county would want to remove itself from, because the county does not make money off of commercial, accepting commercial landscaping waste. We currently have a contract where the landfill was operated in order to do that. But that, again, would be a scenario that we would work, that the cost to provide it versus the cost not to provide it.
What do you see the solution being then?
Well, there are other places that they could take, or perhaps that's an opportunity for a commercial, a, a private citizen to have a, an opportunity to explore that business.
Tonnage is fairly low for a commercial opportunity of that.
Okay.
But again, that's not something that's, that's totally decided at this point, but again, if we were to handle it, because again, the other option, I, I made the statement of doing that like it was only two options, but there are three options, which is an option that many counties use, and that's one of the things that Vance says, which is not to accept vegetative debris at all. But we were, I don't, I don't think that that would be agreeable and acceptable.
The volume on it is fairly low, but there are a lot of people depending on us for that. I would personally, I don't think we can do a formal vote on this because it hasn't been agenda'd and we're in a work session, so, but I would like my consensus to send you in the direction of the two mega sites and dispose of the biomass on-site. Now, with, having said that, I want to put us in reverse for just a second. There, there are a lot of, of people who are, who, who love recycling as opposed to other people that doesn't. So if we do the mega sites, and this is a question, will we be able to have a place people can throw glass if they want to sort and separate their stuff and they feel good about that, and separate plastics and put plastics in a bin, and separate paper and put paper in a bin?
Yes, sir, that is the hope and the plan. Again, everything is dependent upon funding, but in the development of the mega sites, the plan is to purchase land large enough and design the site so that it can be expanded for those purposes. I can't stand here and say right now that yes, we can provide all of these services because, because of the costs involved in it. We would be able to do that if it was funded, but for our current fee, I'm not, I can't state that. But the site would be designed so that we, in the future, we could continue to add back recycling. There are a lot of services, collecting cooking oil, collecting.
Motor oil.
Yeah, which motor oil we do accept, but.
Cooking oil.
Household hazardous waste, paint, things like that. There are a lot of services that I personally, as the director, would like the county to provide to.
You got your white goods and tires too in this thing that you may want to.
Yes, sir. But one of the things, it's not just the space that's required. You also have to have the management and the staff in order to maintain it and to keep it neat and to keep it within requirements. You just can't have someone walking up there depositing, you know, large quantities of oil-based paint and things like that. So you, we have to have the staff and the management to do it. So as in, again, for.
Well, let me clear the air.
That's what is staffing, a lot of our issues with solid waste, you have to have the management.
Right. Let me clear the air on something that may, may be misleading to the public. We're not going to be requiring people to segregate, separate their waste. If somebody wants to throw his, all of his stuff together, he can bring it up and put it in the compactor and it'll go, but for the person who is, who is more environmentally sensitive, we will have a place so he can separate it if he wants to. Is that sort of the plan or am I, I don't, I don't want to get into one of these things where because we go mega sites, we're going to start requiring people to separate, because that's going to be a nightmare.
We will not require it, but there are certain general statutes, that there are certain items that are not allowed into landfills.
Right.
Except we're doing it now.
Yeah, like paint and stuff like that, so.
Would you care to clear up that?
I, I support the, the idea of the, of the mega sites with the flexibility to do a lot of the stuff, and that's where the vegetation would go, the two sites.
Yes, sir. And again, the recycling, talking about commingled, again, the reason that the county elected not to continue accepting commingled was because of the high percentage of contamination that was in that. So you can't just go back and say, oh, we've changed our mind, and expect people to do things differently unless you give them a different means and a different reason for them not to continue with the contamination. So we have to figure that out. So as we're going, you know, recycling may be reintroduced with specific streams first. Glass, you know, plastic may be accepted first and then glass, or then a different paper or something like that. So it, it may continue to change. And recycling honestly is an industry that changes daily as far as what continues, what has a market, what doesn't have a market.
Oil goes, oil goes to $100 a barrel, but plastic's suddenly valuable again.
That's right. So it, you know, you have to, our, our policies should be changing based upon that.
Go ahead, go ahead Randy.
I've got a crazy question. How are wood pellets made?
Well.
Easy answer's wood, but out of what?
Well, it's, they're basically turned into, you make sawdust and push them into pellets, essentially. But most pellets, wood pellets are not, they're made more with a, not a vegetative, leafy material, it's more what you'd consider more like a board material.
Okay. If, if I remember correctly, your assumptions on the mega site was only one employee at each one of those sites?
Yes, sir, and I, I think that what I said was, we would go from 10 to 6, and I did some cost savings based upon only having a single employee at the mega site. I, I think Ms. Smith and they had some questions as to whether or not we really would realize those savings. I think that what I was trying to accomplish was, can we, what services or what can we do staying within the current funding mechanism? Handling the same materials, the same, same revenues that are brought in. And so I showed in just the analysis that I did that there would be a savings if you would do that. I think I said the reduced site operations was approximately just on the salaries alone $230,000. That may be overstated. You may have two employees at the mega sites. May ultimately be needed, especially, you know, I think that what they're concerned about is the, the yard waste area would be separate, it'd be hard for one person to look that far away and really make sure somebody's not putting, you know, plastic buckets into the yard waste and potting, you know, flower pops and stuff like that in there. So, but I, I do feel comfortable on saying that if you were to build the mega sites and achieve the densities that we, that we assumed here, that the mega sites would not increase the cost.
And, and I think, I think that's a, a good assumption, but when you start talking about 10 acres and the way you're coming in, you know, when you go to a convenience site now, sometimes the person is inside the little building, they're not paying attention. If you start having bins in an area where they put glass and that kind of stuff, if you turn it loose without nobody watching them and supervising them, they end up throwing pizza boxes and, you know, Clorox boxes or containers and everything all in the same, same area. That was one of the problems we had with the, with the recycle, what we were trying to do, is that there was no supervision when people were throwing it.
And that's one of the things, Republic, Wes and I have had numerous conversations with Republic's management regarding that. Again, they're contractors and they're employees of contractors, but the, the thing to also remember is, by the time these mega sites are, are built and begin to be operational, we would be at the point of either renegotiations with Republic or, you know, putting it out for another company. But the biggest thing is the site attend, the management by the site attendants can be a game changer as far as what is done and what the attendants do on a daily basis. And we have been trying to, to stress that to Republic, we have been stressing it to Republic. Actually, Wes has pictures on his phone that he just showed me 15 minutes ago, that my comment was, that's the site attendance issue. It shouldn't be like that because the site attendant should have stopped it. So he's sending those to Republic, so that, that we are beginning to get a little bit more specific things at each of the sites because we have the cameras up. So previously, we would receive telephone calls from people that were very general in terms, as far as what people are doing or not doing, but now we are able to identify specific issues and we're trying to correct them individually. So hoping in the next few months that there will be a, a change in that. But again, when, when we have the renegotiation or when we have a new contract, whether it be with Republic or somewhere else, that's something, that's what we have to stress, that this is the level of service that we are expecting from the site attendants, this is what we are expecting the site attendants to do. And so that's, that's again, talking about the number of site attendants. We, we do understand that if you have a site that has this much going on at it, this many different locations, you need to have someone out actively looking at it, you almost need to have a gatekeeper, someone coming in individually. What do you have inspecting the loads and pointing them to where they need to go? So again, it's, it's, it's involved. I mean, it takes communication skills and it takes people taking the time and the energy and the effort, so.
On, on storm debris on the north side, is the plan for us to continue to use Hawkins Beach for that?
Only for the storm, yes, sir, for the storm.
For the storm.
With adequate size there and we're able to go in. That has worked extremely well for the storm debris.
On, on hauling the, the limbs, I, I, I mean, I think, I see people hauling leaves, but more people haul limbs. I have no problems with that going to one central location or two. What I'm beginning to see is, I'm beginning to see contractors that do this, go into, pulling in at Shavner, so apparently Shavner is taking it and he's doing the grinding right on his site, so that's not going like it used to, especially Beach Ridge, Yacheful area. These are, these are people that, that are in the tree service business, you know, have the dual axle trailers with the dump, because it's real convenient, you know, for them to go there.
And that's fantastic, because that's saving us almost $15 a ton to grind it, not mentioning And that's fantastic because that's saving us almost $15 a ton to grind it, not mentioning the amount of management costs, so.
What, what I, what I visualize is, I like the idea of the two mega sites and I like the idea of having, and the number six sounds good. I don't know if we can reduce that number. But at those sites, the only thing I visualize is a compactor that everybody can go through and throw, you know, a kitchen bag in or a garbage bag into the compactor.
You're saying the remaining ones that are not mega sites, the existing sites?
The six, the six.
I think that's one of the assumptions.
I don't, I don't visualize any kind of a bulk container or anything other than just a place for you to take a bag and throw it in there.
Correct.
And if that's the case, potentially reduce hours at those sites? Reduced hours and that way you could have a site attendant rotating around or things like that. But if you live in this section of the county, you know that it's available these certain days. That's when you throw it away and it becomes part of your routine.
Well, getting back to John's question as it relates to the timeline, it, it appears things move really, really slow. And it sounds like we've got a lot of time on our hands with the Republic contract. But I mean, I want us to be prepared and ready. And I, this is only my personal opinion and no one else. Is it, I think we're headed, we're, we man and we have our own county employees at these sites.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I was going to say. Because I think these sites are going to become so complex that you can't rely on, on.
Contracts.
Somebody else to supervise their people. Because I think you're going to wind up with cameras in places. You're going to wind up with wanting the license tag of whoever it was that did the thing. So somebody's going to be seeing them. The education process after about three or four months, the worst of it's going to be over with. But I, I think the county's going to need control of that because I don't think a contractor will ever satisfy us.
I mean, when, when we put the cameras up, within two weeks I had three telephone calls. And I won't tell you about all three of them, but one of them in particular. The, the site person that was working told the individual, you know, you, you need to remove that. And they said, no. And he says, well, we have it on camera and we're going to send you a fine. You're, you're going to be fined. Is that we just don't have any control over what happens there. I mean, we've got a contract and I, and I, I know that Wes is trying to do a good job, but we still, it's beyond our control. And I, I, if we're going to spend this kind of money to do the two mega sites, I think we, I think we have to proceed and have as our goal that the county would, would man those sites.
Yeah. To that same end, research I've, I've done in order to have a quality product and to be able to be a true benefit to the public, which is what we're trying to do, provide a place where people, they want to recycle, they can recycle through their heart's content. Hopefully everybody will. And we provide the, the best arrangement, the best scenario, the best managed plan. And part of that is going to be managing, I think, our own staff and be in complete control. And, and if they don't do the job, we're going to have to replace them. Maybe we can be efficient, limit the amount of people we use, but they're going to have to work hard, be good, and maybe they'll be paid well. But they have to do their jobs. And that means they're going to have to get out a little, hopefully they don't have a little hut to be in.
Go buy them a golf cart.
Yeah, something like that. Anything to, to me, yeah, I'd like for them to be able to handle the equipment too and pay them well enough they can handle the equipment. But we are going to have our own staff.
I think technology's going to limit the amount of people that you need. We don't even know what technology's going to be, but I've heard and read where robots will have a lot to do with waste and metal goes, magnetized metal goes this way, rubber goes that way, glass goes here. And I still don't understand the difference when you grind up a six-inch limb or a four-by-four post. Is there a difference?
It's the bark mostly. Bark is the difference, the killer.
Leaves and all that.
Yeah.
Right. But it, it all turns to sawdust, at least it does when I'm cutting it up.
The board, the problem is boards have nails.
Oh, well, so do trees, but yeah.
Hood's been around with his spikes, but, but no, I mean, trees do, but generally, but the boards have the, the nails and have other things in it. So that's where the C and D. But in the, in, and the magnets and that type of thing, that's very true in large facilities, large sorting facilities. And, right, and some of the things, there was, there were a lot of calculations and a lot of scenarios that Vance went through, one of which was the discussion about the transfer station, whether we wanted to get into the transfer station. He ran all of those numbers, came up with that whole scenario and basically the answer was no. Because it, it just wasn't cost efficient. It wasn't something that the county, that was in the, would be in the best interests of the county to get into that business. So again, there are so many things that can be done, but everything does have a cost. And so the, the site attendants and the county, having county employees, absolutely no doubt that I think that that, that gives us much more control in order how to handle that. But again, it's, you know, staffing is a challenge. So we will, please don't think that just by going with county employees, it will suddenly be smooth sailing all the time because there will still be issues. You have people that are interacting with the public. And while Commissioner Waters, the conversation that the, the person had about the site attendant telling the person that, I have no doubt about that because those site attendants, they have a difficult job. I mean, because people, I'm going to throw it away. I don't care what do you say, what are you going to say? So the site attendants probably told them, because I, I don't know what it was they had thrown in there, but if it was something that they absolutely should not have thrown in there, if it was a hazardous material or something along those lines, they absolutely could have been fined.
Yeah.
We had proof of it.
This was, this was construction.
Right, I understand.
The training of the three months, you know, let me tell you my experience in trash dumps. When I was in Kentucky, I was in charge of one that, that our company had given to the county to use. And we had a lot of problems when I first got there. But if somebody is on the telephone saying, I've got your trash, I saw you do this, I saw you do that, blah, blah, blah. It only takes one or two of those calls, he's going to tell 10 other people. All of a sudden, this thing goes away. Doing nothing is the worst thing that you can do for enforcement because you're not going to get anywhere. But I cleaned that place up and we had all the way from the trash dump for 10 miles around it, we still had people throwing out trash. And when I finished with them, we didn't. And I did it all myself. I never used a law enforcement officer.
Have you gotten, have you gotten a good feel on, on us not hauling the limbs?
Vegetative, that's one of the things. And then limiting the types of waste that are limiting the types of waste received as well as the operating hours at the satellite sites. Wes, any other things that you can think of that we specifically need an answer to, to, to go to, to go to the next step? Vance?
Was it clear on which sites would be closed, which ones will remain open?
Can you go back to a couple of?
Yeah, we're, we're getting.
Well, the only reason is what, what our premise is was to remove, stop paying for leased sites. County's been leasing properties for 20 years. We could have purchased them many times over. So that is the, that was the process. And based upon whether we owned the sites or we leased the site and based upon the tonnage that was received at the individual sites. And of course, the geographic location.
I think I can summarize it by saying, we think you're doing a great job. Just keep going.
Keep going and, and get it done.
Yeah, I think if residents see improvement, they'll be happy as they can be. And the, uh, mega sites will be the best as yet to come. We'll figure that out.
I think one of the things that just kind of stood out to me is just making clear that with this plan, the current operations at the landfill would cease. I'm sorry. With, with this plan, the current operations of what we do at the Beaufort County landfill would cease because the vegetation would move to the two mega sites and the scrap tire operation would move to the two mega sites.
Now, you're, you're talking about Hawkins Beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would then turn into our north side storm debris site. So just wanted to make that, that clear that that current operation would cease.
So let me, let me ask one question, Vance specifically. When you talk about a south side storm debris collection site that would operate hopefully only one time a year, maybe hopefully never, but we know hurricanes are coming. But then using the onsite mega site to process and grind up that vegetative debris and then potentially using that debris site for, for spreading that biomass, is that a piece of property that the county would need to own? Or are there compatible co-uses? I mean, it's different than putting sludge on agricultural land. Can you put ground up biomass in a small layer? Could, could we lease property from a farmer to do that? Or is that, is this something we would need to own ourselves?
I don't think there's anything that says you would have to own it. You know, you could certainly pursue, you know, the lease agreements and, you know, quite frankly, you know, we need to do a little bit more research into what we would do with this mulch material. I, I do not want that to be the, you know, that is the solution. I'm, I'm not saying that. There's, regions tend to have different, different factors on what, what makes sense. And I would say that we're still looking. There may be a better solution than that.
Spread it at the solar farms.
The other thing is when you're talking about storm debris sites.
Maybe.
When you read all of the plans from state EM and everything, it's not just vegetative debris storm sites that you need to be prepared for, but it's C and D storm sites, you need to, you need to have a site prepared for, to accept C and D material as well.
During the storm?
Yes, sir.
During the storm.
And hopefully we do not need that for many, many years. But again, that's, you know, what we're thinking about is not just storms, not just vegetative debris, but also C and D potential.
We typically use a contractor to come in and pick that up through FEMA and take it. So there may be designating an existing site to take that for a short period of time after the contractor comes through.
Or before the contractor comes through because it could be such a long time. So oftentimes, along the coast, they'll have a site for the people that are going ahead and get things done. And they don't want it just sitting out and waiting for that to happen. So.
Well, I apologize for us having to cut you off at the last meeting. But I think this has been much better. I think, I think you guys are right on target with what we're trying to do on solid waste. And I'm like John, let's, let's move on to the next step to, to start making some of these things happen.
Okay. So the next step would be asking Garrett and War to prepare a proposal as far as to, to assist us with that. And then I would be presenting that to the board for approval. Okay?
Yes. Thank you very much. And I hope you guys have a nice weekend and very little snow to shovel on Saturday and Sunday, our county employees.
Wes, did we give Republic access to the cameras yet?
I have not addressed that yet.
Okay.
We haven't really had internal discussions on that yet.
Okay. My rationale again was turn some of the responsibility over to them to monitor centrally.
Right, for the hauling.
All the, yeah, the containers.
Right. We have gotten their, their process changed on the Ransomeville site where they are going to be pulling that compactor bin every week regardless of whether it's full or not on the day that the site is closed. So there will no longer be an instance where it's open to the public and the compactor container is not there.
Yes.
We, we found looking at their information from the past year that they hauled a bin 51 times. So I said, haul it once per week. You're only hauling it one more time.
There, there is an interesting option to, that happens at several sites, several, not our sites, but other counties, is that they, they just use the big dump containers for the MSW. And then a regular garbage truck comes in and compacts them on the garbage truck.
That we've considered that as a part of our overall strategic planning. One place I was looking at, because I frequent up there, is Watauga County. They do it. They are in the process of converting to compactors. He, they are not satisfied with the, with that method. The maintenance on the trucks and everything is an issue for them. And he prefers the onsite compactor method. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, we're, we're at one o'clock, so we'll let you start, Lloyd.
Okay. Best data on one is the first or the last. So with that said, discussion items today for me, we've got a few, but we'll make this pretty quick with the three of you gentlemen here. First one we're going to discuss is of course pictometry, which is aerial imagery. I was actually asked by Commissioner Reddell's last year about, I, I mentioned in my thing that I wasn't going to come last year and ask for anything with aerials. I was going to come this year. Well, hello, I'm here this year for the aerial imagery ask. So the next one is going to be, we're going to talk a little bit about a personal property audit and what that means. Then I've got a little bit of a reclass, which is really a small one for request and discussion. Then I want to go over the revaluation because I am going to need something from you all as I've discussed with the county manager in the, the coming time on that. So basically aerial photography, the vendor that we're already under contract, we have a loose contract with a vendor. What I mean by that is we've already, the county has already used a vendor and we got a, we got a locked in price, I guess you could say, with the first aerial run, that the next one would cost X, no matter what the market does or anything else happens. And this is what we would be operating. Here's what you're going to get. Here's these things. So we're not contractually obligated to have to do it, mind you, but if we choose to do it, the cost is locked in. And it was before I got here. It was locked in at the last, when they got the last aerial capture. So the aerial capture, and what I mean by that, we have a GIS website. That's, that's not what I'm talking about. We have a GIS website, the county GIS website, every four years roughly, the state updates map. It does a fly for that data. So there is new map imagery that will come up every four years. Four years in my professional opinion is too long to go for aerial photography for lots of reasons. We're going to discuss a couple of them. We, at the end of this, will discuss a revale. I definitely would like to have new aerial photography before a revale. It would be good to be able to see things. Now currently, the state updates the imagery, as I said, GIS maps used every four years. Google Earth, Google Maps does not do an accurate job of depicting tax parcel lines. They never really have. Pictometry has a much superior oblique view. We're going to spend that a second. Allows for multiple sides of the structure. Google Earth and others have a disclaimer about their accuracy. You pull Google Earth up, it says disclaimer, do not use us to measure. We are not, we don't claim to be accurate. We don't want to be accurate to a, to a way. Don't want to be held to it. Potential for a two-year alternating fresh capture. What I mean by that is if we got the aerials through pictometry, then you get a free one, so to speak, a free assay. Well, you get a contractual for the state. The state provides one. That's not something we're going to be able to discuss in two years. If we did it every four, you'd get a two-year fresh. You would only have to pay for the pictometry one, so to speak. Areas where we had a hard to visit properties, I have some waterfront in the county. We have some other places in the county, hard to reach. It's always nice to be able to pull the imagery up and say, where did this come from? Where do these, where are those, well, that too. Where do these docks? Where are these piers? Where's the bulkhead? Anything like that is a, a boon to us. We can do quality control. Doing that from, from a regular aerial, what I mean by that is a top-down aerial can be difficult. The GIS maps does have that. You, you can do it. Waiting four years to get new ones, not fun. Again, this would get us that a little sooner. This is ultimately what an oblique is. This is just a, a basic, on your left is what we can see now with our GIS. What on the right is what you see with pictometry. It's an oblique. You can measure it more accurately. You can look at things more accurately. Yes, I did do a high-rise, which we don't have here, but it's just a good example. Just a two-story house or a three-story house, the same thing. You're going to be able to see it better and do more with an oblique imagery. You're going to be able to do that. Now we, again, I'm not asking for something new. We, we have pictometry. Our images are from 2016, I think, at this point. I'm asking for a refresh, for a, for aerials again for this, for the images to be updated for this. And I would like it for the revale period. Additional information, this can and is used by other departments. I spoke with the county manager recently about maybe even more than that. I spoke with the county manager recently about maybe even more than that. But in other words, it would be new imagery. At the time it comes in, it'd be newer than Google, newer than the GIS. There are several county departments that could utilize this fully. Sheriff's Department has, we do talk with some of the sheriff's department. They use this when it's fresh and new. They, they have looked at this before for certain reasons. There's other departments that could probably make utilization of this. It's something that we would love to champion and train other people on. Unlimited accounts, I think I have that in here. In other words, the software that views this imagery is unlimited. You can, I can make one for anybody that needs one. Technically we could make it public too. It's aerial photography. If we wanted to put it online in some format, you could have it where you could see new updated pictures there. There's not a problem. There's no additional cost with that.
Did you tie that to GIS?
So no. So the difference is really, and I, I keep looking at Commissioner Richardson, most surveys, surveyors are going to know this, this by heart. The real difference is this is a good quality aerial, but you have to have for GIS purposes, you have to have a very specific amount per inch and per foot view. It has to be a certain level JS. This is really darn close to it, but it's, it's not at what we would consider to be used for cadastral mapping or tax mapping purposes. This is going to be used for viewing new property, viewing changes to property, being able to follow certain things. But for what my GIS group uses, there is, there's outlined, you know, nine feet, three feet. They're very specific numbers. This just doesn't quite hit that. So that's one of the things there. But yes, you can absolutely let the public view it because they're going to see what to them is going to look just like a GIS map. But we have to have those a little separate. Uh, that's kind of cloudy, but that's, it's a quality difference.
Let me ask you a question. So it's arbitrary scale, something like that?
I am, I am the worst at getting the, the amounts right. And it's, it's, it's in feet and per, how much you capture inches to feed and everything else. And it is, it, it has been accepted that to do it, to do a cadastral map, a tax map, you have to have it at a certain, you know, images of, almost like pixelization. And this is great. And it actually in the city of Washington would probably come close to that. But this isn't used for disclaimer, this isn't used for tax mapping, for making parcel.
Question follow. Is it from a satellite, satellite?
No, they do it with a flyover. Actually it's really interesting. They do a, um, they have a big piece on the front of the plane. They fly over the whole county and take multiple pictures from multiple angles. They did it for us in 16 that way. Really good. For anyone who's seen pictometry, sadly y'all probably actually when Mr. Parker pitched it back then or wouldn't have got it back then, I'm sure y'all saw it then, but it's, it's, it's really good quality aerials. It, it's stuff that the, we're not going to sit here and be able to be too picky about. And, you know, as far as that goes, but our uses are endless because I mean, what we use it for quality control, working, well, I've even got in here, the Board of Equalization Review. I mean, we can use the, the, the GIS website for that, but let's say that you gentlemen look at me and say, do they have this pier? They say they didn't at this time. Great. You pull pictometry up, you swing the oblique, you look at it, you have an answer.
So, so they shoot it from different angles and overlay it.
Five, I believe.
Five, and then that gives them, gives them the 3D graphics.
And it may be more than five, but I think it's a five basic.
Photogrammetric, you ever heard that?
And again, I mean, this was just one image as far as that goes, but I mean, like that's the point is the oblique. So again, there's also a mobile app that can be used by county, by whatever else. Integration with our cameras possible. So you can make it even easier when you're working. My staff would be working or something that could just one click away, make it easier, make it quicker. They would fly another aerial capture if there was a disaster in the county. For instance, if there was a, I mean, I think even if the winter storm had been worse than what it was and had been a name storm or different things can qualify for that. They'll do a whole, that's included in the, in the contract. And of course there's onsite training available if needed. They could come in. I utilize this same program in my last county. I've, I've been through the training, but they do provide it if needed here. Good company. Y'all were already using it when I got here. I think they're great quality imagery. I think they're, they're a good company all the way around. This is just, uh, the pricing structure for how it is. It's not much different than it was four, five years ago. I mean, it's the same thing that was looked at. The gray areas on the map are just showing where there is a higher quality image, a more dialed in zoomed image. That's where I was saying those are close to being that tax quality in these gray areas. The green, we don't have quite as much buildings out in these green areas. So that, that of course is more where it is, a little bit more, more head up. Some of those areas don't have buildings at all, but you can of course see that from aerials. Again, price instruction in front of you. I think it breaks down into three yearly payments. Think forty seven thousand, eighty nine, fifty. Again, very in line with what it was last time for y'all, not very much different. Any more, any questions on aerial photography?
Yeah, our picture, uh, our photography of this type is how?
So, okay. So being two different things. So the, 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 the pictometry that we use, revale purposes, going into the revale, y'all, you know, or the board at the time had a fly done for ten, 2016 for your 2018 revaluation. So that all that could be used to help make sure quality was high and everything else. So it's 16 data. I think it was flown in the late 15s. So 2016 data would be the last time this company flown one. But the state provides you the GIS maps that you see currently on the thing. They provide those every four years, give or take.
We don't pay anything for those.
Well, ultimately you do because the state 911 board uses 911 money to fly the state, sections of the state every four years. So they start on one side of the state and they fly it in four-year increments across. So you would get more money from 911 board if they didn't, but they, they view that as a project for the entire state. So they use 911 money to do it.
Right. And I, I tend to, from my angle, it looks free, but that's why I looked at the manager. I know there are other pieces to that.
Now, the, uh, the next revaluation date to have it complete is what?
We're going to talk about that at the end of this, but if you want to, we can go now. So, um, that's a big part of my presentation. I'm basically.
But you wait till the end if you want to. I'm just trying to fit in. When do you want to do that?
January 1st, 2015, which would mean I'd want to live fly on this aerial, uh, twenty five, sorry, two, twenty twenty-five. I'm living in the past. Twenty twenty-five, January 1st, it would be when I proposed the revaluation date, as I've said before. And at that case, I want it two years before, which would mean I'd like to fly it Christmas. I'd like to fly it this, this winter. It's best to fly these in the winter because.
Why don't you need it two years before?
Because that way while you're working on the revaluation, you have updated pictures. I don't have to use two-year-old, three-year-old GIS photography.
All right. Well, we need to save all this for when we get into your rendition of, of that.
No problem.
Make timeframes fit. I'm just worried about calendar.
Okay. So business personal property audit, whole other topic. So in state North Carolina, it is highly advisable, but via statute, to have a compliance program. What that is, is what it sounds like. It means that your personal property, especially business personal property is audited for several different reasons. They look at the, what we're doing and they make sure that our values match. They review the records of the business, they being a company, an outside agency normally. It has been done here before. We have contracted years ago, a decade ago or so with a company that did do some audit service here. I honestly think we're one of the only counties not doing it. And I'm going to show you some county information and most of all ours around us are, I think at the moment. Compliance with business personal property just means that somebody's auditing us very much similar to what financial records and all are being audited. Where there is a great part of this comes in is a lot of times folks come in and bring us or send us their personal property listing form. And it will come in and say, same as last year, or it'll say nothing. You know, several of y'all are businessmen. You, you all know about this forum. You all give this forum. I've seen several of y'all in there handing me these forms, handing us these forms. Bigger businesses, it, it sometimes it is confusing. There are some questions with some of that stuff. Sometimes they take the time to endeavor to work with us. Sometimes they don't. This would be a random, I say random because that's the way it's usually styled. We might pick a type like restaurants or whatever, but it's mostly random service. They come in and they, this company would audit those records. They would look at the tax return documentation, other things to make sure what we have as a listing matches what they have. This isn't, again, this is something that's very commonly done across North Carolina. Listing your personal property is required by law. You have to list it or you're charged a penalty. Business audits in fair fairness, equity and education. Audit selections are random, as I said, current year plus five are open for audit. What I mean by that is when the company would be looking at an audit, when they'd be looking at that information, they're not looking at just this year's data. They're looking at back years' data as pursuant to statute. Taxpayers again have the right to appeal it. We do send a discovery notice and they're communicated with. This isn't a secret, hop up on you. This is, there's communication the whole way. We structurally have to tell them. They then get the chance to, uh, approach me. And then if we can't come to something, be, discuss with you gentlemen, like any other discovery or any other change, as y'all have had. In other words, if we audit them and there's a value change, they get to appeal it.
You go onsite?
So that is an option if needed, but that's usually at the discretion of the company doing the audit. We, we ourselves don't do the audit. It would be an outside company auditing our records and the employee, and the taxpayers' records. So I have known them to go onsite. I've also known them to do it from just reviewing financial measures. Why, why doesn't, well, you turned into the federal government saying X, Y and Z. What, why doesn't, why don't the county have you listed X, Y and Z? You know, I've seen it that simple. Just to give a little bit, we have about 2,823 business purple property accounts. I say that because we're in listing season right now.
That includes farmers.
Wonderful question. Glad you asked. It should. Farmers sometimes have been known to do it on an individual property listing form. And that's something we would like to do is make sure all that is being properly done. But it includes a lot of farmers. So with that said, here's some comparable counties with audits. I just say comparable because they're either nearest or nearest in population size, anything else. Um, I'm going to use the term a lot, uh, return on investment ROI. So basically what that is, is for every dollar invested in the audit, this is the dollar they got back in tax revenue, not base in revenue. You just take a brief, look at these if you want. Some higher than others, some lower than others. Some of it has to do with tax rate. Craven over 245 audits has seen a $2.33 ROI. That's the lowest on here actually. The highest on here might be Martin or Washington. They've both had higher at 166 audits, which was not one year. That was a couple of years doing audits. They had a $7.34 ROI. But I'm not looking at this as something to generate revenue. I'm looking at it compliance, education, follow the, you know, make sure our team is doing this right. Make sure that the public is doing this right.
See, at one time we could hire a company and they got, they worked on a percentage of what they found. But the law changed on that. So now we just contract with somebody for a certain amount of money and they go out and do so many audits. Is that the way it would work?
You are slight ahead of me. So, so absolutely, that's exactly how it works. So, um, basically, uh, well, and I've used county tax services because they're the, they're the company that has done their neighbor counties recently and they're the ones I got these numbers from, from Martin and Washington, all those. So for county tax services, we'll say, um, basically I put what I thought for a budget amount, but I say pricing is based on account value for the previous year. So you look at what the county had as the value of this business account the previous year and they, they base it somewhat on that. Four hundred, six hundred or a thousand dollars per account, depending on how big it is. So if you got into, let's say, um, you know, a large boat industry with a million dollars over a lot of personal property, such a thing as here, or a big logging company, it would cost a thousand dollars perhaps for audit. If you were doing a restaurant or something locally that's smaller or less, it might be $400. But that's all set up based on what the latest, uh, our latest information has it set at. We do control again, how many of the category. The expectation is based on comparison. I would say probably three to five, three to seven dollars ROI would be my guess. Just looking at common sense, look at the others. Maybe a little more to begin with, and after time it does go down a bit because you've, you've done the work and you've also educated the community. So other people are seeing how you're doing it. But again, my main reason is mostly for the educational and the fairness aspect. Uh, if our ROI is reasonable, I would actually say perhaps next year reinvest some of that into looking at more expansion. I would say probably somewhere at 50, 60,000 dollars a year. So for instance, I'm asking for $30,000 this year. The ROI expectation on that would be 120,000 revenue, 160,000 revenue or more. I mean, it, it could vary greatly. The first couple of years could be a lot, could be not.
When is the last time we did one of these?
To my knowledge, 2012, they were still in the books, but.
See, I thought we were doing one of these every year. I thought this was a continuous, ongoing thing.
So, so my staff does what they can. They were, they look when it comes in at anything being handed us. Obviously we can't always go, we don't have the staff, the time to run out.
I thought we were using a company every year as a backup on this because in the old days, if you will, I mean, we had a guy that moved an airplane one time from Beaufort County to Dare County because he, he found Dare County was like 25 cents valuation. We were like 55 at the time or something and he was mad about the value that we put on his plane. We've had, you know, all kinds of things come out of this. And so in getting the same company that did the adjoining counties is very worthwhile because a lot of people have business operations in both counties. So you could flip equipment from one county to the other, the one that's not doing the audit, that's the one the, the equipment's in.
That's somewhat true. I look at it like they're going to know the area too and they're going to know a little bit of the business and why that works. I mean, the, the person doing the county, like Washington County or Martin County may be the same auditor we have actually, the person working on it. It's usually true with small counties.
We've always gotten a good return on these things.
But I'll be, I'll be blunt with you. I, I can't say enough how much I agree that it should be that way. It has not been, been that way to my knowledge. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the chief finance officer there too. It's not been to my knowledge since I've been here and I don't believe for long before.
It, it's not been my experience.
My last seven years. Yeah. So as Commissioner Richardson said, the general assembly looked at it years ago and they said they didn't believe it was fair for you to engage a company on a contingency basis because if I was, the more I found, the more money I made, they thought that was crooked. So they changed the law and they said, you can't do that anymore. So you now have to pay upfront and you had to do that. And so that's why this has changed. It was not something that, that the prior tax administrator felt, or prior tax assessor felt was a value for him at the time.
No, no. He, he, I was here. I know what it's supposed to be. He's supposed to be doing one of these every year.
Not, not one of these. You're, you're, you're supposed to be auditing, you're, you're supposed to be doing.
No, he's doing a continuous audit, but we're, we were supposed to be using a contractor every year because we always got a return on it. I know what the previous tax administrator was supposed to be doing and I know what he was leading me to believe that he was doing, that he wasn't doing.
I'll make it really simple. I mean, you're asking for $30,000 a year. It's an ROI expectation of three to seven. I'm asking for money that I plan to give you back next year. And, and let me, let me hurry on because I have a lot more to say and little time to say it. This one's going to sound like the worst one, the, the head jerk one, but it's really not. This, I say reclass of customer service representative. I'll be super quick about this. I have, um, three, currently three customer service representatives. They're class 60s. They're class sixties. They are the baseline people you see when you come in my office. I have one senior customer service rep. I want to. The difference is the requirement currently for the senior customer service rep and the customer service rep, one works on certifying values and appraising values a little bit and one does not. The entry level people, we do not allow to assign value. Uh, we have cars coming in. I'm going to hit on that in a second. A lot of changes in the world. Several of you gentlemen have heard about it with automobiles. Um, I would like to train somebody else, get them certified to be able to work on automobiles, tend to the worst of value them, to look at them. DMV does a lot with it, but we're actually the ones that set the value on a lot of these things. Um, here's where the money comes in. So the reclass, um, I've sent some information out on this. I have some information. I'm looking at the Matt's group perhaps to, to get back to me on, on some of these things. But my expectation would, it would probably be a, a two grade jump at that point. So we're talking, I, I hate to do this without knowing more than I do, so I'll be careful, but we're, we're speaking in the low thousands of dollars, I would think, in difference in, in pay here. But the duties would be adding them certifying values. Now, where this comes in, we, uh, as a county, had, saw a huge increase in car values. And part of that is because there's a shortage of ships still and values sales are crazy right now. I tried to order a vehicle last year and they've gone up maybe five thousand dollars on me. I mean, it's going across the board. But we've also made a change to how we do something versus the prior administration. The prior administration felt that the easiest way to do classic and exotic vehicles along with RVs was actually to use what we call low book or residual value. They took the value that the lowest it's going to be because that's what comes in the system. They allow that to play in. They send a bill on that value. So I'll give you a quick example. You bought an RV for two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars and the low book on that RV, if, if, again, the system, if it's a maker that's not super common, maybe it's not Winnebago, maybe it's, you know, Canadian RV company, which big in some places, maybe not here. If, it comes in at ten thousand dollars in our system or twenty thousand because it's a safe, low value. I disagree. I don't think that's the way we should do it. So what we've done is we've bought market guides. We've bought, you know, NADA price guides, uh, classic car price guides. We've obviously spoken to a lot of the community. Some of them have come in and said, we don't think our value should have gone up. Great. We've discussed it with them. They can show me a reason why not. There's a, there's damage, there's wear. We do them like we do every other property. We give them a fair shake. We do it through appeal. We do whatever we can and we address that. That said, we have gone up on these values because, again, quick example, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar RV, bought it for two-hundred-and-forty. We were billing them at ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars because that's the way the system had it. No, when you look at the NADA guide and you look at the guide for RVs, which you do have to order a special, I did have to spend eighty bucks on, the county money. When we do that, it changes things. So automobiles since May, and I know I should be talking, talking fiscal and I'm not, and, and Mr. Needle probably threw something at me for using May and this, but May to December, we probably had about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, roughly two-fifty-one thousand dollars of revenue, revenue increase, and I use that term, revenue increase in automobiles overall. About a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of that was for me buying price guides. I've not had a lot of people trying to chase me out of my office. I've had several people come in and shake my hand and say, you got me. I had a person come in not very long ago, they'll publicly admit it. We have five thousand dollars on a nineteen-sixty-four classic car that they told me they could sell for eighty thousand right now. We get it. We understand. And that's not saying everybody's happy with me. They're not. But most people understand. And again, we're working with them if they're not. We're saying, show us the damage. Show us the reason it's not going to sell for this. We're doing what we do with every other property. What do I want? I want another person to be able to help me with this. Can you imagine how many people I got coming in the office, talking about this now and dealing with this? I want to classify somebody else two grades higher and certify them to be able to put value on. I'll, I'll move quick because I'm not. So I gotta do a little better.
Just clarify, you're not asking for another employee.
No, sir.
You're asking to upgrade the one you've got.
Yes, sir. I have three customer service rep ones. I guess you say like entry level. I would like to make one a senior, get them certified, just somebody else to look at cars. Are you, are you my way of looking at it?
And this is some, and this is somebody you feel is very deserving of this honor and-
Well, to be very honest, I'm in a, I'm, I'm in a, a, a place with that. I would work with HR and co-management to figure out the best way to do that amongst the three I have and see if that needs to be open, how that needs to be open. I don't have a direct answer for you at this time on that because I've had some vacancy, different things.
I'm going with this. You know what I want.
Okay. Not exactly, but we'll do the best we can do to make sure it's done right.
In other words, you're applying the proper incentive.
Right, 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 right. I, 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 I hope so. We, we'll do what is equally right.
For the record, I have no relatives that work anywhere in the county.
And I, I didn't think that's what he meant. I think he meant, used best judgment. I hope that's what he did. That's, that's sort of what I want to do. So I'm running out of time at a faster rate than I should.
That's what I suppose is what Wood was talking about in the past.
Yes, sir. So I'm going to need from the commissioner board, ask commissioners in the next, in February or March, basically, if y'all gentlemen want, and, and I'll tell you, Lloyd Salter is okay the way here. So as an assessor, I'm all right whether we want to do a twenty-six revow or twenty-five. I think you should do a twenty-five revow. And I think you should do a twenty-five revow because the market is still moving in one direction. So we have less chance of getting some weird ups and downs. You got better information? I also think you should do a twenty-two-five revow because there's some incentive through the way the state currently do, does some public service items, which I've spoke with several of y'all about, um, in different ways. I mentioned it here last year, I believe. Public service, the state values our stuff. We'll lose a little revenue on some of those points if we go into a, to a, to a, a certain sales ratio, I guess, in those later years. I think it's behooves us fiscally to do a revow in twenty-two-five. That said, if you gentlemen have a reason or have questions why we wouldn't want to, twenty-six is the year that we have to do it. That's the year that, that we're mandated by state to do it. If we do a twenty-five year, or twenty, two thousand, twenty-five revow, I didn't call it twenty-fifteen at least, but when we do a twenty-two-five, if we do, I'm going to need the board to basically vote in open session at the board and give me a resolution to hand to the Department of Revenue to say, I'm moving the year that we had, we had told you guys twenty-six, we're moving it to twenty-five. It's a formality, but it is a required formality. Just says we're going to move it. They're, to my knowledge, not going to audit that decision. They're just going to say, okay. And they're going to look at it mostly because that means you have eight years from that date to do another one. So they want to, of course, track all that information, keep that relevant. So-
How long, once you start, how long does it take to finish? How long will it take you to complete the revow?
Well, I'm not, no, no, I, I disagree with that statement. But, but what I was, what I was going to say, that depends on how quality you want to do it. I would like personally to tell you two and a half years. Because while you can do one in a year and a half or two, I would like to get started ASAP. I want to get, I would like you gentlemen to kind of nod at me a little and say, twenty-four, twenty-five might be great. I get a resolution out. I put RFP in front of, of finance, literally in a month or so.
That would be an RFP for an outside contractor?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Put a RFP, a, a well-written RFP out there, best I can. Get that out there. Get some bids. I'd like to have an answer by June, July, or something to that effect, if possible, on that RFP. Maybe I'm not that lucky, but I, I'd like to try.
As far as I'm concerned, this can come up at the next commissioners meeting.
Agreed. And, and if, if I, if I, i-if I can then get that RFP out, I'm going to move quick because I, I want, there are things that I want as an assessor now that may not have been needed here in twenty-eighteen or may not seem. I want quality control that I've, I've drugged your old gentleman about the head about. I want to be able to do that. Well, the longer I have to do it, the better. So-
Yeah, there, there are a lot of things that need to be adjusted. I, I agree with you.
So I, I don't believe that, I mean, I've missed anything major on my thing. I've got my reasons for why. I think it need to be rolled up. I think that's just something I want to bring a resolution before y'all saying, we're going to go to that. I'm going to immediately jump to an RFP, get the answers from the RFP, analyze that, then get someone a contract, do it the way that the county dictates. Um, I did-
On the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So the one thing also that you'll see with that is we will have to adjust the funds that we're putting into revaluation funds. So you'll see that bump up just a little bit in the upcoming years.
He said that better than I was going to say that, but that is true. I actually had that on a slide, but I was getting quick because no, I was running out of time. I, I will say, again, that's the down and dirty of that. I also warned the finance officer, y'all might have to ask her how much money that is, not me, but that's something we can, we can adjust. Because if you move a year forward and you're paying somebody a year, it moves, you know, it gives up.
So Katie, you're going to put that on the agenda for, uh, next month. Okay, Lloyd?
I think I'm done. If you have any following questions or otherwise I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you very much. And if you just hang around, uh, in case when is very short, we might be able to get you back. Lloyd, did you discuss equalization of a public service company or did I miss?
Okay. I did it super brief. What I, what I said was, I didn't want to get too heavy into it. What that means is the public service by the state looks in the fourth year and the seventh year after the revaluation, they change the way we apply it, our sales ratio. Things go up, things go down. We would lose a lot of, a fair amount of revenue in that last year. If we move forward, we don't lose it.
I got you.
It's market.
Enough to pay for the revow, right?
No.
No.
Probably enough to offset that year change, but not for the whole revow.
Okay, when?
Good afternoon.
We're, we're down to R.
Yes.
Down to R.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I just want to be brief. I'll give you kind of an overview of our office right now. I have one small request and one wish list. We all have a wish list. So I, I have one wish list. Um, really, real quick, I just want to go over where our office is at today. Our collection rate as of today, ninety-three-five-seven, thirty-two million, three-hundred-ninety-nine thousand. Last year on this date, we were at ninety-two-five-four, thirty-two million, two-hundred-fifty-six thousand dollars. So we are above where we were at last year this time. Uh, solid waste, which I know Anita loves to know about solid waste. Uh, solid waste today collected three-point-three million dollars. Last year this time, we collected three-point-two million. So that's where solid waste is, is as of today. Uh, something with the payment process, I'm looking to do and I mentioned to the county manager, Brian, uh, about this. Um, our credit card company will now allow checks to be taken for a minimal fee. And I'm going to look to do that to give the taxpayers another option to pay. It should be a whole lot less than using a credit card. Uh, we're talking about two dollars and fifty cent per transaction. So I've got the forms. I got to get it over to finance because they need some information for that, which is same information they have, but got to do it to add that to it. So I wanted to give the taxpayers another option to pay what I having to pay a credit card fee. So that's something I've looked to do. Um, at this time right now, we've sent out forty-five-hundred collection delinquent letters to people that have business personal property and individual personal property. We are getting really good response on those letters. Uh, these are the delinquent letters to letting them know. We are in the process of getting our second notices out at this time. Now Lloyd ran into issues earlier this year and I'm running into issues with our, our South Data who processes this for us in getting some format and things done. They constantly change it from the previous year or previous years. And I've had to deal with issues in the past and Lloyd had to deal with one this year. We may look at something beyond South Data in the future to make sure we get the notices out to the people correctly and in a timely manner. Um, had some changes in my office over the last year. Uh, most of y'all knew David Harris. He retired. Uh, Tanya Delam has become the assistant tax collector for the county. She had almost ten years in the county in the tax office, so she moved up. Uh, Melissa Woolard was hired for her position. Tanya's previous polit, uh, position as a delinquent tax collection, uh, collection specialist. And Caitlin Jefferson, uh, was hired as a customer service rep. So I've got pretty much a new staff in the office, but they're doing very good. Um, I have worked with Lloyd this past year. We worked on a couple of different projects, but one that benefited our office, far as his office, my office, and especially in collection and seeing the numbers increase for the year. We went back and checked all addresses that we could or needed changes on it. Um, in the past, I would get them in, we'd research them, give them over, hope that they got in. Lloyd put his staff on it and we got a lot of addresses changed, a lot of updated information done. I want to personally thank Lloyd for that because it has helped my collection side. I know people are getting notices. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, address that and say that that it just really has benefited our office. I will also say this, my confidence in when Lloyd sends an assessment out is at a completely different level. Because I know when he sends it out the door, I don't have to question it. I don't have a question come up or somebody questions something on it, that they're good, solid audits. And I know I've got good targets to go after for that. So once again, I want to thank Lloyd for that also. Um, real quickly, I have one budget need, which Brian was very helpful for last year. He got, he helped me get some new computers. I need to get like two more computers. That is what I would love to, to add for my part of the budget. Not a ton of money, but just something to get there. Um, we all have a wish list and I would love one day to add a customer service rep back to my office to help with, especially in this time of the year where we're going after delinquents. We're going after what I call the worst of the worst. And I, I don't know any other way to say it, but it's going after those to give support for the garnishments in those level. It can be something that can be done down the road, but everybody has a wish list. So that's my wish list is to create another customer service.
How many foreclosures did Zacchaeus do for us last year?
I would have to email you that information, Commissioner.
Zacchaeus is fine with me. I just want to be sure he's working.
Oh, he's, he's working because he's clearing a lot besides what he's selling. Um, you know, probably, it's just off the top of my head, maybe two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty.
Oh, okay, fine.
It could be a less, I'm just going off the top of my head because we get a lot of people that walk in and pay it. They'll get the letters and say, okay, we're just going to go and pay it. We go ahead and take care of it, which is something we had asked to be done with letters going out. So a lot that go over to him do get cleared. But I, and giving you a figure, I, I would rather give you a straightforward figure than to give you a guesstimate, but I'm just going off the top of my head.
I just want to be sure you're satisfied he's working. You've already-
Yes, sir.
-asked my question that he's being aggressive and doing-
He is being aggressive and doing the things he needs to do. Yes, sir. Suits are being recorded and other actions are, are being done.
Yeah, I see people on those lists that you send and some of them I just puzzled about how they're making this thing last as long as they are.
Well, and, and that's a good question. Because a lot of my foreclosures have heirs of heirs of heirs. So we may have a parent that owned a property passed away, grandchildren owned a property, passed away. Then you start getting down to great grandchildren. Sometimes aunts and uncles get involved because they said, no, dad's property was supposed to be mine. I'm a sister. And a lot of that gets real ugly. I mean, it just, it gets really, really ugly. So it does consume a lot of time. And I've mentioned this earlier, um, when I first, before I came on, a lot of things were sent over to the foreclosure is what I call a dumping ground instead of exhausting everything possible before you do it. Foreclosure should be your last action you do, not your first. Um, and before I got here, it was kind of a little bit opposite. It was the first. You know, there are other options and other things that are out there to do.
John, could you go back to the checking thing?
Yes, sir.
Use, what, what is that different than just handing you a check?
Well, I mean, some people would prefer to pay a check online. So we're going to give them that option if they want to pay the check online. Yes, it would be easier if they walk in to do it, but we have a lot of people that would, would prefer to do a check online. They're out of state, um, out of county and they just said, I would rather pay with a check online.
It's that they're drafting your checking account?
Yeah, they're drafting your checking account.
Putting it on a credit card?
Yeah.
And on the credit card, it costs like three percent. With a check, it's flat.
Yeah. Well, it's three-ninety-five for debit card or two-point-six-five percent for credit card. Where if they did it as a check, it's two dollars and fifty cent. But that's a good question because I've had people say-
I, I know they do that. I just wouldn't clear why somebody would want to do that for taxes.
Do we take a credit card now?
We do take a credit card, yes, sir.
Who pays the money for the fee?
The taxpayers pay the money. The county does not pay it. It's a fee that is included on it.
So, and then so the taxpayer's going to pay the two dollars and a half in the system?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yeah, the county's not going to pay it.
That's right.
It just gives them a cheaper way.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a whole lot cheaper way.
When, did I understand you, did you say forty-five-hundred delinquent letters?
Yes, sir.
Forty-five-hundred.
But that's for business, personal, and personal taxes.
So if you looked at the total, what, what percentage? Is that five percent, ten percent?
Well, we have about forty-seven thousand total taxpayers in the county. And I brought the delinquent numbers because I thought I may get asked that. Um, well, forty-seven thousand. If I said it's forty-seven-hundred, I'm wrong, I'm sorry. We have roughly forty-seven thousand taxpayers in the county. So you're looking at maybe ten percent were, were the personal. And then you have real property. We have seven-thousand-ninety-three that are delinquent that I'm getting ready to send second notices out on. Now, those figures will dramatically drop when you do the second notices out. These letters have dropped the numbers down. Uh, I mean, from forty-five-hundred, it's down to about three thousand right now. So we've had that many that have paid since we've sent the letters out. And that's the response I want. I want people to come pay before I start doing garnishments and legal actions like that.
Okay. Let, let's switch gears to motor vehicles. Are we still having a problem with, with some people, uh, getting a tax notice and it's the wrong county? I mean, occasionally I'll get a call from somebody that lives, say, in Bellhaven or the Pantica area.
We get some of that. Now Lloyd's group handles a little bit more of that than I do, but I catch it because they're like, I'm being billed on this. And I'll give you mine as an example. I have a Williamson address. I live in Beaufort County.
Right.
I went to renew a car this morning and the girl said, Martin. And I was like, no, ma'am, I live in Beaufort County. So we still do get some of that. We're able to get that corrected as, as it's brought to the attention. A lot of times Lloyd has to have his motor vehicle person go in and change it.
So the, the county has been identified based on the zip code?
Zip code and the mail-in address majority of the time, yes, sir. Now, when you get like Washington township in Washington, city of Washington, sometimes you'll get some of that because they're so close to each other. You know, where they're showing Washington township, it should be city of Washington just based on the street address. So we do see a lot of that, but that, that's, that's very easily correctable.
Any other questions? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to read what's on your sweater.
My, my son gave this to me when he was six for Christmas. It's a deer and it's, uh, got sports a field on it. But he gave it to me and I wear it for my children once in a while. You know, he's grown now.
I can see the deer. I just haven't trove my glasses reading them.
I do too, even when I got mine on, so.
He's telling us.
Anyway, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Kelly?
If you're running behind, which I think y'all right on schedule, I'm just getting ready to say I'm going to give you some time because I'm going to be pretty short in my presentation. Um, one of the things that makes the Board of Elections unique is that our budget doesn't continuously stay the same. We're up and down over a four-year cycle. And the next budget year that we're getting into, the twenty-two, twenty-three year, is our lowest budget year. So I can first tell you that you're going to get money back from us next year. One of the big things too, that, um, over the last five years, we've had a capital fund of fifty-five thousand dollars that's been going into a fund to purchase our new voting equipment. We did purchase that this year because this fiscal year was the last installment on that capital fund. We are tickled to death with our new voting equipment. It worked great in November. My chairman was extremely upset that we didn't have a, um, a recount because we weren't able to bring out our fast recount machine. bring out our fast recount machine. So maybe we'll be able to play with that a little bit more in, well, whenever we have the primary coming up this year. But next year's our lowest budget cycle because we'll have the election in November, but then we don't have any following elections that first part of 2023. Just to give you a little bit of an update, we did have our March 8th primary changed to May 17th by the court system here in North Carolina over our redistricting lawsuits that are going on. I don't know if y'all were aware of House Bill 605. The legislature a couple of weeks ago, well, 10 days ago, decided to move it again to June. I found out today, it was a little bit after noon today, the governor vetoed that bill. So we're back to the May 17th primary, and filing will begin on February 24th to March 4th. So we'll start that over again. The only thing is because of the ongoing lawsuit, the courts do or could possibly change the primary again. So it's still kind of up in the air as to what elections we will have in this fiscal year. So right now, we're planning on starting filing back on February 24th through March 4th for a May 17th primary. And if we have second primaries, if it doesn't include any federal offices across the state, we'll have that second primary July 5th. That kind of stinks, the day after the Fourth of July. And then if it is a federal election anywhere across the state, the second primary would be July 26th, which would carry over into the next fiscal year. But I think if we don't spend it this year, if we have to spend it next year, we're not spending it this year. So that election has already been budgeted. It simply would need to move into the next fiscal year. So that's kind of, everything's kind of up in the air for us right now. So as soon as we figure out how this lawsuit is going to pan out, and who knows, it could go on up to the federal Supreme Court, we have no idea. So we're just kind of hanging tight and waiting. So other than that, I don't think there's anything that will surprise you next year for us.
Do we still have the issue where the governor and the attorney general has asked the Supreme Court to come in? Is that still?
Yes, I don't believe they have answered.
They've not answered, but they're still on the table?
No, because they went in a brief. Didn't they, they filed a brief? And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were asking for the Supreme Court to make a decision whether political party is something that is unconstitutional with gerrymandering. So we know gerrymandering on a racial basis is unconstitutional. We've had that decided by the courts before. But the issue now that's been brought up is whether political gerrymanders actually are.
Party, you're saying party?
Yes, yes. Whether one party can draw districts in a way that inhibits other parties from having a chance at being elected. So we're waiting to hear from that, too. But I believe the court case is being heard next Wednesday, I think February 2nd.
The briefs?
No, I believe the actual redistricting lawsuit is next Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. So we're just kind of sitting back waiting.
John?
Yes, sir.
It's, I guess this is much, do we decide whether we're going to continue putting money into a reserve for the next round of?
Oh, no. I would not recommend that because we got 15, 16 years' use out of the last voting equipment purchase, and I foresee this one going just as far. So I think in the next 10 years, maybe we'll revisit. In 10 years from now, we might need to come back and say, okay, let's have a five-year plan of installments instead of a quarter of a million dollars coming out of one budget. I won't be here, but.
You don't have to hang around for that, right?
I don't, that's just what I'm saying, that I don't know that I'll be around for that. But anyway, that's, I think we're good for a while now.
I'd like to ask some questions. This is gonna sound like a trick question. It's really not. The purpose of these questions is to reinforce what I think I know.
Okay.
Because I got people that try to whip stuff on me, and I'm saying, no, that's not true. The new voting machines that we purchased are not connected to the internet in any way, shape, manner, or form.
Exactly.
Okay, there are no installments inside of these units that they could be picked up by a local thing to transmit anything to anybody?
No, these voting, the voting equipment we have now has no cellular capabilities or any kind of modem capabilities whatsoever.
You answered, that's what I was trying to say, what you just said, good. Well, I have people all the time that are trying to tell me, they think what they hear that can happen in other places is happening here. And I know that when we purchased these machines, I was there at the meeting, and we talked about the fact that there is no possible internet connection because there are no mechanisms inside the unit that could ever be connected to the internet. They are freestanding devices.
And our old system was the same way. That was never connected to an internet. And even, we have a computer system that takes all the information. It comes off a USB of each machine. The actual computer system that we bring that all together and consolidate all the results and so forth is never connected to the internet either. A file is taken off that machine, and then I take it to my computer at my desk and upload it to the state. So not only are the voting equipment never connected to the internet, but the actual computer system that we generate files to program our voting equipment and also coordinate all 21 precincts and absentee votes and stuff like that and bring them together for totals is never connected to the internet.
Bottom line, Beaufort County has a secure system insofar as the internet is concerned.
Correct, correct. And I think, I understand where you're coming from because elections are not handled on a federal level. They're left to states. And with the news media the way that it is now, they hear stories in other states, and then they automatically assume that it's done the same way in North Carolina. In North Carolina, that's not and has never been, well, I don't think it has ever been an issue. So I understand, and I appreciate you trying to set the record straight and tell anybody that has any questions to please come to our office. We'd be happy to show them the equipment or talk to them at any length to, you know, disseminate any of that misinformation that's out there about our voting equipment.
Thank you very much.
One question?
Yes.
This is gonna switch it up just a little bit. In terms of how secure these machines are, would someone be able to do a forensic evaluation of the software that's running this machine to see if it's been tampered with and know if it's been tampered with in the machine?
Don't think under North Carolina law that that would be possible. So if a software developer, somebody came into my office and said, we want the, to have a forensic audit of this machine, it's.
I mean, it would have to be a lawsuit, of course.
Well, if there's a lawsuit or the legislature somehow built into it that there's files that we could put out publicly, but that equipment, nobody has access to that equipment but my staff. And it's logged who goes in the room. We have to log who tests the equipment, who does all of that stuff.
But it could evaluate. Not that I'm casting aspersions against.
Oh, I understand.
You know, I think.
Because these forensic audits is a big talking point right now. Yeah, big talking point.
And you know how I love it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's very soundly open now. But it is important that people feel assured that their elections are secure.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm getting back to if there was a problem, that software would probably show a forensic tampering. Don't you think it would?
I would think so because in the, again, this is not public rec, or public knowledge or public access. This is how we run out of our office. Any, on our computer system that we burn files to then put onto the voting equipment and then us taking those files and bringing them back with voting, like, results, it's tracked. There's a data entry. We can run a file that shows every time somebody logged into each one of the computers, every keystroke that they took, there's a log of activity on those machines.
Tell me everything I need to know.
So, yes, if it came down to it, even though it's, we can't just let everybody come in and tamper or not tamper or even access the machines.
You start getting down to keystrokes, like, we're what we do. Our file is our server.
Correct.
As long as we have that server record, we can show that we own what we've created, whether it can touch it.
But there is a log of activity on the individual voting tabulators and into the computer system that we use, the Unity machine that we use to program and collect data.
But we have a paper ballot that could be rerun.
Exactly.
So we've got a backup.
And I know you were on the board when we bought the last voting system, and we had the option, because there was a Help America Vote Act grant, I keep forgetting you're over here, that.
Missing two.
I know, it's like a gap. But when we had the option with that grant with the first system to either go to touchscreen or paper, and I made a big point back then, and I think it was in 2002, I will never go to a touchscreen machine. We want paper. We don't care if the machine blows up, if it catches on fire. We can hand count, we can, and we had that notion in Beaufort County in the early 2000s when we bought that last one. I was like, no, absolutely not. I don't recommend it, don't want it. And you see, the premonition I had was that something electronic would, and of course, it happened. So we've been a paper county since the beginning, and as long as I'm here, we'll stay a paper county. Those ballots are always backed up and always have a backup, even if something did get tampered with, we have those ballots. So that's not been an issue in Beaufort County.
As someone who has participated with you in a recount.
Yeah.
I've seen how it works, and it worked well.
And when we do end up having to do hand-eye recounts, it proves that people can't hand recount better than the machines do. I don't, we have heard a lot of talk about people going back to actual, let's look at each ballot and count it. It's not as accurate as a scan ballot and the optical scan technology that we have now. I mean, standardized tests and so forth, it's better than the human eye for sure.
I mean, when we did that recount with me, I think there was about 20 ballots different out of about 22,000 votes, and those kind of percentages are pretty.
And most of those, I'm sure we showed you the ballots that changed. Most of them were probably voter error. They circled the names or something like that.
I didn't care, I wanted, I didn't care.
Yeah, well, usually during a recount, we have the candidates there, and if we have a ballot in question, we make sure everybody has seen what the board decides on each ballot. They can't touch the ballot, they can't, you know, tell us what to do with it, but we do at least put that out there and let them see why we have issues with ballots. And most of the time, it's like people circling names, voter intent's very clear, we can count that. But the machine, the bubble's not filled in, so the machine doesn't count it. So when there are adjustments in recounts, it's usually because of human error, not knowing how to mark that ballot. But that's gotten very, very slim now because we've been with the circle for so long and because of standardized tests, people know how to mark those, and we're seeing less and less of those human errors where they're circling or putting a check by name or something like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly? For the job that you do.
I appreciate that.
And for making us look good.
Okay. I'll try to continue doing that. Okay, thank you.
Just continue. And are you a lame duck? You're under T.
T for travel, huh?
Yeah, T for travel.
So I guess based on that remark, my first statement will be, thank you for allowing me the honor of serving the citizens of Beaufort County as their Economic Development Director for the last seven, seven and a half years. It's been a lot of fun, and I think hopefully we've got some things done that you will be pleased with. And I've developed a lot of business, a lot of staff friends, and a lot of personal friends in the county, so I will be actually sad to go. If my son didn't live in Portland, I'd still be staying, but with COVID and what have you, it's an issue. Basically, what I've got is an economic development report, a little bit different maybe to the others where they talk more about budgetary issues, but I think this is very much budgetary because I know we talk a lot about tax rates, we talk a lot about costs, but I think through economic development, we're trying to increase the size of the tax base, and there's a lot that the county commissioners can do to, you know, attract business to the county. So the first thing I'd say is economic development is a team sport, and as you can see from the screen, there are a lot of team players, and they have a lot of meetings. Some ways luckily, they went to Zoom during the COVID, and that made it a lot easier not having to have the travel time and what have you. We do sell the county as the Greenville-Washington combined statistical area, and I've got a slide next wide, but it gives us a lot more resources, talk a lot more about the infrastructure and obviously where we are located on the east side of North Carolina. We also talk about competitive business costs and proactive economic development team. When we sell it in that manner, we can talk about larger numbers than just in the county. This graph shows a centering on the Skill Center, and so within 15 minutes, 25,000 people, within 30, 150, within 45 minutes, which is the typical travel time for a person going to work, you've got 285,000 people. So it changes a lot from just saying, oh, we've only got 50,000 or whatever, and a 25,000 workforce. We are again a Tier 2 county for 2022, and we do very well in tax base, thanks a lot to Nutrien and quite a few of the other businesses. Median household income is relatively high compared to everybody else. We're about in the middle of the state, which I think again goes along with a lot of the manufacturing employers. And our unemployment for 2019 was very good because again, we had a lot of industries, things like air filtration that helped us keep our industrial base, and a lot of our retail happened to be things like Walmart, Food Lion, franchise, drive-throughs that weren't hurt as badly because of COVID. The one area, as you see, I've marked in red, is population growth, and I think you all know this, but this is the one area where we need to focus to increase the prosperity of both the county and the citizens. And it has been similar for the last three years. I won't go into this too much detail. Being a Tier 2, we still have all the grant programs that we would have had in Tier 1, slightly more stringent criteria for using them, but it goes from everything from opportunity zone through some equipment, grants, and training. You yourselves have the Beaufort County Performance Grant, and then there's lots of training, federal tax credits, and again, quality of life. Right now, we're doing very well in terms of unemployment. We're only at 3.44% or 689 people, which is very good. However, as I said, for people trying to find, employees trying to find people, it is very, very difficult right now. If we look at the graph since 1990, January 1, 1990, you see that we've pretty much stayed flat, and if anything, we're declining slightly in terms of the size of our workforce. And again, this impacts our businesses highly, ranging everything from restaurants, retail, manufacturing. It is a major issue right now. And when we look just at Beaufort County, you can see that the regression line is on a downward slope for the size of the workforce. And I think for the future of the county, we need to reverse that in terms of, the employment is here. Everybody's crying out for jobs, but we need more people. People are retiring, and we need to replace those, that population. It's not just us, as you know, national news and also North Carolina news, there is a shortage of credentialed employees, particularly in the trade industries. By 2030, the state looks as though they'll have about a 400,000 shortfall if something isn't done to get people more credentials in the trade industries. That is happening locally. We are getting automation. This is a welder. If you had a welding qualification right now, you could walk out that door and get a job, just like that. It would be very easy. The community college is doing a great job in terms of scaling people up, and Dr. Loop was here yesterday talking about, you know, the community college for everyone, free for everyone, although that was a small part of the actual cost because you've got living costs and other such costs, but that will make a big difference. And I think that, you know, his initiative on that for the next two years, and then hopefully into the future will be great. The other one is remote working. I think we've got a great opportunity to increase the population in the county by attracting people who are remote, or can work remote. You know, Raleigh is getting very high-priced, it's very congested. It's very congested. And I think we have a great quality of life here for people who could do, who could work remotely. You know, I know Brian is trying very hard to get us excellent broadband in the county, and that is obviously the major issue with, with working remotely, plus housing. We need a lot more housing. I talked about new jobs. We did a, are you okay? We did a survey a year or two ago now, but at that point, we're looking at 250 new jobs. But the big one is the 510 retirees. Major portion of that is with Nutrien, which as you know, is a major taxpayer. And we, I think you've been aware that Aurora is putting together a strategic plan to try and help attract people to that area. Reason I focus on manufacturing a lot is the wages and, in terms of the average weekly wage, also employment. It's the second biggest employer behind retail in the county. And also, in terms of total value of wages, it's almost twice as much as any other. And this is where, again, you're getting people, like being able to afford houses, being able to afford boats and cars and everything that creates the tax base that Lloyd was talking about. And also, obviously, manufacturers tend to have more substantial structures and equipment and other such things. So, I believe that's the reason that we need people, but we don't need to become a suburb of Greenville. We need to be our own economy. Last time, I showed you a few impacts of COVID. Luckily, that has recovered. And interestingly, in terms of percentage of job increases, retail and accommodation, arts have all, all come back relatively well. And that's also true in terms of the numbers. So, where we had a big decline last time in 2020, 2021, we did see a lot of recovery in those industries. But again, I would beat the drum for manufacturing. When you looked at the changes in wages, although manufacturing didn't go down very much in the, in 2020, as you know, again, as I was saying earlier, the demand for labor in the manufacturing industry is huge. And because of the price, the sales price of their products, they have been able to accommodate, I guess you would say, wage increases, which is quite amazing. If you look at that, it's over $4 million between quarter increase, between Q2 2020 and Q2 2021. Which again, Brian talks about the sales tax increases and obviously things like that increase sales tax returns to the county. So, there was a 5% average wage rate increase in all employees between 2020 and 21. The total wage increase was 17 million. If you expand that, that's just in a quarter. If you expand that to a year, you're up to about 76 million. So I think this is a great opportunity you have right now with the state of where a lot of our economy is, is to make some really good decisions going forward. In terms of trying to help the workforce development, we have, as you know, our Workforce Planning Committee made up of NC Works, Community College, the high school, ourselves, and Rivers East, which is the Workforce Development Board. And of course, what we're trying to do is increase the workforce through education, internships, externships, where the teachers go to the businesses for maybe a week or two, find out what they should be teaching, apprenticeships, training, and workforce attitudes towards developing the skills needed by industry. That is one area where I may ask for some more money next year, is that there's still the thought that there aren't any jobs in Beaufort County, which is absolutely untrue right now. But there, but there aren't any jobs for unskilled employees. It's, they have to have the skills, going back to the idea of certifications or some sort of qualification. The other partners in workforce development, and you do fund some of these, is the, I don't know if you'd call them charities or organizations that help people that are not in the workforce. And that's one area where we need to encourage development as well, is in the underemployed people, whether it be underemployed for some sort of disadvantage, or whether they're just in a job that is not paying them what they need to survive. Unfortunately, I don't have an update from last year on the school district because the COVID did influence the person who gives me the report. But suffice to say, they are very involved in getting certificates for their students. I, the new boat building facility has been ordered, and that should be, who knows what that really means. But hopefully, they'll be able to say, start construction on that, say, at least in the summer. So it's been ordered, and it is underway. The community college, as Dr. Loop emphasized the other day, is working very hard. They, PES, just graduated their six first apprentices, registered apprenticeships, which give a qualification to these people to take them further in their careers. 338 Con Ed students. And again, the apprenticeships, we have six companies that now have registered apprenticeships to give a more qualified workforce for their individual operations. 36 customized training classes, which influence 266 employees for a number of our companies. They just, the community college just signed a three-year training program with AAF Flanders. So that's also good news. That means they're looking to the future. And then unfortunately, the Advanced Manufacturing Institute was not able to do training classes in 2021, mainly because of COVID. But that will be coming back in 2022. And again, that, the idea there is to give people pre-employment training so that they can go to a job interview and talk sensibly to an employer about what their job might be. So, in summary, there's jobs out there. Every one of our companies, you could get a job with them right now. And but they are looking for skilled, skilled people. One way we're trying to encourage people to look at Beaufort County is what we're calling Made in Beaufort County. And the idea is, did you know that this was made in Beaufort County? Some people know, but a lot don't. They just see factories as a small box on the way to shopping or to their own work. So, and I've been amazed. I had one, one friend whose son actually went to South Carolina to be in the plastics industry, not knowing that we had two plastics manufacturers, plastic injection molding manufacturers in this county, where I think he's pretty sure he could have probably got a job. So, it's, that's the type of information we have to get out to the citizens. We are doing a joint marine manufacturing brochure with Pitt County. They have a lot of assets, like the airport, the hospital, and the university, and then a couple of large boat manufacturers. We obviously have more of the boat manufacturers and the water. So it is attractive to them to market with us, and it's attractive to us to market with them because of their greater resources. We're also working with Pitt County on a home-to-work transportation plan. One of the big issues is people getting to work. Right now, RISE 29 team, the students from ECU are working this study with the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, the Pitt Economic Development Corporation, ourselves, and the Greenville East North Carolina Alliance. And right now, the two pieces that they're looking at is something called VEa, which is kind of like Uber. And so you basically put it in, and you end up with a ride share. Or for, more for companies is commute with Enterprise, which is a company-based program where the companies basically rent the cars from Enterprise, and then they have people pick other people up. So, we're hoping that will assist in getting more people to work as well. I think, and also to training. I think Dr. Loop said yesterday that one of the issues with the training courses was getting, getting the people there. In 2021, we had 19 interns in the economic development area in Beaufort County. This serves two causes. One is to bring expertise to our businesses and to help them do projects that they might not be able to do with their, their staff. And secondly, is to give these people introduction to Beaufort County, to, you know, maybe ultimately work here. Quite often, the students at ECU just stay at, in Greenville and do not come here. So I think we've encouraged them to be here. And this is on the top of, the picture on the top right is on the top of the Mulberry House. And they were all very impressed with that. So hopefully, they will be coming back. In terms of projects, unfortunately, we had similar to 2020, only 31 projects last year in terms of doing RFPs. Okay. I don't know why that's suddenly not working. But anyway, it used to say. So 39% we got from the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, and 40, as I remember, it was 52% from Beaufort County. And then in terms of projects, interestingly, sites outdid buildings, which is probably about the first time since I've been here. Because I believe people realize that, you know, there are no buildings. So we better go look for a site and try and find some way to build. Most of the projects that announced last year were kind of service projects or infrastructure, a couple of bridges, and also obviously the satellite facility out in Aurora for the community college and the big announcement for the airport. We're currently working on 21 active projects, wide variety of types of industries. But again, mainly kind of smaller projects in the 2 to 5 million and 10 to 50 job arena. I thought I'd recap the industry-ready building because this has kind of done a lot in the last few years. It was a temporary warehouse for Hampton Arts and ITW. It did help with Hurricane Florence and Hurricane Dorian. It has been part of the creation of 230 jobs in Beaufort County. MGM Yachts occupied it for a while and now has created 100. Well, now they're up to 170 since I wrote this. 170 jobs out of the old Standard Iron Facility. Coldwell Marine Design has created 40 jobs, and IMT and Recycling Bin.com have created 30. So for a total of 230. At the moment, it will be occupied, being renovated to occupy by Project Snow, a company that's going to do final assembly of forklift trucks and then wholesale them. Not as many jobs as we'd hoped, 10 jobs, but investing about $2 million. There is another project that's looking at the industrial park right now between IMT and Oak Ridge. It's Project Oak. And they're going to produce air filtration equipment, probably looking at a 60,000 square foot building and 50 jobs and $4.5 million worth of investment. So this all kind of moves as it goes, it seems. Sometimes I feel like I'm sailing and having to adjust all the time to the wind and the changing water and what have you. The other thing that's very valuable in the Washington Beaufort County Industrial Park is the Skill Center. The community college has come in and put in their boat building equipment. And these are a few pictures of that. And it, it appears to be very successful. They've got, I think, one of the best paint booths in the county and some of the best woodworking equipment. And this will be gradually developed from the initial courses and move forward. And as I said, the, the high school boat building facility will be a feeder into this program as well. And I think the major difference between the two is that the high school will be more involved with wood and that type of thing because the chemicals involved here are reasonably dangerous and probably wouldn't want high school students around them. We do do a lot of assistance with communities. I won't go through all of this again, but we're working with all the communities in Beaufort, Beaufort County. The Aurora Industrial Park has been a big topic recently because we're almost there after seven years. The community college is going to have a satellite facility there. And, don't do that to me. And the park will obviously bring tax revenue for both the city, sorry, the town and the county. Basically, all the legal documents have been completed. Beaufort County Community College, as I said, has agreed to the 2.5 million facility. The Corps of Engineers have signed off on all the wetlands. Nutrien has confirmed in writing their support of the park, which was a big, big deal. All the infrastructure drawings and applications to various state agencies have been submitted for approval. And right now, they're, they've got reservation forms out to companies with a $1,000 reservation fee to, to meet your need for the $450,000 loan. So far, $105,671.60 have been spent of the 1.1 million 440,000 budget. And that money has been expended by Duke, Energy, Golden Leaf, and the Town of Aurora on engineering site studies and legal, legal fees. Turning to the airport, this is a huge project. It is the main economic engine in our Opportunity Zone, which unfortunately we weren't able to pick because obviously I'd have loved to have it in the industrial park. But there are a large number of projects that have been attracted because of both the Opportunity Zone and the infrastructure that will be placed in the, in the airport. We do have both sides of the, the budgets, I guess. One is the estimated cost for the infrastructure of about 20 million. Then the other side is the projects that we're working on. And that's about $57 million worth of investment, of private investment, and about 350 jobs. There is going to be a lot of hard work done on this over the next five years, I would imagine. But some of it should come forward relatively quickly. We can't, again, because of COVID, we did pivot more to small business. And this is the other area where I might be asking to expand the budget, is that, one is that we need to market the county internally better. And then secondly is we need to have monies to work on a one-on-one basis with our small businesses to make sure that they are able to fill out paperwork for various loan applications and what have you. I think you all know about recent projects that have been in the county. So everything seems to be full steam ahead right now. We did get a new economic development specialist back in September. Her name's Susan Squires, and she has been working very diligently by my side on a number of projects, updating our social media, industrial directory, and webpages, and assisting with the oversight of the interns. We are putting her through a lot of training. And again, thanks to COVID, a lot of this is by Zoom, so that it doesn't cost us so much in terms of travel and hotel. She's had a lot of community engagement and seems to be very apt, adept at doing that. And then also, the position requires administrative operations like oversight of the landscape and janitorial office, equipment office, pest control contracts, being a receptionist, bookkeeper. And she is, if you need her, she is a NC notary. Social media, we've really kind of upgraded our efforts there. We're on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. And also with our new website, we've added a lot to our web design. We found if we do boost our postings, that we do get quite considerable viewing of that. So, our goals are very much what they've always been, is to assist new and existing industry in Beaufort County and tell them it's an excellent location to create jobs. Work closely with local organizations, and to also market the area as a great place to live, work, and play. To maintain and expand business through retention expansion program by improving data collection. And then streamline our operations as best we can to, to save money and what have you. One thing I would say, earlier when Lloyd was talking about pictometry, that is a great help to economic development. Because again, we can go in and show pictures either of a business that is already here, or if it's a building, we can, you know, do, show pictures of them without having to go out into the field and take those pictures. Plus, the measurement capability on pictometry is very good, so you can actually measure the square footage of a building. So hopefully, he will get that. And there's a lot of other uses. And the other thing we do is work a lot with And the other thing we do is work a lot with the community and stakeholders collaboration, which I know you're going into strategic planning session after this, and I just hope that you really do um take up that mantle. It would be a great help to myself, I did say county departments, but maybe I would say definitely for mine, where if I knew, you know, I have a action plan. It's got a mission, a vision, and goals, and obviously I'd love that, those missions, vision, and goals mirror what yours are, so um that's one reason for the strategic planning. The second is that we have a lot, you have a lot of stakeholders that do strategic plans. Uh, the, the school system, Community College, ECU, Bell Haven, and other communities, um things like the North Carolina Resilient, Resilient Coastal Communities Program, Biden and ECU, um the state of North Carolina that has an economic development plan, the Mideast, what we're redoing now, um their SEDS program, which is for economic development in the region, and then obviously charities like United Way. All these people to some degree would love input into their strategic plan from you. If they knew what your strategic plan was, then theirs could um somewhat, again, mirror what you want to do. And then obviously also the companies in the area. These are public companies, cause I could get their annual reports, but all companies do five-year plans. If they knew you were going to do something within a five-year period or whatever, then they could put it in their plans. And these are all international companies, you know, and with the shortage of labor, they're all saying, where are we going to produce? And so if they knew that you guys were doing whatever to attract labor, to attract people, then, you know, they would feel maybe more certain in terms of their future planning. So I, I believe in strategic planning. I do have a degree in city planning, so I'm obviously biased in what I'm saying, but I would exalt you. And, you know, I think the big thing is to improve the quality of life. And I found this quote, um, "The standard indicators of quality of life include wealth, employment, the environment, physical and mental health, education, recreation, and leisure time, social belonging, religious beliefs, safety, security, and freedom." And I think all the, you know, the budget that you administer and the way you interact with each other, you know, really could improve the quality of life in this county for the citizens um going forward, so. Good luck. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Questions of Martin?
Okay. You're welcome.
We'll, we'll see before you, again, before you leave.
Yeah, yeah, I've got something, I hope I've got something for next month's agenda, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. We're down to our break, so we'll take fifteen minutes and come back. Planning discussion, uh, and it looks like Neil is our first presenter. So welcome to Beaufort County, Neil.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back. Like I said, the uh here on a Friday and as we get prepared for the weekend, I, as an old county manager, being the last thing on the agenda on the board on a Friday afternoon can be sort of scary thing, but we're going to give it a go.
He did that to you.
Yeah, he sent me up. But no, I, I, on behalf of the association, thank you for the opportunity and recognize Jason King, I think most of you know he's joining me today, and we just appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, we are going to talk about strategic planning and, and talk about the importance it can play in regards to a county and what it can mean. Uh, I guess we're at a sort of a crossroads of a very special time here in North Carolina. Uh, a lot of resources coming down from the feds and the state and everybody involved, and I can't think of more of a time and the need for strategic planning for units of government than now, because there's going to be a lot of resources flowing, uh, and how you utilize those and how, how in the county sense, how you maximize those funds is going to take a planning effort. That linked in with what I think you've probably been talking about the last two days, uh, about all the needs of your county departments and all those things involved, all lend themselves to the need for a plan. Uh, when you look at a plan and a strategic plan, I, in a simple sense, I look at it from the county standpoint is, uh, you know, your job as a county commissioner and as, or board of commissioners is the, what I noted on the slide, is the development, implementation, and monitoring of services for residents slash taxpayers. In other words, a strategic plan. Now, the effort you take out as far as through the budget process and through what you allocate and responding, that is a strategic plan. The question is, how much time are you going to put into that plan and not find yourself becoming reactionary, but rather being proactive in planning the future of the community? Uh, sometime, any times in government, and government gets a lot of criticism, is probably due, but one of the things it gets criticized for is knee-jerk reactions, is what I call them, waiting till a problem presents itself and then dealing with it. Uh, that, to me, is not a good investment of taxpayers' money. It should be a planned approach, how you're going to invest the resources to the taxpayers. I look at it too, it's like, uh, any of us in our household and our families, we all have a strategic plan. I long ago started thinking about, how am I going to fund college for my kids? That old air conditioner outside's about twelve years old, I'm going to have to replace that thing come down the road. Uh, you know, my car's got two hundred thousand miles on it, I better be thinking about an old budget, how we're going to address that. That's a family strategic plan. Why wouldn't a county, multi-million dollar plan, not have the same approach, is to have a plan, a thought-out plan for the taxpayers? And that's the way I look at it, is what a strategic plan, is the board looking at saying, we're going to think of how the challenges we face as a county moving forward and how we're going to meet those challenges, and how are we going to invest those resources? Uh, and again, so it's, it's a sense that we all have a strategic plan, the question is how detailed is it and how well-thought-out at it is it? Uh, so strategic plan helps the county commissioners meet their obligation to who I call the taxpayers, the ultimate ones who are paying the bill, that you're spending their money in the most economic effective means possible. To do that, you need a plan, and, and how you're going to invest their money in the years ahead. So that's, that's the centerpiece to me of a strategic plan and why the need for one. On top of that, we have now, the money's coming down through the, the monies from the feds over the pandemic, and there's a lot of resources, there's resources from the opioid settlement, all those resources are going to be coming to the county, and how you utilize them needs to have a planned approach, and how you're going to link that with the other things and other resources you have. So that even stresses more the need for one. The uh, I heard your speaker previously talking about uh strategic plans, a lot of outside resources do have, and the next slide is about seeking input from internal and external sources as possible. Uh, yes, you, part of a strategic plan is collecting data from those you partner with. And to me, that's a long list of people, but it, it's a process by which you owe it to know what the school board's plans are, what are their needs, what are the sheriff's needs going forward, what has the community college got on their plate, what are the workforce needs in the community, and how are we going to address them? All those things, the, the resources of your IT backbone for the county, how does it stand? Where's it, when's it going to need investment? When is your debt rolling off? When are you going to have access to new revenue sources? All those things are a part of a moving picture of the plan for the county and a strategic plan of how we're going to address those things. And I think you've probably heard a lot of needs over the last two days from various departments. Are you going to deal with them as one, one by one as they come up, or have a planned approach, just ranking them in priority and addressing them in the importance they present themselves? I've had boards, sadly, they, they addressed the problems as they came up, and when the true problem came up, six months into the fiscal year, they'd already given out everything they had, rather than having a planned approach to how they were presenting it. So who does that come from? That comes, again, reaching out, a strategic plan is reaching out to all aspects of those you work with and serve, uh, helping the, another thing a strategic plan does is help the taxpayers understand, where are we going as a county? Where are we going to invest our resources? Where's our responsibilities? And it makes a lot the difference when you come to the board, to the taxpayer and say, we need this, we're going forward. If they feel like you're, you're making a good investment in their money, that you have a planned approach to use it, uh, you know where you want to go with it, or you don't want to go with it. Having that plan helps lead in that direction and set the direction. And that's where it falls upon this board. If I had to tell you one thing, I think any board of commissioners, their biggest responsibility is leadership, is not find yourself becoming reactionary, but rather gaining input from the community and deciding what's best for the county moving forward. You're the only ones that, in this whole picture, that have all the pieces of the puzzle, and that be from education, from law enforcement, from utilities, you're where that all comes together, and having a planned approach of how you utilize those resources is what's so important. And, and to not be able to address those resources, to me, you're failing your taxpayers and those who put you here if you don't have a planned approach of how you're, how you're going to move forward with what they're investing. The, uh, so that's a piece. Um, again, I can't stress enough, strategic planning is a process about focusing on ends and not means. Too many day, times today, seemingly our society reacts to what's in the news at the given time. Uh, that's not a way to govern. Governing is not about reacting to a problem when it presents itself. So many times, I, I, I think if you admit, and I worked in local government thirty years, so many times when a problem arose, if we'd have just done a little due diligence, we'd have never dealt with that problem, cause it would have never presented itself. And I'm talking about, you know, emergency in a facility or something failing, a system failing us. I'll always remember as a county manager, when we had Hurricane Fran came through, when we have a large water system in the county I serve, we had not invested in backup generators for those water tanks. So our assistant citizens did not have water. I mean, who would have thought we'd have a hurricane that would knock out ninety percent of electrical infrastructure in a county? We did. Thank goodness for Fort Bragg. They sent out generators for every one of our water tanks, simply because we were next door. But if we hadn't had that, that was the perfect lesson to me, we should have had a strategic plan in our utilities of how are we going to serve people? People have to have water. There's some necessities in life, and when you're going to have a water system, you owe it to your customers to provide that service to them. Uh, that was example, we learned from that, went forward and said, we've got to have UTEP backup generators or generators we can move around to keep that water system going. We also had to develop generators for our pump stations on our sewer system. We owe that to our customers. And when you explain that to customers, why we're doing this, they understand that. What they can't understand when they've been paying you a water bill and all of a sudden they have no water for ten days. So that's the type of thing strategic planning helped avoid, just one example. Uh, and again, this whole process, I think, uh, gives the county the opportunity, when the strategic planning processes I've gone through in my career, is helps you envision and create what you want for the future of the community. Uh, and we'll talk a bit more in detail how you get there, but sometimes it's thinking about, where do we want to be? Uh, you're not going to stay the same. You know one thing, you're not going to stay the same. That's a given. And, you know, some people say, I just want things to stay just like they are. That isn't humanly possible. The county is going to change. How it changes? As I used to say to my boards, you know, is the growth going to control us or are we going to control the growth? Are we going to plan for it? Are we going to put the infrastructure in place? Are we going to have the things we need? You know, that's the type, again, going back to the utility analogy, are we going to do it the cheapest way and put a four-inch water line down that road? Or are we going to look twenty years ahead and realize we need to put a twenty-inch line down that road? Maybe not for today, but if we see what's coming, because there's nothing worse, and you, I don't think any of you here want to leave a board someday going, why in the world did they try to cheap it in two thousand twenty-two versus doing it right? That's what a strategic plan can do for you, is help you make those decisions planned. And it may be times when people at the time don't understand investment. I remember when we built a, there was DOT building a bridge in Lillington, and we went to them and said, we want to hang, where we can hang a sewer line on it. And they said, that's the biggest waste of money to engineer that bridge to hang a sewer line on, they want nothing ever going across the river. But we paid for the upgrade, and it was like a couple hundred thousand dollars. Well, now, there's a sewer line on that bridge, and there's a lot of customers. If we'd have waited until after the fact, it would have probably been a million-dollar project. But we did it and invested beforehand and saw what could happen there, so. Envisioning, and that's where this board has to provide that leadership of envisioning what can, what the future can hold. Uh, who helps you do that? Uh, I can't say enough about staff, uh, and you've heard a lot of their needs today, but through this strategic planning process, there's going to have to be hard decisions about what the county's priorities are, uh, the risk you run as a county, you know, you have to be mindful of this, don't always rank the top priority by how loud they are. Sometimes the priorities that are quiet are the ones who need to be addressed first. Uh, I, I remember talking to somebody at Fort Bragg, and they said, everybody down here wants to build a new building and put a plaque on it. Said, what we really need is water and sewer lines in the ground. We need the infrastructure to support it. You know, a new building looks shiny and has a plaque, but what we really need is the resources invested in the, in what we're doing, and that makes for a better future. So that's where I'd suggest, uh, be mindful of that as a board, and that, sometimes that brings hard choices. Uh, what two it sets for the county is that accountability, uh, the guidelines for steering the county, how you're going to go forward. All those things are key in moving forward and in a strategic plan. Uh, it's to set accountability, and when that accountability, I want to stress accountability when you do go toward a strategic plan, have a plan in place. The accountability rests with the board, but it also rests with staff, that you charge for carrying things out. It rests with the board of education. If you develop a plan with them, saying, we have this much money we can invest, here's how we're going to use the resources, they have accountability to it, where, and it be if the sheriff, if you make an investment there, wherever it may be, that there's accountability because we've all agreed to this plan and where we're going. Um, to do that, a lot of counties, now, there's a lot of different ways to do strategic plan, I'm, I'm not going to tell you there's a, but a lot of counties began that process by first defining, uh, what do you stand for? You hear counties talk about vision statements and their goals, uh, that can be a key part of an organizational, uh, strategic plan. Uh, what do, what do you prefer for your community? I know you have a lot of outside folks moving in, there's different backgrounds, there's, at the same time, you've probably got infrastructure that's getting old, that needs to be dealt with, uh, you've probably got citizens maybe requiring different things that they're used to, they would have never dreamed of, you know, as the old adage goes, I remember when counties didn't have animal control, that sort of took care of the sale. Well, we don't live that day and time anymore. Citizens demand the service, and uh, how is that going to change? I know when I worked in Transylvania County, we had so many residents lived in the northeast or lived in Florida and relocated the mountains, they had a different standard they expected from local government. And they are taxpayers, and they are residents, and you, and obligated to serve them, and identifying what services they, they require. Um, we kid sometimes, and most of us in this room are old enough, we remember that cable wasn't a necessity, but in life now it's sort of become a necessity for a lot of them. Seemingly it's become a necessity, so standards change. Uh, of course, each county in a strategic, each county's unique. What are you dealing with? There's no boilerplate strategic plan to give you and say, here's one, just fill in the blanks, uh, because each community's different, and each county, community's needs are different. Uh, you have different pressures, you have different assets, you have different liabilities. Uh, you know, there's no county shaped like Beaufort, because Beaufort County's got a very unique shape, and how it splits the county, uh, and how you serve that, and that changes how you deal with something. Other counties, and Mountain County may have a whole different set of circumstances, how they deal with the issue. So each county has respect, the uniqueness of them. Uh, also, what do your citizens value? What's important to them? And what are they prepared to pay? Uh, at the end of the day, they're the one paying the bills, and, and, you know, counties every day have to make those decisions. What's important to our taxpayers? What do they expect? What level of care? You know, we went from the days of, again, show my age, I went from the days when the EMS was run out of the local funeral home. The local citizen ain't going, ain't going to deal with that anymore. I mean, they're not going to accept that as emergency care. Uh, if a herd showed up in front of their house, they probably wouldn't be happy about it. Instead, now, we have ninety-eight counties have paramedics who can administer medications in the field, deal with emergencies. Uh, that's where judging what your residents want, what do they expect, what are they, one of my most Uh, what are they, uh, one of my, uh, most interesting times as a manager is we had a half hour county that was not zoned. It was unzoned and everybody said they do not want zoning. They have no interest in zoning. They're going to fight it tooth and nail. I said, well, the only thing we'll know is if we go out there and find out. So we had public hearings over every township and talked to them real honest. So we went to them. We didn't make them come to us. We went to them and said, what do you want for your community? What do you expect? What would you like to see? A whole overwhelmingly, the, the majority of people in those meetings and that input wanted some controls. In our case, we had all this growth coming from Fayetteville into the west, southern part of our county. And people weren't liking what they were seeing. Cause if you couldn't do it in Cumberland County and you couldn't do it in Lee County, came to Horney and did it. So we ended up with a lot of cheap investments. We went, we, we, we thought the residents didn't want something. We went to them and asked them. We found that no, that wasn't the case. They wanted, not saying that's, I'm not saying what's right for y'all. I'm saying that, that's in our case, we went to the citizen. And that's in a strategic plan. It's important to, sometimes we, all of us, I know it's, uh, I'll always remember as a new manager, I thought I was upset about something going on. And, and one of my chairman at the time looked at me and said, Neil, you're going to learn in this business. Most people don't care what you're doing. He said, we, we, we pay, we look at the paper and we concentrate on, but the average citizen out there is going to work, paying their taxes, raising their kids, trying to get them in bed at night and do their homework. They don't have time to worry about county government. They elect y'all, let the board of commissioners who hires the staff administer the program. And I always tried to remember that and I found out a lot of truths of that. You're accountable to the taxpayers, but they're entrusted with you, uh, to do the planning for them and to make sure that things are in place when they do need you. Uh, so finding out what your residents value, what they see as a need, that's important as far as any strategic plan. Uh, that links into the next being what are your long-term goals? What does, what do your future look like? You know, unfortunately we have a challenge in North Carolina right now, what I call the, the great migration to the urban areas. You know, we're, we're, we're close to the day in North Carolina or one out of four people in this state live in two counties. That is a radical departure from 30 years ago. And it's, and you, anybody can say that's wrong. They can say it's right. It don't matter what you think is wrong or right. The matter is we've got 80 school systems, counties in this state, their school system is declining.
Eight?
Eight. What does that mean for your workforce going forward? What does that mean? Who's going to fill the jobs going forward as the baby boomers retire? Across east of 95, it's a major concern. What's, what's going to happen? How are we going to get employees? How are we going to create industry if we can't even have the bodies to do the job? Recently I was in a county, they got a grant to upgrade a food processing facility, create 200 jobs. They had to go to Wilmington and get buses to haul the people to come do the job. And they were all immigrants because they didn't have the workforce. They had anybody do it. So there's no easy solutions to those, but it's recognizing what do, how are we going to go forward? Who's, how are we going to retain our people? Uh, the one bright lightness I'm, I'm hoping that rural areas can say, you know, we've all found out you can do a lot of jobs from home. And the pandemic has shown that much more than we realized. Uh, somebody the other day said they had a friend who was applying for a job. They applied for one in Raleigh, Australia, and, uh, some other far flung place and they, and all three jobs were at home. Well, why can't more rural areas say, we can give you the rural lifestyle, but you can work from home and make, but what goes with that? Broadband. If you don't have broadband, those people don't have that opportunity. But being mindful of what's going on in your community and helping your, uh, citizens understand it, you know, talking about workforce shortage now. There's just not enough people. You know, if you look at the baby boomers came along and now they're retiring. Ever, all the experts saw it coming. I mean, it's just, there's not as many offices there were in the workforce. How communities respond to that? Uh, those are things boards have to look at and think about in strategic planning. And that goes back to your educational system. That goes back to broadband. That goes back to planning for the future. How are you going to help try to deal with that? Y'all are blessed with having the resource of the waterfront and some attractions that can bring people and attract people. How do you maximize those to bring? Make, you know, you've got a very livable, attractive community by, oh yeah, do is to go down and see what's happening on Main Street. Uh, how do you maximize that going forward? Uh, those are the type of things. Uh, a part of that though, to do those things, that's where the board and the county has to be able to articulate their future. Uh, so that the staff, and I stress it, the staff knows where this board wants to go, what you see as priorities and the taxpayers. I always found if taxpayers, nobody likes paying taxes, but at most times if people understand where their tax money is going and they think it's a good investment, they might complain about it, but they still see it has to be done. I mean, but you gotta lay it out for them and tell them why you're having to do it. And tell them why you're having to invest it and tell them how, why you're having to make that investment. Uh, that's been my experience, just being open and honest and laying it out for them. So. And I can't say it better that a strategic plan is about giving you that roadmap that you can say to the citizens, that here's where we want to go. Here's what we see and here's what it's going to take to get there. We're going to have to make these investments. We're going to have to have these assets in place if we're going to go forward. Plus your staff needs that. They need to know where you want to go. Unfortunately, I've seen, I've talked to county staffs in other counties that just say, our board's just all over the place. You know, if the sheriff comes and pitches fit, they give him what he wants. And then if somebody else comes, they don't get anything, you know? That can't be the means. You gotta have where the investment needs to be. I'm not picking on sheriff. I'm just saying you can't be a reactionary, but rather, uh, an overall plan. And for staff, that's a big part. You look at this chart, uh, and I, I have some people that say, why should we do a plan? I know it'll happen. It won't be, it'll be out of date in a year. I'm not going to tell you a strategic plan ain't going to change every day. And it's going to, it's an ongoing cycle. And this chart somewhat describes that cycle. Uh, when you look at it, you, you develop your goals. This group has the ultimate responsibility for developing the goals for this county. And by goals, I mean, what do we need to accomplish? What do we need to invest? What is our mission? What's our intent for this community? Uh, where do we want to go? What do we want to get out of this? Uh, and how do we get there? We talk about strategies. Uh, but as anything with strategies, you develop strategies, how to get there. And then you measure and, and, uh, set targets of how you're going to measure that accountability to staff. Accountability to those that you've charged with carrying out these goals. Uh, you assess your results and you start again. And you nearly never stop. It just revolves. It just keeps that process. But in that process, it's accountability, is a, is a planned process of looking at your needs and a strategy to do it with staff and with those involved. And then measures of how you're doing, results and relooking at the process from there. So it's an ongoing, uh, how do we, how do we move forward? The, uh, now considering that, and when you talk about strategic planning, uh, one of the things that's so vitally important is do you have the capability? Uh, you can't ask staff and those involved to accomplish things that they don't have the resources to accomplish. I mean, investments take resources. Uh, if you, you can't expect someone to be, uh, you know, a shining light if you don't give them the tools to get the job done. Uh, I always said, one of my things important to me about counting employees is asking them ongoing, do you have the tools it takes to do your job? Do you have what you need to do your job? And, uh, I used to have lunch with 10 employees every month. And that was one of the questions I always posed to them. Do you have what you need? It's amazing what come up that they'd say, yes, you know, if somebody could get me this, it'd really make my job a lot easier. It wasn't a big thing. It was just a little, but just hearing that and having that feedback. Uh, and that goes at all levels, not just employees, but all levels. Uh, and do you have the right people and the right jobs? Uh, unfortunately we find this across counties now. The ability to recruit county staffs is just getting, is there shortages in other areas. There's shortages in governmental services. Um, counties looking for professional positions, whether it be finance officers, tax administrators. The challenge is just overwhelming. Y'all haven't dealt with it like some, but some counties just cannot find key staff. Uh, they're not, now we're finding shortages recruiting paramedics. We're finding shortages recruiting deputies. Uh, all those things coming in and, uh, you know, that day of saying, I've had in past board members say, well, they just should be happy they have a job. What do you expect out of somebody that's, they're just happy to have a job? You want people in those positions that are passionate about what they do and are professionals and do that job. Plus with the way the market is right now, they've got a lot of opportunities right now. There's a lot of job opportunities right now. And we're seeing a lot of movement in a lot of county organizations just because of that, is that people have opportunities. I used to say when the, when things pick up, that's when the government employees start looking at other opportunities. Uh, can our people grow and develop into the roles they adapt? Uh, that's one where you've got to invest in your employees. You've got to invest in the resources. Uh, you know, counties, you can't get, get yourself caught saying, well, why don't our board, our people figure out a better way to do this or upgrade this? But by the way, we're cutting your travel budget. You can't go anywhere. You can't learn anything. We can't go to any training, but by the way, we want you to do a better job. Uh, so there has to be a planned approach to invest in your assets. And then, and, and the sufficient infrastructure, technology and financial resources to do what you need to do. Uh, counties, if, you know, I had a, one of my jobs, we had an approach where we said, well, our, our motto became if you, if you can stand in line for it, you should be able to get that same service online. And what I meant by that is you had to go to stand in line to get a building permit. Why couldn't you get that online? If you had to stand in line to get a septic type permit, why couldn't you get that online? You know, all those same, if you had to stand in line, why can't you do it online? So we did central permitting and we brought all our resources together. If you were a developer in our county, you went to one person, they were assigned as your caseworker and they handled everything for you. Anything you had, you went to them. But that took an investment. But what I kept hearing from developers is I've, I've spent so much time going from this office to this office, to this office, to this office. That's money to me. But by putting, bringing it together, we had a more streamlined approach. Plus it led our planning staff, he was in the planning office, they could keep a handle on what was going on in the community more because it all flowed through them. Uh, but my point in telling you that is the technology required. If I was going to ask the county departments to do that and my board was going to ask them to do it, we had to give them the technology to do it. We had to link their systems. We had to invest in their infrastructure. We had to give them where they could reach each other. We've had software issues that their software wouldn't talk to each other. We had to go back and redo things. So we, but so I couldn't ask them to do that unless I was willing to invest. And my board wasn't willing to invest in helping them do that. So when you set goals, it's help give people the resources to accomplish those goals. Uh, the, uh, of course, in any of this, in, in planning, we talk about all these grand plans and we all want to do all these things. Uh, the best, best way I can describe county resources is sort of like your checkbook at home. And I used to say this all the time to employees. They'd say, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? Here's the way I describe it. County budget is just like your checkbook at home. There's the things you want to do for your family and there's the things you can afford to do for your family. And you can't do everything you want to do. But what, so what do you have to do? You have to plan where's the biggest bang for my buck? Where, where can I get the most out of my resources? That's what a strategic plan is to me in a lot. Is how is the community, do we get the most out of our taxpayers' money? Invest it wisely and do it effectively and get the most for our taxpayers. Um, that's where though, in this planning process, and I will tell you some of the hardest decisions will fall back to this board. Is when you determine what are our goals, but then you determine what are your resources? It's making those hard decisions about what's going to be the top priority, what's going to be second, what are we going to do first? What are we going to do second? Uh, that's tells the story of where you, how you move forward in a strategic plan. Uh, of course, any strategic plan, again, I can't say enough about going back to those who receive the service, the recipients of the services staying in touch with them. Uh, the key stakeholders, uh, and the key stakeholder of all key stakeholders, the taxpayers. What do they want? What did they, what did their desires, uh, what do they need out of what the county is doing? I tell you what, I bet you most places you'll go here and ask people, one thing, the biggest challenge in the county is I wish some of our young people would stay home and not move off. I, I've heard that in every rural county I've ever, I've ever been in. I wish our young people had jobs. They could stay at home. Well, the county government is not willing to invest in things to help make that possible. That's not going to happen. But I would dare say that's probably if you ask people, one thing they could change in Beaufort County, that'd probably be the top of their list. So I wish our young people could stay here. And I'm, y'all aren't unique. That's everywhere. People want their children to stay close. They want their grandchildren close. So if you don't have a plan of how to make that possible, it's never going to happen. Now, will they all be able to stay here? No. But you have to, but you can strive to make resources available. I mean, and to me, one comes to mind immediately, that will look best when we're talking about broadband. Getting broadband is going to open a lot of doors, I think, to a lot of people, the ability to work and stay where they're at. Um, sometimes it's amazing what young, what jobs there are out there and what can be there. So recipient of services, the key stakeholders, uh, staying in touch. Uh, good strategic planning is about communicating with the key players, whether it be your sheriff, your school board, your community college board, your mental health organizations. All those are stakeholders and there's one group that has to bring all that back together. And that's you. They're all out doing their mission. They may have a strategic plan. But unfortunately your task is so much bigger than that because you have to bring all those strategic plans back to one. And how it links into you. Cause the school board can't carry out theirs, I would bet, unless you give them the resources to do it. The sheriff can't carry out his reg organization if you don't give them the resources to do it. All these entities that want to do these things can't do them unless you determine that's a priority for the community to do. So that's where it all ties back together and listen to all them, the importance of support. Uh, if you go down this road though, I, there's, there's, I'll be honest, I've seen strategic plans where counties have gone to an effort to plan. And, and the first time something comes up, they deviate from the plan. Uh, they don't set up a system to monitor it. They don't have a way to measure it. They don't revisit it. And it becomes a doorstop in an office somewhere. It is a working document that has to be revisited and looked at. Uh, you need, you have accountability. Uh, you know, we all want government to be accountable and a strategic plan is the same way. You need an ongoing measure of how's it doing? Is it working? Talking to stakeholders, is this actually accomplishing what we want? Um, are we investing where we need to invest? You know, it might be if it's retention of staff, it might be where are we seeing our school system, where, you know, their accomplishments? How are they doing as far as measures? Are we seeing job opportunities grow in non-traditional ways? Uh, now I think counties will need to start monitoring how many people we got working from home. How many people we got working in our community that are working for somebody else, but they're here. Uh, and that's going to be a factor, I think, communities going for. And I think a lot of places I've talked to is, you know, you hear a lot of people saying, we're realizing there are things possible we never dreamed about work. Work communities. Uh, so that being open-minded to those things. in summary, I guess I note that, uh, strategic planning, it's a verb, not a noun. Uh, it's an ongoing practice. It's, uh, highly, I mean, you're not going to be successful in all things. You're going to change. You know, the national economy shifts, it can throw a whole plan, the 2008 collapse changed everybody's world. You can't plan for that. But you can have a plan in place and now how do we modify the plan to meet that? But I would challenge you, don't, don't not have a plan because, well, we don't know what the future is going to hold. That's not a good reason not to plan for the future. Uh, it will all still help set a, a bedrock for you. And what, when bumps come up, if you have a strategic plan, it helps you know where to stay, where do we need to adjust? That's where, why I say, and can't stress enough, it's ongoing. Uh, good governance, to me, good governance requires a board to lead, guide and support. and support the county, have a sense of where your citizens want you to go. And it's ongoing quest to serve those people, and the manner they expect and deserve. People have standards they want, and they want for their citizens. And that's where for a board, so hard for you as board members, is to get a sense of what your constituents want, then you may come back and make those hard decisions. How much can we invest? Just how far can we go? And how do we do that? How do we set our priorities? And again, as I always encourage my board, don't always, don't always listen to the loudest voices, because sometimes those aren't different. I don't know about y'all, but sometimes you have a meeting, and I remember we'd have, our county had like 120,000 people, and we'd have five people in their audience, and somebody'd say, what does everybody here want? Well, those five people had an interest in it. Does that represent the other 120,000 people? No. You have to make sure you really get a sense of where people want. The one thing I wanted to add, and sometimes people would, with any planning effort, want to say, ah, that's just those government people talking about planning, and you know how bureaucrats are. But I will note that the GFOA, which is the financial practices, and which governs governmental entities and how we report the financial stability of our communities, I will tell you that they're, in their guidelines, their best practice, and one of their chief main best practices is strategic plan. Each community should have a strategic plan in place for the investment of the taxpayers' money. And if you go on the GFOA's guidelines, you'll see that, that they recommend it, how important that is to have in place, how important it is for there to be a thought-out strategy, how to invest the taxpayers' resources. As they say in one portion of this article, you know, a business owner can't just plan a year ahead. If they just plan a year ahead, they're not going to be in business long. If a county just budget to your head and not think about long-term planning, they're not going to meet the mission for their taxpayers as they should. So what I want to close, is we're opportune to ask questions, but also to note that one of the things from the association standpoint, that we've been challenged with, the general assembly giving monies to our association about helping counties, and it's something we're talking about doing, how we can do that, whether, in some, looking at, can we help with strategic plans, can we help in resources to help communities make these decisions and do this work? I know we're already talking with one county to do that, and there may be others. So if you have that interest, and as we move forward, please keep that in mind, that we're exploring how we can help in this association. Because the general assembly recognized the need and gave us some allocation just for this purpose, to try to help our units and our counties utilize these resources going forward. So I'm going to start right there and see if there's any questions.
Neil, can I just add, just to what you said right there? I mean, I think we had this conversation during the planner retreat with the board, when we talk about risk management that we have through the association. Nobody knows counties like the county association, like through the risk management pool. They know what we do every day, so they're able to write policies and manage our risk, and the pools know that. Regular insurance companies don't understand that. So just from my perspective, I would, I appreciate the association's effort in doing that, because I don't think anybody knows, anybody privately, who we would go and ask to help us do something, would know counties, like the Association of County Commissioners knows counties.
No, unfortunately, a lot of strategic planning is sort of like a, there's a boiler plate that, you know, then they just make it fit, you know. But county government's unique. County government in North Carolina is unique. Both our counties unique. So you can't just roll out a plug-in-a-number set. And it takes a lot of time. It's not a fast process, but it's one with the size and scope of local government now. I just think, my take was, it was just their obligation to the taxpayers to make sure their money's being invested well, and knowing where it's going. And I mean, and I used to tell my board, it's nice to be able to say, when a taxpayer says, when are you going to replace that water? It's in our plan, we've got that scheduled, we've got four more to do before we get there, this is when we're going to do it, and here's a plan about school construction, we're getting, we had a lot of growth. Here's when we're going to build that classroom wing, here's when we got it planned, we got some debt rolling off from a bond or a plan several years ago, and this is when we're going to be able to do it. We've got a plan. And that ensures the taxpayers a lot, that they think somebody has their finger on what's going, and they know it's going to change. I mean, they know their budget at home, you've got it all planned, your budget, and then something goes wrong. And they know that. I mean, so that's, but I think you make a good point. It's, I think the association. Now, it's a learning curve for us right now. We've never ventured into this, but we're all venturing into a lot of things we've never been into. But we invite you, if we can help in any way, if this is something you'd like to pursue, I hope you will, I think it's, I would encourage you to talk to your counterparts in other counties. There's a lot of strategic plans online you can look at, and I'm talking about counties from one, it can be all Republican boards, it can be all Democratic boards, but most counties has their strategic plan in place. And in fact, the county we're talking to helping now is totally a Republican board, so, and it's a growing county, and they see the need.
What are the next steps? What do you see the next steps as you go down this road, as we go down this road?
Well, I think we're going to be meeting with one county, and our next approach is we're going to do their, they're having an upcoming retreat, so we're planning for that with them. But I think that if you decide that's something you want to pursue, we would sit down with staff and talk about what resources we could bring to bear, and then probably come and talk to the board. Kevin Leonard, our director, sort of taking this as a passion, and he might join us and see. We're going to be learning too, as we go through this. And so, but we're ready to do that and take that on, if you decide you want to pursue it. And I think that would be the next step to come together.
Okay. In talking to some other counties, they have used outside, okay, and in some cases, very happy with it. I mean, the school board used somebody else.
Oh, yeah. I'm not going to tell you there are not other good resources to help you with it, but I'm just saying, this is something we're doing now, too. There are, of course, there's others. We've never done this. I mean, so there's other people been doing these plans for other communities. But I think Brian's point is good, is if you do utilize somebody, it's making sure they understand the parameters and do a lot of due diligence before they undertake it in your community.
Yeah, Neil, I think the point of that is that they have folks who can do that, but they also have the folks that are in the general assembly every day. They bring that to it. So you had a private consultant maybe helping with you. They don't have necessarily somebody who's sitting with representatives every day when the general assembly's in session and lobbying them and helping push forward county agendas and county needs. So you bring to the table, as the association, a huge background, risk management, legislative efforts, all of that, that probably a private group would say, well, we can do a strategic plan for you.
Well, the other option is they've been, somebody else has been doing them for 10 years.
And we may, and I'm not going to tell you that we may not utilize outside sources to help us, you know. We're not that far enough down that road right now. But I do know we're getting there, because we're going to be meeting with another county, talk about how we can help. So hopefully, we can share more with you as the weeks go by. And while y'all are deciding, is this something you want to pursue, we'll know more what role we can play, and how that might look.
I've been involved with two organizations that have gone through it, and my experience with both of them is that we tried to put too much into the plan. It's almost like having a meeting in January to discuss your goals for the year 2022. You go around the room, and you make a list, and you got 10. And then at the end of the year, nothing gets accomplished, because you had 10 goals, and you probably could only achieve two or three of those. Is it, that's, to me, that's an important part of the process, is realizing, you know, what you can manage and actually do with a plan versus getting it just too big.
Yeah, I think you're, a strategic plan to me is a lot, is not get down in the weeds too much, but rather say, your goal, say if your goal in EMS is to have us responsible time, set that goal, you want countywide. Don't spell out how it's done, just say, we want you to report back when you get this done. Or if it may be that broadband's accessible by X percent of the residents. That's the goal in the strategic plan, not, like you said, getting this menu of, upgrade this water line and do this project, and, you know, or the school system that we see that X improvement in this area. So that, but you make a good point, it's, don't get spread out too thin, but rather have major goals, and then charge those that are responsible for them to carry them out.
And then the other thing was the time element, that the amount of time that was taken, and in one of the case, we just gave up, because nobody wanted to devote the time.
Yeah, and that's about allocation of resources, and do you have the resources? I mean, it's like a board, you can't ask a department of two people to do the work of five people. You know, you can't give them goals that need five people, and there's only two of them. That's about assessing your assets and where you invest them. That's why sometimes goals, hey, we can't achieve that one, because we just don't have the staff, we don't have people to do it. But that's where you good, I would stress how important it has, a good open dialogue with your staff, that they need to feel free to say, we just can't do that with this resource, this is what we need to get this done. Because it's an investment on all parts, you know. That's, so setting goals, achievable goals, not getting too far out there, that's key. And you're not going to hit a home run every one. You're going to strike out several times.
But it's a moving target.
Oh, yeah. But you don't throw up your hands just because it isn't a winner on everyone. Sometimes I tell the boards, when they're doing a retreat, they'll say, well, I don't know what we accomplished. I said, start every retreat every year by going back through, what did you accomplish that you talked about last year? And it's amazing how many things you can usually check off that you got done there.
And remember, man plans and God laughs.
Brian?
I think one of the things that Neil was pointing toward was, like those goals, those broader goals, and it helps us as staff stay focused on those things, instead of that kind of chaotic thing we're talking about, where we're trying to react to what we think it is y'all may or may not want, or what the latest and greatest thing is. I mean, you see some organizations where they will bring things forward, and they'll say, this is in support of the board's X goal. And if it's not, then we're not wasting time on it, because it's not what you said is important. Why should we be doing that? We don't know that right now. So you look at each one of them, and you say, all right, that's why we're going after this piece, because it supports that goal that the board wants. And we know that very clearly.
Well, and just like example, that may be a county that's got a lot of growth going on, they have a lot of capital needs, and they know they're going into debt, they may charge the finance officers, we want a upgrade in our bond rating. Whatever it takes, that's your challenge, that's your goal, is to get our bond rating. Because that in turn's going to save the taxpayers' money through the financing, through all the financing. So that's a goal. So I've got one county now, they're hung up on being a triple A, because they got a lot of schools to build. And that's what they're told their finance, they got it. But that was a goal they set for them. Now, did they have to invest in some things, in upgrades? And yes, they had to pay some things off, but they got there, and that was their strategy, through their financial advice, through DAB and Board was helping. But that's the kind of just simple thing, if you say, board says, we want this bond rating, you can go to the taxpayer and say, this saved this money, because of the basis points we saved on the interest rate. That's a real thing that you can show somebody. And that's the type of goals, not some off in the air somehow, but just tangible things you can hang your head on. Things to be mindful of, though. We'll be talking.
Stay in touch, Brian.
Any way we can help, let us know. Let me say, we appreciate y'all's membership and your involvement in our association. I think we've actually got one of yours right now. He's at a board meeting.
That's right, that's right. So he's, he's one of these multitaskers. He's actually listening to you.
Okay. Gosh, I didn't say anything bad about him.
This is being streamed, so, Ed. But thank you, Neil, and thank you, Jason, for coming, and hope you have a safe trip back to Raleigh.
I'm going back to Dunn, he's going back to Raleigh. But it was a good reason to stop at Parker's in Wilson, neat.
You're close enough, being at Dunn to Raleigh, we call that a suburb.
I don't know about that.
Yeah.
But thank y'all, we look forward to work talking with you more about this and ways we can help.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Lainster, see what you got.
I'm going down there in two weeks, we're going to try, what's the new place name on the water?
Mallware.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's where we got us a reservation. We're going down there. My daughter, my mother-in-law lives here, and we're having her first great-grandchild, my daughter, and we're having a shower down here for her, so we're all going to be down.
Drive down to where the old Moss Plain Mill.
Oh, yeah, I've been by there.
Where your mother-in-law used to work.
Yeah. My wife grew up at Moss Plain, I mean, my wife tells me, talking about Old Moss Plain Mill, I'd get out of school, walk down there and sleep on the carpet, the rolls of carpet in the back while mama works.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we're down to our closing comments, and I'll first see if Brian, Anita, any of staff have anything. All right, any commissioner have any closing remarks?
The only thing I want to say is, you know, I'm going to be pushing for that 10% tax decrease this year, to help people above County by returning their money to them. Far as strategic plan goes, I think we have already done it, if you think about it. It's just a matter of listing it. Because this board has done a great job of looking ahead, planning ahead, doing projects ahead. I mean, we're not sitting here with nothing to do going forward. There's a lot of stuff going on out there that's already planned, already in the process. So I think we've done it, unless somebody can come up with something that nobody's thought about before.
Well, I think we need to go through the process to find out that. And I think a lot of those things that you referenced, will be part of that plan, you know, the solid waste, water, all those types of things. But there's clearly beyond that. The economic development piece of it, I don't think we've really got that under control. And that's something that is going to take a lot more thought, and a lot more understanding from the stakeholders what the issues are.
Well, I think you need to know where the goalposts are, so you know which way to run the play. So strategic plan is important.
And where the ball goes in between the two poles. Thank each one of you for participating for two days in a row. I think we've accomplished a lot, and I think this is probably two of our most important days that we spend during the year. Thank the staff, and thank the commissioners for showing up. And we, this time, will adjourn until a year from now. So thank you very much.